All right, guys. Let's go ahead and get started. We'll call the April 13, 2017 Metropolitan Planning Commission to order. We have a full house today. There are a few seats. If you're standing up, try to find a seat. There are several seats up front if you want to come and sit down. And before we get started, I'm just going to take a slight moment of personal privilege. As many of you know, we have two new members of the Planning Commission. It is my honor to welcome them. I'm just going to talk a little bit about them so that the public knows why we have such a great commission. It's because of folks like these that are appointed. So first, I want to welcome Dr. Pearl Sims. Thank you for being here today. She was previously a professor of Leadership, Public Policy, and Grants Policy and Administration at Vanderbilt. She retired from Vanderbilt in 2013 after leading a variety of complex social and education projects, not only in the United States but abroad, in China, Singapore, Japan, Vietnam, and most of Europe. She served in the Bredesen and Purcell administration as the Executive Director of the Middle Tennessee Workforce Investment Program. She is currently a consultant and a professor in the College of Leadership and Public Service at Lipscomb University. She has three small businesses, two adult sons, and, most importantly, a new puppy. So, thank you, doctor, for coming and being part of our group today. It's an honor that you can serve with us. Secondly, we have Ron Gobble. Thank you, sir. Many of you may know him. He's a former member of the Historical Zoning Commission. If you didn't know this, he was on the commission from 1988 to 2012, which is a small, small public service of 24 years. He is familiar to many of us as the president emeritus of Gobble Hay's Partners, where he practiced architecture for the past short 40 years. He stated to me earlier that when he was on the Historical Commission, some of the buildings that he first built, they were starting to become historical structures. But I thought that was funny. He's worked on a wide variety of projects, ranging from the interior of a space station to The Sound's new ballpark, which tonight there is a game. So if we get out of here early enough, hopefully many of us will go. I do have a ticket tonight. I may not make it. He is also a fellow of the American Institute of Architects. Ron, it's an honor to have you here with us, both of you. Thank you for being part of this commission. And I just wanted to make sure that you were welcomed properly. And so, we really appreciate your service to the city. Give them a round of applause. So, it's what you've all been waiting for. Let's go to item B, the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion for the -- have everyone reviewed the agenda? Is there any additions, edits, corrections? Is there a motion? It's been a motion in a second. All in favor of the adoption of the agenda say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. The adoption of the agenda. It's been adopted. Item C, the approval of the March 23 minutes. In 2017, those were mailed out to you. You should have reviewed those. Any additions, corrections? We need a motion to adopt the minutes? It's been a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose no. Ayes have it. And the minutes are adopted. We are on now to recognition of council members. As I write you guys down, as I see you come in, and so, I first saw Councilman Roten. Do you want to wait, or do you want to go ahead and --
I'm going to go ahead.
Okay. Come on.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Kevin Roten. I'm a council member for District 14, which includes half of Donaldson and half of Hermitage. I'm here on number one on your agenda tonight. There's a community plan change, and then there is a zoning change request. I actually handed out, or asked to have handed out, three pieces of paper.
We're doing it right now.
Okay. Always waiting on Berkeley. Everyone, okay. If you would, I've given you three sheets of paper. The first one is the actual community plan, which is in the Nashville Next handout or printout that you would get from the webpage in the Planning Commission. That's the one that shows all of the pink for the Donaldson, Hermitage, Old Hickory area. If you will see, the Donaldson, Hermitage, Old Hickory area has one large community plan. The only area which is still T2 rural in all of Donaldson, Hermitage, and Old Hickory, there's three on your map. The one that is right there beside the river in the two large green specks, that is actually no longer T2. That is now T3. Y'all changed that six months ago. You approved a 500-home development on that site just six months ago. The one in the middle that's right underneath the word "Hermitage" is the piece of property that we're talking about right now. If you'll see, that piece of property is less than two miles from the Nashville Metro Airport. It is a good five miles from the county line. If you would go to the Google Maps page that I gave you, you can see the eastern part of the county. You can see the airport down to your bottom left. Right up in the middle, it's kind of hard to see this, but it says Hoggett Ford, and you can see all of the development that is around Hoggett Ford. I was trying to make it clear to y'all as far as the outside, and the way you look at this property, there is nothing about this area of Nashville that is rural anymore. You have 400 planes coming in and out of the airport, which is less than a mile and a half from this piece of property, going over this property every day. If you will look at the property, I don't know if y'all have the actual property in front of you, to the right of the property towards Central Pike, I have noted there are three different parcels which are currently either for sale or under contract with developers which are next to this property. We have one that is 30 acres, which is owned, is being marketed by Mrs. Quinn up to the north. And then we have a parcel which is 10 acres, and another parcel which is 20 acres. So we have nearly another 60 acres, which is currently being marketed for sale and development next to this piece of property. More importantly than anything else that I have just mentioned to you, if you will look to the north of this property, and that it looks like a gray line running along the north of the property, if someone could point to the Music City Star Line that runs right next to this property, I would appreciate it on the map. This property sits directly next to the Music City Star Line, right up, which looks like the little triangle at the very top of what you're looking at right now. Mr. Sloan, the Executive Director of the MTA, and I, and the CEO of LoJack Enterprises, which owns all the land to the left of that, and that square, we all sat down and had a discussion about a Music City Star stop being right there on the Music City Star Line. He is currently in negotiations with these, with this entity that is out of Mount Juliet that is currently doing the Mount Juliet program and setting up a transit-oriented stop right there. The land next to it's owned by Vulcan. They are wanting to do mixed use right there as well. All of the property that you see to the north right and to the outside is currently being put up for sale or under contract, as I have said. As far as the property which is to the west, you'll see to the far west, it is all industrial. You see all of the industrial which is along the river back there, and it's currently industrial enterprises. It's the land, you have the letters from the people which I've seen, it's the land to the northwest and to the west that are complaining about this land being developed. I received an email several weeks ago saying that they wanted to change their property to AR2A so it could never be developed. I told them I was not going to change it to AR2A. They came back and said, "Well, how about we do a regulatory SP?" I said, "Okay, well, get me a list of what you want to put in this regulatory SP, and I'll take a look." They send me the list of what they want their regulatory SP to have. They want two-family zoning, multifamily zoning. They want rural bed and breakfasts, short-term rental properties, fuel storage, a rehearsal hall, small outdoor music events. They want to be able to do, there was one on here, wants to be able to work on cars. There's currently a music studio being run by the gentleman who spoke to you last time on the property. He advertises it. He doesn't actually own the property, and LLC owns the property, and he advertises his business online. All of this is zoned RS15. It has been zoned RS15 or RS15 since before 1974. It's in your packet. So, this community plan that y'all have put on top of this was done well after the people who are trying to sell this piece of property have owned this property. Getting down to the actual property that we have here, that 100 acres right there has been owned by this family for nearly 150 years. They have decided to stop farming this property. And the gentleman said that they can't make any money farming it anymore, and that the property values, which I know them to be at least $50,000 an acre or more, is what this is going for now, and it was time for them to get out because of all the development that's occurred around them. I think what I'm trying to tell you here is that this is not rural. There is nothing about this that is rural anymore, and that is why I'm asking you to change the community plan. You'll see the development down below it. That's an old Google Maps picture. All that is developed right up to it. Up to the north, you'll see is a picture of the old, is a picture of the landfill, and that is about full up to the north. And we are working with parks. I'm going to ask parks to turn that into a park, have it covered and turned into a park. All of the land up to the north where the train stop will be, we're going to do mixed use up there. So all of this has a plan. Nashville Next, I looked, and the folks that were on the committee, I looked, and there was not a single person on the committee, the steering committee for Nashville Next, that lived in the 3706 area code. ZIP code, I should say. Area code, sorry. So what that tells me is that this was not planned. So somebody needs to make a plan for this area and just not call it rural. I see, if you'll look in your packet, it actually says the reason that they made it rural was because four or five houses in the back of this property didn't have running water. So it's my understanding that Metro Water is about to finish the project, where they have put, it's done a multimillion-dollar water project for this whole area with a 10-inch water main running throughout. Part of that 10-inch water main ordinance, which was done by a former councilman, requires that any new homes built in this area --
[bell dings]
-- any new homes built in this area would actually have to pay a surcharge to hook on to the new water mains. And that's how this water project is getting paid for. So I think the previous councilmen and Metro Water have seen that this was a need and that the new development in this area is going to pay for the water project. So this is why I'm asking you to change the plan. I know I've spoken for quite a while. I hope all of y'all understand my --
[bell dings]
You just cut me off and said, "Stop it." So this is my concern for the area. I just want everyone to know that while this has been a farm for many years, you can see all the development around it. It's two miles from the airport. It is not rural anymore. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, councilman. What we'll do is we will still have to take it in order, so if you'll stick around and just, just in case. All right. Next councilman that I saw was Councilman Brett Withers. Do you want to come on up?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Brett Withers. I'm the Metro Council Representative for District 6, and I'd like to welcome Commissioner Sims and Commissioner Gobble. Thank you in advance for your service. The item that I'm here to speak on today is item 18, which I believe is on consent, so I'll go easy on you today. But it's for the specific plan for Holly Street Daycare, which has been a fixture of the East Nashville community literally for decades. And they are looking to consolidate their campus and do some improvements in that area. One of the things that I'm personally am really excited about with that specific plan, you know, there are some, there's some legacy zoning in East Nashville, and so a portion of the parcels that they have have commercial zoning, a portion have residential. And so this specific plan will unify the zoning on that area. As well as, one of the things that I'm really excited about is, one of the iconic structures of Holly Street Daycare is a red building in the front that sort of resembles a barn. And it's not historically protected, but it definitely is an icon in that area of East Nashville. And I'm really excited that this plan really preserves and maintains and incorporates that building. It also works sensitively around some underground utilities and preserves a major tree, which I know we all like whenever we can do that. So really, the purpose of this SP is to unify the zoning on the parcels that they control as well as to allow a little bit more environmentally and sensitive design than what the base zoning would permit. So we have held a community meeting at the site. This has also gone through a preliminary review by the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, who recommended approval, and we just asked for your approval today with the, with the conditions that have been stipulated by staff and the reviewing agencies. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate it. Next, Councilman Scott Davis. You want to go now, or, hey, where is? Welcome, councilman.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, planning staff, for all your hard work and what you do. Welcome, the new commissioners. Let's go to first item number 036 PR-001. This is a bill disapproved by the staff members. And it's also the one where I have 25 letters of support. And also, huh?
It's number 20.
Number 20?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem. Number 20. And this is the one I have 25 letters of support from neighbors that live on the street, the neighbor that lives right next to the property behind it. And also, I have community members here in support. Now, you're probably like, "Well, Councilman Davis, you got all these letters of support. You have your neighbors here in support, and the applicant lives three to four houses down on the same street. So what's going on?" Well, that's why I'm here. We don't understand what's going on. This is right next to a large condo development that's much bigger than this, done by Justin Hicks, which was approved probably in 2013. And we changed the policy to evolving. And so with my neighborhood support, and you know, what I do for developers, I do, and I work even harder for when my neighbors want to do a rezoning, especially for a single mother who's a schoolteacher and a graduate of Tennessee State, a local college here that's trying to build affordable housing. And therefore, I'm in full support of this, and I want the commissioners to vote in her favor, but I understand if you can't. However, a lot of these folks who wrote letters of support couldn't make it because they couldn't get off at 4:30, but they'll be there just in time for the council meeting later on in the year, coming out in support of their neighbors. And I have a couple of the neighbors here that want to speak in support also. I didn't see anybody in opposition in the crowd. And if you knew this lady and knew her family, you wouldn't be in opposition either. And more importantly, what I do for my neighbors, you know, what I do for the developers, I definitely do for my neighbors who live in the neighborhood, who live on the street, and want to create affordable housing for the neighborhood. What's the more perfect person to do this than a single mother that is a metro school teacher? They know what it means to need affordable housing, and they want to, and they want to do it for others in their situation. So if you can't vote for this, it's okay. I still love all you. Okay? But I'm going to have to do what's best for my neighborhood and for my neighbors. So please don't take a slight of it, you know? You know, sorry, Tennessee, you may have to do another article. That's fine, you know? But I got to, I have to do this for my neighborhood. And the last one, I'm not going to focus on the ones that are on consent. I have this other one, which is on Jones Avenue. It's kind of weird. Part of it is on consent, and the other part is not.
I believe that's item 14.
Item 14. Thank you. And this, once again, this is, the applicant is my constituent. If you remember, about eight, about eight to, eight to nine months ago, there was a young lady here with 10 of her neighbors behind her that was about, that was about to give birth. And we made it, we, the Planning Commission worked hard, and the staff helped big time in finding a way we could compromise. But once again, they're, they're in favor of the subdivision. But the problem is, being a mom and a family with two kids, I don't want them to pay the $30,000 or $10,000 that they'll require to put a sidewalk there, because there is a ditch and there's some other complications there. And once again, I'm here fighting for my constituent who lives in the house, who will stay living in the house, who wants to subdivide the rest of her property so that she can pay for the repairs of her home. And we're going to be here, and please, please support her. And if you can't, that's okay, because, you know, we'll go to the BZI or try something else. You know, average citizens cannot afford to pay $10,000 to $30,000. And also, I'm putting in new sidewalks already on Joseph. And even though they're nice and looking really brand-new, I understand now they're not up to compliance for some reason, but we're not going to tear those up because they're new and they're very nice, and wish they were a tad bit whiter, but, you know, you know, we got sidewalks. And so I would appreciate your support for this one. And I'm asking you very kindly, you know, if you're, if you're going to disagree with the staff, and I know you rarely do it, this is the one I really need you to disagree with on this one. Let her get the waiver for this sidewalk. I'm sorry, Doug. You know what I mean? I know you rarely do that, but this is the one, you know, I mean, and this is not for a developer. This is not for someone with a lot of money. This is for someone that's just like us, that's just raising their family in a neighborhood, a very active constituent of mine. And it needs to be done. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a wonderful Easter and Passover. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Council Lady Mary Carolyn Roberts, is she, I saw. Do you want to come up and speak now, council lady, or?
Not right now.
Not right now? Okay. Thank you. Well, I appreciate that. Council Lady Mina Johnson?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Mina Johnson, council member representing District 23. I do appreciate courtesy to allow us to speak in the beginning, especially a day like this. You know, so many enthusiastic people in here, which is great. But I do appreciate your privilege and courtesy extending to us to allow us to speak in the beginning. Today, I am speaking on item number 11, concept plan Highland View at Nob, Nob Road. This belongs to Council Lady Mary Carolyn Roberts District. Typically, I will not come to speak at the Metro Planning Commissioners, especially it does not belong to my district. However, this is a subdivision regulation. So this item will not come to council. So you are the only deciding body. So that's why I am here to state my concerns on this current condition. This is, let's see, start with the West Nashville Community Plan. When we envision West Nashville Community Plan, this is 66 acres of undeveloped site. So base zoning is R40. We envision maybe one day somebody might develop it. But when it happens, we envisioned it would be aerial appropriate and concerned sensitive soil and concerned existing neighborhood. So it will be, you know, harmonious development when it's happened. But as of right now, what's happening is subdivision regulations, so it will create 30 lots. So we do not know, although it will come to, final plan will come to commissioners or rather, planning staff. But today is the only day as a commissioner will have a chance to weigh in on what kind of conceptual plan it will be. So by, another concern is, these conceptual plans comes with variance requests. The variance request, one of the requests is cul-de-sac. Typically, because of the, I believe it is fire marshal regulation, 750 foot is the maximum. However, this development, one end will extend to 1,800 feet, another one will extend to 2,100 feet. And, you know, because this is 30 lots, so it will kind of under the threshold of more extensive fire marshal scrutiny. So I, when you consider this item comes to front of you as an item number 11, I would like you to consider this development under this current conceptual form, is this appropriate? So to me, it would be better to have a SP and have more specific condition so neighbor will know what kind of development we will be dealing with, and what kind of specific condition this development will have to follow. So that's my request. So when you deliberate on item 11, please listen to my neighbor's concern and weigh on all those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Appreciate you coming down. Councilman Colby Sledge, I saw.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. Good afternoon, commissioners. How are you? Thanks, first, to all of you for serving as usual, and in particular to our new commissioners. Commissioner Sims, although she does not live in my district, edgely has joint custody of Councilman O'Connell and myself. So excited to see the commissioner today. I'm speaking in favor of two items. Item number 22, which I believe is still on the consent agenda currently. It is a move from R6 to R6A for a very large, fairly large area. That is the neighborhood of Wedgewood, Houston. That is a conversation that we've been having. I live in Wedgewood, Houston. We've been having this conversation over the last several months about putting in some sort of basic design guidelines without hurting anybody's entitlements, current entitlements. So worked through with several neighbors, different options, including different types of overlays that may or may not have been accessible to the neighborhood, landed on R6A. All the conversations I've had with landowners have been positive. I think, I think we're in pretty good agreement that this is a good step, a good step that we can take. And so I would ask for your approval there. And then a couple items down is a Clayton Avenue UDO garage modifications. This is very similar, if not exactly the same, as modifications that have come to you previously from the Clayton Avenue UDO, and would just request your support. Thanks so much.
Thank you, councilman. Next, we have Council Lady Kathleen Murphy. I saw you walk in. You good?
I'll speak at Adam.
You'll speak at Adam? Okay. Any other council members that I, that I might have missed? All right. Well, I appreciate you all coming down. Thank you. And obviously, you're welcome to speak during the items. So now we are on to item E, which is the items for deferral withdrawal. Bob?
Yes, there are several items for deferral today, starting with item number four, which is Case 2016 SP-062-001. This is the Earhart Road subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 27 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item five, Case 2016 SP-098-001. This is a rezoning at 910, 912 North Second Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 25 Planning Commission meeting. Next item on the deferral list is item eight, Case 2017 SP-012-001. This is at 730 Old Hickory Boulevard, a rezoning to, from residential to an SP district. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 27 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 10, Case 2017 SP-021-001. This is the Glen Rose SP at 98 Rose Street and 99 Evelyn Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 11 Planning Commission meeting. The next -- The next several cases, the item 12 are all short-term rental cases. It's 12A, 12B, 12C, 12D, 12E, and 12F, and those are all recommended for deferral to the April 27 Planning Commission meeting. Item 13 is case 2015 S-065-001. This is 2044 Straightway. The staff recommendation is to defer to the April 27 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 15, case 2017 S-035-001. This is the Hall Estates Section 3 re-subdivision of Lot 235. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item 23 is case 2017 Z-041 PR-001. This is a rezoning from RS-40 to AR-2A at Hudson Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 27 Planning Commission meeting, and those are all the items for deferral.
Thank you, Bob, and I need to personally recuse myself from 12A, B, C, D, E, and F. And so, let's go through this list slowly. It is items four, five, eight, 10, 12A, 12B, 12C, 12D, 12E, and F, item 13, 15, and 23. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral. Any discussion, we need, well, first, we need a motion. There's been a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor of deferral, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, those items are deferred. So, we are on to item F, consent.
And before I get to the consent items, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So, as I read the following items, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed. Starting with item number three, case 2016 SP-181-001. This is the Evergreen Hills SP at 13880 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item six, case 2017 SP-004-001. This is the 6124 Robertson Avenue SP, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item seven, case 2017 SP-007-001, 6015 and 6017 O'Brien Avenue SP. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 16A, case 2017 CP-010-001. This is a Green Hills Midtown Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve. This is at 2101 Crestmore Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the associated case with that is item 16B, case 2017 Z-046 PR-001. This is a request for rezoning from OR-20 to SCR at 2101 Crestmore Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with, to approve the associated plan amendment and approve this zone change if that was approved, and disapprove if the associated plan amendment is not approved. The next item is item 17, case 2013 SP-047-003. This is the 51st and Centennial SP at 5100 Centennial Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 18, case 2017 SP-026-001. This is the Holly Street Daycare SP, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 19, case 2017 SP-029-001. This is the 26th and Clarksville Pike SP at 2121 26th Avenue North and 2707 Clarksville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item 21, case 2017 Z-039 PR-001. This is a rezoning from RS-5 to R-6A, to R-6A at 1314 Joseph Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 22, case 2017 Z-040 PR-001. This is a rezoning from R-6 to R-6A in Councilman Sledge's district on various streets. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 24, case 2017 Z-042 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to R-6A at 2510 Trevecca Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 25, case 2017 Z-043 PR-001. This is a request for an S, to rezone from SP to R-6A at 609 North Second Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 26, case 2014 UD-001-008. This is in the Clayton Avenue UDO at 838 Clayton Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 27, case 2008-67P-005. This is the Hermitage Car Wash at 3925 Lebanon Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item 28, case 2016 S-102-001, the Keeneland Downs Phase 2 Concept Plan Revision at 6033 Mount V Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And under other business, item 29 is a contract renewal for Letitia Berkland and Peter Westerholm. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 30, certification of bonus height compliance for Capital View Block E. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I will note on item 30 that Commissioner Haynes is recusing himself. And item 31 is certification of bonus height compliance for Pine Street Flats. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 32 is certification of bonus height compliance for the Gulch Crossing Development. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the last item is item 36, is to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Bob. So we'll go through this slow, there's a lot of items on the consent agenda, so it's items three, six, seven, 16A, 16B, 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 36. Is that correct, Bob?
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items that are on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? There's been a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, consent agenda is adopted. Bob, why don't you tell us which items that we're going to hear, so we know in this large agenda, which ones we're going to...
Let's see, items we are going to hear would be...
Just so we're all on the same page.
Item 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B.
Hold on, do 1A.
1A, 1B, 2A, and 2B. Item 9, item 11, item 14, and item 20.
All right, so, for the public, the ones that we have not taken up yet and that we are going to hear tonight are items 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, item 9, 11, 14, and 20. There aren't, if you are not here for that, then, then we've already taken care of your item either on the deferred. If everyone could please exit quietly, or on the consent agenda, then we've taken care of those items. So, we are now ready for presentation on 1A.
Let me clear this up on where we are in the parliamentary procedure for this particular item. We've already had the public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Director?
That is correct, that we've had the public hearing and we closed it.
And we closed it, and so, the public, we're still here, the presentation, and then the Councilmen, and then we'll discuss it amongst Commissioners. There will be no pub, we've already closed the public hearing. Just wanted to let everybody know where we're at. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Anita McCag with Community Plans. This is a plan amendment request in Donaldson, Hermitage, Old Hickory. Just to set the context a bit, this is the rural policy area that you see here, and Councilman wrote and pointed out earlier that this is Interstate 40 as you head east. You've got Percy Priest Lake, there is an interchange here at Stewart Sperry Pike. This is the Old Cloverbottom, the state property. You go up and there's another interstate interchange close with Old Hickory Boulevard here. So you can access the property from doing Bell Road and Dodson Chapel, or Central Pike, or coming north from Lebanon Pike to here. So you see a lot of different policy colors. The very pale green is rural policy, but all this other green you see, the darker green, open space, and the other green, conservation policy with the floodplain of the Stones River. So there is no other rural policy in Hermitage, this is it. And you see the suburban policies all around. So here's an aerial photo showing some of the development, the quarry, different things. You can see that it is a developed area. Here's a closer, zoomed-in view. And then I want to point out, here's the applicant's property, and you're looking east. So you see Summit Medical Hospital up here, you see the Villages of Riverwood, you see the various apartment complexes and subdivisions all around, the quarry, you see the police precinct, the community center, and Hermitage Library here. Here's the interstate. Now you flip and look at the applicant's property, and you look west from it, and you can see some of the larger lots along the bend of the river here. Here's where Villages of Riverwood is still under construction, going to come up this way. Subdivision here, you also have another subdivision coming in here. You see the industrial property, much of that is in the floodplain, but the industrial property all around. So when we considered the plan amendment, we took into context all of that, and we also looked at this whole rural area, you know, should we change all of the rural policy? So just to back up and give you a little bit of history about it, the Councilman mentioned from 2004, 2013, he mentioned about the zoning, but the area's policy was residential low-medium density. Back in 2013, as part of Nashville Next, you know, we had this whole category of old policies, and then we had our newer policies. Before, we had our community workshops, we wanted to get everyone on the same page and look at the same color on the maps. So we did what we call a translation of the older policies into our new policies. That was very methodical, it was if you equal this policy, then you equal this policy. And because this was residential low-medium density and the area lacked access to sewer, then we made this rule. We kept it rural in Nashville Next, simply because we did not hear additional input from residents in the area, from anyone. And the applicant began discussing the property options with planning staff 2015. It was later that staff began working on revisions to the subdivision regulations. January 2016, the applicant officially filed the plan amendment rezoning, and April 2016 was when the Planning Commission adopted the revised subdivision regulations that included guidance for rural areas. So as I mentioned, staff's been discussing and meeting with the applicant for almost two years. Over that time, staff's reviewed several iterations of the project. The applicant has redesigned the project to address staff's design concerns. The applicant has addressed most concerns initially voiced by surrounding residents in the suburban areas, and the applicant has addressed the Council Members' concerns. What's left of the rural policy area, as far as we view, has competing visions. One, some area properties want to remain rural, and some of them have applied to change their zoning to AR-2A, while other property owners we've heard from, including the applicant, wish to develop their properties with suburban residential uses. The aerial showed, within a much larger suburban area, suburban areas are adjacent. The entire rural policy is zoned RS-15, and adjacent properties to the southeast have developed with numerous new houses. So, once again, the policy map and what we're proposing. The proposal meets the policy intent application of suburban neighborhood evolving policy. It illustrates suburban character, it fits within the larger suburban context, while preserving sensitive natural features, green spaces, provides street connectivity, additional housing options, and encourages active transportation with sidewalks in connection to the green way. So, staff is recommending approval of changing the policy to neighborhood evolving for the area outlined in red.
Thank you, Anita, and just for the, oh, I'm sorry.
She's going to give the, now, the presentation.
Part B.
Part B.
Part B. Good afternoon, my name is Letitia Berkland, and I will be presenting the zone change application for the Hesse-Hoggett Ford SP. The proposal is to request, to permit a residential development. The properties are highlighted in red, this is located along Hoggett Ford Road, again, just west of Dodson Chapel and east of Brandell Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to the approval of the Associated Community Plan Amendment. If the Associated Community Plan Amendment is not approved, staff recommends disapproval. Current zoning is RS-15. The existing policy is conservation and T2 rural maintenance, and the proposed policy is T3 suburban neighborhood evolving, which Anita just went through with us a couple minutes ago. In front of you is the proposed plan for 289 residential units. The proposed plan will include two forms of single-family homes, highlighted for you in yellow is the single-family detached homes. These are the alley-loaded, single-family detached, and also, the plan includes villa-style homes or duplexes. Each one of these types of housing units within the regulating, the regulating plan has standards regarding height, setbacks, building location, and architectural style. Here are a couple character images for you to look at from that. For this plan, I should start out by stating that Hoggett Ford Road is currently in two different sections. There is an eastern leg of Hoggett Ford Road, oops, sorry about that, and a western leg of Hoggett Ford Road. Hoggett Ford Road currently does not connect in the middle. There is existing right-of-way that extends the entire length of Hoggett Ford Road, but the road actually itself does not connect. With this proposed SP, the road connection then would happen. Hoggett Ford Road then would be expanded along going western here, and going around the sensitive environmental feature, and connecting to the western leg of Hoggett Ford Road. Along with that, there'll be other local roads installed, public roads and public alleys. Those roads are identified in purple, and the alleys are in blue. As you can see, there are a couple future connection points with this plan, one going northbound here, and two western connections, one a north-east, or, I'm sorry, a northwestern connection, and then the connection we just talked about for that western leg of Hoggett Ford Road. Also, within the plan, you can see that with the new roads, there will be sidewalk connections and a trail connections. The five-foot sidewalks and four-foot planting strips are identified in blue, and the eight-foot wide trail is identified in red, again, going along the new Hoggett Ford Road, providing that connection, and then going north and south. The plan does propose to preserve some tree canopy on the site, as well as identifying designated open space here in the middle, and other open space throughout the proposed plan. Here is the proposed plan, kind of in context with the general area, again, looking at the other existing development in the area. This proposed plan does provide an important connection for Hoggett Ford Road, and does provide various types of housing for the policy. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to the approval of the Associated Community Plan Amendment. If the Associated Community Plan Amendment is not approved, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much, Commissioners. So, I'd just to note for the record that both Commissioner Sims and Gobble have watched the video of the previous session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We will make sure we get that on record, and so, Councilman...
And so, Councilman, would you like to speak again or are you good? You're good. All right. So we are ready for discussion. Council lady?
Thank you. So I supported a deferral because I wanted the opportunity to have the councilmember speak and that's been very helpful to have his input. And one of the questions that I'd asked about was the transit connectivity. If I might ask somebody just to show me the Music City Star line. Again, I'm not sure what map you can... And where that stop is proposed to be, that would be helpful to understand better.
You know, I believe it's going to be off this map.
No, it's on the map.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh. I'm sorry.
Right there is land that is owned by LoJack Industries right there. They own all this back in here as well. Their goal is to build the stop here, mixed use. This is about 20 acres right here. Do the mixed use there. If you'll notice, everything coming off of here, we made sure, and I made Beazer do this, I want everything moving this way so that this right here is... These two are talking about a deal. This is under contract right now. This is under contract. Anything that gets built through here is going to be moving this way and this is going to be all mixed use. So this will be a transit stop and this is a Music City Star line right here.
And that's enough space to include a park and ride, for example?
Correct.
Excellent.
Well, I was actually told that they were wanting more of a platform-type thing right there with more of the building around it. Whether or not, I'm assuming across the... What would be across the railroad tracks right there, they could have some park and ride space.
Some parking. Okay, that seems important. Okay, that was the piece that I was missing. So I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
And also, for the record, Commissioner Tibbs was not here last meeting, but he had also watched the video. So just for the record. Commissioner Sims, you want to go next?
I'm brandy. Let me listen.
She's listening. She's still listening. Well, you know, we usually... I try to be fair and we come over here. Commissioner, you can do it.
I remember this one now. Vaguely. What question? The councilman just said that there are two pieces of property under contract above this one, but it looks to me from the... What I'm seeing, that's a conservation policy and a T2 rural maintenance. So I guess my question is, is this going to be coming back to us several times?
When we first started all this, they had done the whole area is going to be T3. And that was going to be one of my issues. I forgot to bring it up, was that the whole area was going to be changed to T3. You've got all this now starting to get under contract and I'm going to have to come back. Am I going to have to come back every time to make this, you know, to have the same conversation? So it's kind of what I'm... I don't know what y'all want to do. That's just... That's out there. So...
Okay. And could someone refresh my memory as to why we had a public hearing, closed it? Because honestly, I haven't watched the video to refresh my memory as to what we went over. Just didn't have a chance to. As to why we then deferred it to come back and to close?
It was after...
I know I remember it vaguely, but I'm...
Right, okay. So we had the public hearing. Everybody spoke. And as I recall, the commission had some concerns that they hadn't heard from the councilman and that that was the reasoning behind the deferral. And so having heard from the community...
He wasn't here.
Yeah, he wasn't available. And so the commission deferred it for this purpose, for the councilmember to come in and speak.
That I do remember. Okay. I guess the other question is, in the previous, when we had the public hearing, has the recommendation... It looks like on page eight, there's a mention of the zone change request is currently under review as such, the recommendations to change...
Right.
Is that... Did we... Because originally, it's... I think the original was, we are going to take all of this and make it neighborhood evolving. And has that changed since the public hearing to now be?
No.
Okay.
The recommendation is still the same.
Okay.
But we could be... I think you all could direct us to be more selective and, you know, change some of the rule to suburban, if that was the direction you took. I mean, some of the properties that the councilman is referring to.
Okay, so right now, we're keeping T2 rural maintenance policy in the remainder of that area?
Right, except for the properties to the east. There are four properties between the Hesse property and this. And so that we didn't separate these right here. So that we didn't leave those in rural. The recommendation is to change this to suburban evolving.
I'm going to add one thing since I'm here.
You are the voice behind it.
I am the voice behind it. This property right here, I know, is being marketed right now. And so that's... I'm not saying if you... I don't know how y'all would want to do that, but it's just, all of this is... People come to all these people and come to me. I know because I get all the calls. All of this along Central Pike, this is on the capital improvements budget right here to be widened. And so all of this area is very hot right now. The prices have gotten to a point where there's a lot of interest in trying to get some of this open land that is still left right there. So that's what's going on right there. That's all I can really tell you, but it's all, you know, T2. We're going to have to come back to a community plan change every time if somebody wants to sell a piece of property here.
Okay. But 262 is conservation. Is that correct?
262 is T2, correct.
No, a conservation.
With the darker green color. This is conservation.
It's all conservation, right. So it's going to be really hard to develop like...
Correct. The hill, there's a big hill right there.
Yeah. Okay.
And even if... When we revisit the policy for this area, one of the things that... We would still have some conservation policy because of steep slopes here.
Right, right.
And also, depending on how far it reaches, you have some other environmental issues that you'll have to consider.
Right, to the water.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'm going to listen.
Commissioner Gobble?
Like Dr. Sims, I'd like to listen for a bit myself. So thank you.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Well, I'm like, no. I can't use that. I can't use that one. So first question is on the two connections, and you may have answered this and I missed it, but the two connections that are shown, could you go back to the subdivision plan? Is that street that, you know, for them, is that planned? Is that... Was it just right now? It just shows an arrow out there? Is there...
That's correct. It's just showing an arrow right now. In our discussions with Public Works, upon the final site plan application and submittal for construction documents, when it came to that phase, which is actually Phase 3, then it would have to meet any standards that they would require and the transition would have to be made in a safe manner. But because it's a preliminary SP, we don't have that connection determined yet, but that would be located at the Phase 3 for the final site plan.
But it's already been analyzed with the 289 units that it's not... We're not creating dead ends, especially on that Street K that it's...
There's actually some notes within the plan too that talks about emergency access and other items like that before all phases are completed.
So even if it's not done, are the 289 all in this phase though? Is that what you're saying or...
This, the entire plan is for 289 units. There are a total of three phases, on a phasing plan to build it out.
Okay, so it's not all... It's potentially that road will get built before all 289 are there. Is that what you're saying?
Are you asking if the road to the north off-site is being built by this developer?
No, no, no. Just is it just a plan? I know it's not... I know it's not part of this development, but I just didn't make sure it wasn't, we weren't creating this island forever or...
Once we receive the first final site plan application, all departments will have a chance to review it and the requirements at that time will be required of them at whatever point that is.
Okay. And then where you were going before, are there all of it in... The 289, is that in different three phases? Is that what you're saying?
No, the total, whole total, a total of 289 units.
Okay.
In this entire plan you're looking at.
It's in three phases.
In three phases.
In three phases, okay. All right. You know, generally speaking, just the way that that area is developing, my first thought listening in, that it was very rural, but it does seem like the... Especially with the Music City Star coming in there, this area is, seems to be appropriate for that type of development. You know, I always see, hear that big number and I was originally kind of put back by that. I'll feel a lot better once that road's in, I think, but just because of, we were talking about a lot of traffic pulling back out. And, you know, the way... I feel like the way that we've looked at trying to keep some of it rural, I think that, you know, I've been pretty comfortable with that part of the plan. And I also think I saw part of your conditions is improvement infrastructure. I think that was part of it, which is obviously a big part of this. So I'm pretty amenable to it right now. I want to listen to everybody else, but right now, I feel pretty comfortable with it.
Commissioner James?
People will get from this development in phases to the Music City Star prior to the projects to the north being developed and assuming they never happen?
Sure. Yeah, sure.
Maybe with the aerial?
Yeah, I need to... Sorry. Is that all right there? Yeah, it's fine. So this right here is Hoggett-Ford Road. This is Dodson Chapel right here. This is Central Pike. I don't know if you're familiar with Central Pike. This right here is, you know, it's five lanes, well, four lanes and a turn lane all the way down to right here. All of this area right through here is on the capital improvements budget. This right here is Dodson Chapel and I believe y'all have this. Planning has this as a community center. I believe it's what y'all...
Neighborhood center.
Neighborhood center. So the, all of this area right here, some of this is mixed use right now and I've been contacted about several parcels along here. These individuals, if there was never anything built right here, however, I'm fairly certain that this lady right here, I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm very familiar with her and she is looking to sell this piece of property right there. And that would be the quickest access to get to the Music City Star. If not, they would make the... Through here. So that's sidewalks being put in right here and then once this is done, the sidewalk will be there. So you could either ride a bike or walk around to Music City.
So the path of travel from this project to the Music City Star is not...
Less than a mile at most, yes.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. And then staff, relative to how they're going to phase it and the requirements to build the roads, are all of the roads within the development itself being built during Phase 1 or will they be phased as the project is phased?
Well, again, this is a preliminary plan. So in their plan, they have a total of three phases.
Can you go back to the road?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right. So within the first phase, it would stop right about here, coming down. So you'd have those connections.
And does that north-south road in the middle get built in Phase 1?
No, it would actually just... I'm sorry, it'll be right here on the eastern boundary of that. The next phase, so Phase 2, would then come through here, cut off here, making sure I follow the map correctly, down here. And then Phase 3 would then be the total leftover phase here.
Okay.
And that's when that connection would be made.
Okay, so how many units are in Phase 1 approximately?
Let me take a look here. Give me one moment.
That's a question.
Approximately maybe 80 to 90 units.
Okay. You know, I think staff's done a really good job of pushing the developer to get to this plan. I think we're conserving a ton of green space and a well-thought-out plan. I can understand why the neighbors are concerned, but I think this is very well-thought-out and I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll go back to the two other... The new Commissioners, do y'all have any questions? And we'll make sure that we get everything answered for y'all. Commissioner Gobble?
One question. The Hoggett-Ford Road connection, which right now that's... Doesn't connect. Is that part of Phase 1 or is that... Would that be in a later phase?
That would be in Phase 3 right over here. So right now, we have two legs of Hoggett Road. We have the eastern side and we have the western side. So to provide that connection, that would be done at Phase 3, the last phase, to connect into the western side.
Okay. I actually drove out there, drove around, and that western connection to Hoggett-Ford Road is basically a one-lane road.
Thank you.
Is that something that's going to be discussed?
Certainly something that we have had conversations with Public Works with. And again, they'd be able... They'd be improving the road as you see it here. When it hits that property line, then there will be a plan of how it would safely connect into that one-lane road. It has not been determined at this time what that's going to look like, but that would certainly be looked at for safety and all requirements for Public Works and traffic.
Just so that we're being clear, it doesn't meet the full connection until Phase 3, correct?
Correct.
But is there a leg of it, a portion of it, that is done in Phase 1 at all? I mean, it has to connect.
Yes, this over here on the eastern side. That's what's going to connect.
So that would be done in Phase 1?
Phase 1. Phase 2 would be this, where do you want us to go? Right there. And then Phase 3 connecting to the western side.
Okay.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Well, just to make a statement, I tend to agree. You know, I grew up in Donaldson. We've been going through this evolution for 50 years. There's a lot of farmland that's converted into residential. That's what makes Donaldson, Donaldson. So I agree with the councilman about that section as a policy. It's kind of a donut hole that needs to be filled in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sims?
Like Commissioner Gobble, I went and looked at it, drove all around through there and walked through there. I want to compliment the staff on bringing us along. We've got a lot of background information and I think you've worked very hard with the developer to do what was necessary. I am concerned about the traffic and think that whatever commitments the developer is making has to be done. The traffic on a Saturday afternoon was really bad and so the connecting roads have to be really seriously considered here. The other is, and I know this was not part of the request here, but the workforce and affordable housing is an issue for a city that's almost in a crisis. And I would like to see us in the future when developers like you come, we actually can answer yes to those questions rather than no. That's all.
Very good. Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Hagan? Yes.
I do have one more question. It may have been addressed already. If so, I apologize. We had in the notes too that some community members realized in September of 2016, I remember this discussion in the public hearing, that their property wasn't... That was zoned RS-15 and they wanted to go to AR-2A. And then our notes say that that is currently under review because they were committed to keeping their properties rural, which is separate from this piece. It goes back to that, do we need to change the whole policy or do we just change the policy for this property? Has that changed since our last meeting?
What has changed, the councilman referenced that, that he isn't changing it to regulatory SP and working with them because there are some uses in AR-2A that cause concern.
Okay, I do now... It's a harm of going first is I'm like...
But it's still in review. It's still in process review.
It's still in review. Okay. And it changed to, if we were to change a policy for the whole area, would that nullify the current zone review? Zone change review?
Not if it was an SP.
Oh, SP, no. Okay, yeah.
I mean...
Okay. Okay.
Council lady?
Thank you.
Counselee?
Thank you. Can I ask one more clarifying?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I'm just still thinking my way through, through the traffic. When that first area is developed, it looks to me like that, that's, there are a lot of units there. If that's more than 100 or close to 100, will that automatically trigger a traffic impact study at that point?
So, what would happen is they would apply for their final SP. Whatever is in there, these are just preliminary phase lines at this time, whatever they apply for traffic and parking will review and state, yes, you have to have XYZ studies. So, typically, it's over the 100 units, as you know. If that happens, then that would trigger it per their requirements.
And so, at that point, they could then say, and at this point, you have to add a left-turn signal or a left-turn lane or whatever.
Exactly. So, it depends on what that first final SP comes in for.
Okay, I think that, I think that's important to know that it, that if it's, if it's large enough, then there will be a traffic review and some important recommendations made at that point. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, we'll need a motion on 1A.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
To reopen to the public, there's some new information, including a court order that says that this is illegal.
Sir? Sir, we unfortunately cannot do that, but you can hand it to your councilman, and he can...
Well, I did, and he then proceeded to lie directly to your face.
All right, counsel...
He intended to...
Sir?
It's a court order.
Thank you, and you can also, there is a way, if, once we make a decision, there's a review, there can be a judicial review, and you can file suit against the commission. So, you have the ability to do that. There was statements made, I appreciate you coming down here, but this is, unfortunately, that time has already passed, and you'd already spoken last meeting, so I appreciate you coming down, and you can pursue judicial purposes, so. Is there a motion on 1A?
That we support the staff's recommendation.
There's been a motion to approve staff's recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it. I need a motion on 1B. There's been a motion to approve staff's recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
So, second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and 1B is adopted. We are on item 2. All right, if everybody could quiet down, let's go to item 2. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Marty Sewell with Community Plans. This is item 2A. It's a request to amend the southeast community plan on Burkett Road. It's associated with another, with its zoning case that will be presented next. The request is to change the policy for approximately five acres, shown here in the red, small red here, and then, the area outlined in blue shows you the associated zone change that, again, we'll hear about in just a few minutes. The planned amendment area includes a lot of undeveloped property, as you can see here, and is surrounded by rural and suburban residential development. And the request is to change from suburban neighborhood-evolving policy to neighborhood-center policy for the small portion of the overall SP area, and that's to support the associated case to go from AR-2A to specific plan for mixed use. The staff recommends approval. Now, the existing AR-2A does not allow the development pattern and mix of uses that the applicant is proposing, and the existing AR-2A zoning is intended to implement the natural conservation of rural land use policies of the general plan. The proposed SP and new zoning district provides for additional flexibility of design, including the relationship of streets to buildings, to provide the ability to implement the specifics of the general plan. While the requested zone change is for the entire parcel, with the SP's overall site plan shown here, that Sean will present later in detail, the portion for the actual plan amendment is only the small area that includes the neighborhood center. Again, that was the five acres, let's see, wrongly. The current policy supports a suburban residential development of housing, a low to moderate densities in neighborhoods that are planned to evolve over time, but does not support the mixed use that's needed here. And I note that the amendment area includes some conservation area along, as you can see, the little strip of conservation, which is not proposed to change with this request. The proposed suburban mixed-use neighborhood policy is intended to preserve, enhance, and create suburban mixed-use neighborhoods that, excuse me, urban mixed-use centers that include a variety of housing types, mixed-use, commercial, office, institutional development, and the characteristics include moderate to high-density residential with buildings close to the street and a highly connected, complete street network. And then, the rationale for applying the neighborhood center policy in this area include the fact that with this SP, you have a proposed 800 units for residential units, and then, you also have a lot of the development that is going on to the south, and even to the east and west of this area, specifically to the west. It fronts an arterial boulevard that is proposed for five lanes, which is another criteria, and therefore, this request does meet the intent for the application of the T3 neighborhood-center policy. And as a result, the staff recommends approval.
And so, the next item on the agenda is 2B, which is the associated case for the Burkett Ridge SP. The request is to permit a mixed-use development on 144 acres on Burkett Road. We are approximately one mile east of Nolansville Pike in southeast Nashville. The subject property is outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, subject to the approval of the associated plan amendment. And if the associated plan amendment is not approved, staff recommends disapproval. As Marty mentioned, the current zoning on the property is AR-2A, which requires a minimum lot size of two acres and is intended for uses that generally occur in rural areas. The existing policy on this property is both conservation and T3 suburban neighborhood-evolving. The T3 neighborhood-evolving policy is intended to create and enhance suburban residential areas with more housing choice and increased connectivity. This proposal includes a variety of housing types. It adds sidewalks to the area, and there are design standards intended to enhance the pedestrian realm. It also incorporates open space around environmental features, and for those reasons, it is consistent with the current T3 suburban neighborhood-evolving policy. As Marty described, there's also a proposal to change portion of the policy, just upside down, sorry, in this area to T3 neighborhood center, and that would be consistent with the SP as proposed as well. So, this is the site plan oriented with north at the top of your screen. For visibility reasons, I'm about to flip the orientation on you. So, from now on, north will be to the right, Burkett Road, which is actually at the south end of the property, is on the left-hand side of the screen, and Nolansville Pike would be towards the top of your screen. So, we'll stick with this orientation for the rest of the presentation. So, this is the site plan for the proposed SP. It would allow 17,000 square feet of commercial uses located towards the front in the neighborhood-center area where the policy amendment would take place. It would also permit up to 800 residential uses, units, as well as civic and institutional uses such as a fire station. There is a site proposed for that within this SP. The proposal generally transitions in intensity from the neighborhood center along Burkett Road, which would include some mixed use, to lower-intensity, single-family development as you move towards the rear of the site away from Burkett Road, and also, towards the bottom of the screen here, there's a transition to rural policy to the east, and so, there's single-family and a large buffer helping to transition there as well. This slide demonstrates the, the street connections that are proposed. There will be two access points on Burkett Road for this development, and then, there are future connections proposed both to the north and to the west, and those are generally consistent with planned future arterials on the major and collector's street plan. They will provide connectivity for this area as the surrounding neighborhood-evolving policy land develops. There will be sidewalks and planting strips throughout the development, consistent with local street standards on the interior, and consistent with the major and collector's street plan requirements along Burkett Road, and there will be improvements to Burkett and other surrounding roads and intersections through conditions of the traffic impact study. The proposal does include flexibility in the layout and location of buildings through a series of what they're calling neighborhood districts. There are five different districts in the plan. Each of these support a range of uses. There would be multifamily and commercial buildings in the neighborhood-center policy area in District 1. District 2 would contain the civic and institutional uses. Again, that fire station site I mentioned is likely to be here, as well as multifamily, residential, some townhomes, and the possibility of assisted living. District 3 would be primarily townhomes and some single-family development. District 4 is multifamily in this area, and then, District 5 would be all detached, single-family. There are associated building typologies for each of these use types, which would regulate the form, bulk, scale, and architectural style of each of the buildings, as well as the parking. And there is an option for live-work units, which would take, locate in District 1 in the neighborhood-center policy, which is consistent with the policy guidance. And as I mentioned, there are also opportunities to integrate assisted living into some of the residential units. That would occur only in Districts 2 and 4. You'll note that there are some special focus lots indicated on the plan with a star. There are some special architectural guidelines designed to make sure that those lots at key intersections are treated appropriately and address the streets well. This plan does support two critical planning goals. It provides a range of housing choices in this area, from multifamily to townhomes to detached, single-family. It also helps create walkable neighborhoods by incorporating some neighborhood-scale commercial and mixed-use development that would serve not only the residents of this development, but potentially residents of residential developments on the south side of Burkett Road that are under development at this time. With that, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, subject to the approval of the associated plan amendment.
Thank you for the great presentation. The app will open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant here? Come on up. You'll have 10 minutes, and you can save two minutes of the 10, if you would like, for rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is David McGowan. I've been developing homes in the Nashville area since 1988. We actually developed Lennox Village years ago, and then, I will tell you, it's won numerous awards, and we're very proud of that community. We did that in collaboration with working with the city. The city director, as well as the planning staff, worked with us to develop a community that really addressed workforce housing. That was our primary goal. Our company, Regent Homes, builds about 300 to 400 homes a year, along with apartments and neighborhood commercial. We employ 50 people, and we're very active in the community. We are the largest privately-owned home builder in the city of Nashville. Also, in addition to Regent Homes, I want to let you know that I am a current board member and past chairman of Habitat United Humanity, current board member and past chairman of Adventure Science Center, current board member and past president of Home Builders Association. I'm advisory board member to Middle Tennessee State University, where I helped create a degree program to help young men become home builders and land developers. I'm also on the advisory board of THDA, a member of the Urban Land Institute, and I'm currently vice president and of Gold Build Tennessee, a nonprofit that helps young people consider going into trades, because there's so many people leaving the trades now, we need young people to come into trades and help build homes and communities. I added the picture down below to show you that Lennox Village won numerous AIA awards, and cities from all of the United States would come to Lennox Village and say, how did you do this without government money? And the way we did it was without government money, and number one, we got the land at the right price, and we were able to get the density that we needed from the city. And, and again, the firm that helped us do Lennox Village is a firm that's working on this particular project. The individuals are from Smith G., which used to be LRK. And with that, I'd like to bring Greg up, who is with Smith G., he's the planner.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Chairman Haggins and Secretary Sloan and Commissioners. My name is Greg Tibble. I'm with Smith G. Studio here in Nashville. As David said, we helped master plan Lennox Village, which was Nashville's first real traditional neighborhood development in this, in this southeast community plan. I just want to talk a little bit about the planning process we went through. Our team and Councilman Bedney hosted three meetings for this project through public meetings, the first on August 30th, where we discussed the policy area, traffic concerns, potential solutions, and really wanted to listen to the community, community to help us develop a plan. We didn't come to that meeting with a plan. We reviewed the special policy area and the 12 IDA. We understand that this is an infrastructure-deficient area identified in the southeast community plan, and what we wanted to do in that meeting was show how, could development help solve those traffic infrastructure deficiencies by creating connecting streets through this plan, through this community area, to kind of parallel Nolansville Pike and the congestion thereon? We discussed traditional neighborhood development versus conventional suburban development and the different forms, and we hosted a visioning survey to solicit input from public regarding housing options, architectural forms, streetscapes, and open spaces. We came back on October 24th, and we presented the vision survey results to the public, and we presented two concept site plan options. We presented one that was by right without zoning, which was based on assisted living and independent living, and then, we presented another preferred plan, which is the plan you see, similar to the plan you see before you today. And again, we listened to the community and solicited their input. Then, between that and the next public meeting, Dave went and met individually with adjoining property owners on Gloryland Lane to the east of this property. So, during that time, we came back in November 28th, we revised our plan, we presented our preferred plan with these options, 100-foot landscape buffer along the eastern property line, a landscape zone along Burkett Road with a trail. We reduced the residential density slightly, and we reduced the neighborhood commercial from 40,000 square feet down to 17,000 square feet. Dave hired RPM to generate a traffic impact study and thoughtful infrastructure improvement recommendations, including a signal at Westcott Lane, Westcott, and the main entry to our proposed development, turn lanes, and also, improvements off-site at Nolansville Pike intersection and the Nolansville Pike Old Hickory Boulevard intersection for traffic signal improvements. We believe this plan meets the T3 neighborhood-evolving policy. We believe this plan accommodates for connectivity per the special policy area 12 IDA in the major and collector's street plan for Nashville's goals. We believe this plan provides a variety of housing choices and neighborhood retail in a walkable neighborhood setting. We also understand that 35%, roughly, 35% of this property will remain undeveloped in conservation. In closing, we want to thank Councilman Bedney, the planning staff, and most importantly, the community for their assistance in creating a plan that we believe meets the community policy and supports Metro's, Metro's goals for growth, housing choices, and infrastructure needs in the southeast community. We'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal at the end.
Thank you.
I would like to add that this project is estimated to run a $200 million project. We estimate it's going to generate $19 million a year in taxes to the city. I don't know if you all know it or not, but there was a study done on Lennox Village, and it compared it to the Gulch and other neighborhoods that were developed. What was determined out of that study was that Lennox Village did not cost the city money. It generated enough money that it was neutral. So, a lot of subdivisions that are just 100 lots, subdivisions that are 50 or 60 foot wide, generate a lot of cost for the city, and so, this, this neighborhood hopefully will do the same thing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, we'll have two minutes for rebuttal. We're now in the portion of the public hearing where those, is anyone in the audience wishing to support the project? Please come forward, line up. You'll have two minutes to state your case, and please tell us your name and your address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Greg Brus. I live in Burkett Springs, and that's a subdivision just south of it, directly across the street from it. I have been to Councilman Bedney's meetings and pretty well understand what the change would, would do, and I'm here in favor of it. I have, I know David McGowan. I have purchased three buildings, two residential and one business from him in the last 10 years, two of them in Lennox Village. He's a good builder, an honest builder, and he, and he keeps his word. I'm also a member of the Burkett Springs Neighborhood Watch, and we are probably about 40 members plus now. Burkett Springs is still under construction. When it's finished, it'll have close to 200 families in it, I think 187 lots are in there. We, we are, have looked at the plan, we've discussed it, talking about it in a meeting a month or so ago. We do meet every month, and the consensus was that we wanted access to the best positive impact we could, and we believe that this zoning change would provide that. It would also even give us walking to some of the, the commercial areas that would be part of it. And the traffic improvements, we are concerned about the traffic, very concerned, but we know something's going to be built, and I think with the traffic light and the turn lanes, it's probably our best option to have the zoning change, and that's why we're in support of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I have to mention something. We have numerous people here that support us, but some of them might not speak, and I'd like to just sit down and request that Joe Manz and Joe Mann...
We'll do that at the, at the end of all the people supporting. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Dorinda Cercey, I'm vice president of sales for Regent Homes, and in my role, I spend a lot of time in our model homes, working with people that come in looking for housing, and I'm just here to offer my support for the community, because I see on a daily basis, schoolteachers and nurses and people of that nature coming in, looking for affordable workforce housing in those areas, and there's not a lot of options in that area for those people looking for housing. You know, they're looking for location, they're looking for accessibility, they have accessibility issues, they're looking for price point and new construction, so they don't have to worry about maintenance issues. So, I would just like to offer my experience, and I'm on the ground every day in our model homes, seeing a huge demand for this type of housing that is being proposed tonight, and I would just like for you guys to know that that is a real...
And we'll honor the requests. It's always good for the commissioners to know how many people are here in support. So if you would raise your, if you're here in support, will you please raise your hand?
Sorry.
All right. Now those, now we're in, folks, are you in support, ma'am?
I'm in support.
Okay, come on up.
Okay.
Okay. State your name and your address. You'll have two minutes.
I'm Kat Hughes, and I live in Burkitt Village, which is next to Burkitt Springs. But I'm also work for Regent, and I sell the homes. That's one of the reasons, though, I bought in the community, is because I have the feel of it. Every time that I have somebody, I drive through, and I tell them about how we've mixed the community up, and you have the townhomes, you have the cottage homes, they love that. It's not a cookie cutter, not like your normal homes that are, I shouldn't say competition, but, but anyway, I've done very well out there, and I really love the community. And people don't want to leave that community. They'll either buy up, or they'll buy down, but they don't want to leave the community. And it's across the street with the retail and all that. When I tell people about that possibility, they're very excited about it.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Sir, are you here? Just come on. Oh, no problem. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. If y'all would line up, that would be great. That way, we can get through this quickly. Thank you. State your name and your address, sir.
I am David Harper. My wife and I live at 107 Gloryland Lane. Our property backs up to the proposed development. On page 20 of item number 2A under community participation, it lists the community meetings, which my wife and I attended all three of those. In each of those meetings, the vast majority, if not everyone, that lived in the surrounding area of the Burkitt Ridge development, were opposed to another high-density development. Regarding the community plan change, the southeast plan change, we are opposed to the changes that are requested for these reasons. This application far exceeds the allowances for population growth and the vision for the area set by the Nashville-Nexx Community Plan. Changing the community does not fit with the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Retail and commercial is not supported by the primary road, Burkitt Road. Multi-level housing is inappropriate, we believe, in a semi-rural, and I would say rural, area. With regards to the Burkitt Springs specific plan, Burkitt Road is already dangerous. There are numerous accidents monthly, if not weekly, placing yet another enormous development on this road, especially one with such excessive density would be irresponsible. My wife told me she came here today, there was an accident on Burkitt Road, the law enforcement had to close it down. A development that exceeds two stories is intrusive to surrounding neighbors, is not consistent with any other buildings in the surrounding neighborhoods. In the meetings, we were told that the developer would only build one story to one and a half story directly behind property, but other areas of the development are showing otherwise. There are underground streams that flow from this property onto my property. We're concerned that these streams could be affected by this development. And my last thought, we asked the planning commission to take into consideration the other existing developments approved nearby that are currently under construction or soon will be under construction, to fully appreciate how detrimental Burkitt Ridge will be for this semi-rural neighborhood, especially on this side of Burkitt Road.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Melissa Adgason. I'm a lifelong resident of Davidson County. The last 32 years, I've resided at 6600 Whittemore Lane, which is just right around the corner from this development, and I have property that adjoins this development. Burkitt Road, as we all know that live out there, is a cut-through road. It's always been that way, and it always probably will be. But in my opinion, it's worked as a cut-through road all these years because of the AR2 zoning. The driveways are, you know, few and far between, because most people honestly own a lot more than two acres of the people who have lived out there before these developments came along. So then we had Burkitt Place come in, and all of a sudden, you've got several hundred more vehicles trying to turn on to Burkitt and turn off of Burkitt. And also, I meant to state that most of the people coming through there as a cut-through road are going, at least 45, but a lot of times over the speed limit through there. So then you add in Burkitt Springs, that is under development with several hundred more. You've got Burkitt, down at the end of Burkitt, at Nolan'sville Road, that one's already under development. Then you've got a huge apartment development a few miles the other way down the road towards the interstate. You've got hundreds and hundreds of more vehicles that are trying to cut in and out when you've got all these other people trying to cut through from Davidson County to Rutherford County and the like. And in my opinion, this just makes it even more dangerous, and it's a safety issue for me and my family, three generations living out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Tessa Tally. I live across the street from this proposed subdivision.
What's your address, ma'am?
6991 Burkitt. And also, the first neighbor hit a lot of points, second neighbor, and we did have an accident out there today, which we have multiple accidents weekly. I'm asking that you guys wait, postpone this rezoning change until we can get Nolan'sville Road to four lanes, and we can accommodate this extra traffic with Burkitt Village, and now he's building on the corner, the condos, and he's got another 80, 90 acres that he's going to put multiple housing on. And this subdivision is in the middle, and it is currently zoned AR2A. This is agricultural property. Why do we need retail when this development is less than a mile from Nolan'sville Road, which does contain commercial property? Why can't you have this zoned, single-family housing? I like the idea, because I've been asking for a fire station out there for years. Our closest two are more than five miles away, so if he could provide some land for a fire station, which is badly needed there. Also, I think it's really sad when the developer and the councilman threaten the neighbors with a trailer park. This development, I don't think, will enhance the area. We don't want another Lennox Village.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen, actually, we're speaking on behalf of a community group, so could you please be granted the full five minutes?
Ma'am, come to the microphone.
Thank you. We also have some handouts for the commission members to review. Someone able to distribute those?
Which community group are you with?
We are the Friends of Burkitt Community Group, that encompasses the neighbors of Pettis Road, Burkitt Road.
Thank you.
Whittemore Lane and Gloryland Lane. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Planning commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today in opposition of Burkitt Ridge and also amendment of the southeast community plan. My name is Kelly Amoroso. This is my husband, Nick Amoroso, and we own 6266 and 6268 Pettis Road in Antioch, one of the Board of Properties at the heart of this, these two applications. We speak before you today on behalf of the Friends of Burkitt Community Group, a group comprised of the hard-working people of Kane Ridge on Burkitt Road, Pettis Road, Whittemore Lane, and Gloryland Lane, all of whom oppose this application. Please kindly reference the accompanying petition and the 243 individual signatures of the aforementioned neighbors and community, many of whom have lived in Kane Ridge for decades or generations, and all of whom oppose both of these applications. Unfortunately, some of these people are unable to physically attend today due to their existing work commitments, illness, or sheer distance from home, but nonetheless wish to have their voices heard in opposing both this community plan amendment and the Burkitt Ridge specific plan. The people of the Kane Ridge community are one of the primary reasons this area is so special. So we trust that you'll give their vision for this community the weight that it deserves. There has been no public hearing on a proposed amendment to the southeast community plan, so our community has been denied their rights to be informed and provide feedback on that specific application. Moving forward, the property at the heart of this amendment request is located in special policy Area 12 IDA, the designated southeast infrastructure deficiency area. You'll find this on page one of the handout. Therefore, when discussing the proposed southeast community plan amendment, we would be remiss if we didn't also address Burkitt Road itself, the sole road that services the parcel pertaining to this application and its deficiencies. Burkitt Road has no significant improvements since its initial infrastructure deficiency area designation. Its proximity to Williamson and Rutherford Counties has rapidly seen it become a major vehicle corridor, with in excess of 12,000 vehicles utilizing it daily. However, this single-lane rural road does not even meet the basic standards set by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Burkitt Road has inadequate site distances owing to its extreme vertical grade changes and horizontal curvature. Burkitt Road is dangerous. It has no shoulder and a steep drop-off on either side for the majority of its length. It's no surprise that Burkitt Road is already the side of multiple dozens of accidents yearly, given its failure to comply with basic ASHTO standards. The lack of critical infrastructure is one of the primary reasons that we oppose any amendment to the southeast community plan and why we also oppose Burkitt Ridge. This application goes against the long-range plan developed by the Nashville-Nexx Project to carefully and conscientiously account for projected growth, development, and preservation in southeast Nashville, while allowing the area to retain some of its rural identity. The current community character plan does not and should not support urban elements of commercial dwellings and mixed-use live-work dwellings in an environment of suburban and semi-rural, primarily single-family detached homes that are all set on acreage. These types of commercial, live-work, and multi-story, multifamily apartment urban dwellings not only generate substantial additional traffic, they also attract it without the basic infrastructure to support it. To juxtapose elements of a T4 urban transect immediately adjacent to designated T2 rural areas that immediately bordered the northwest and east perimeters of this application would be a permanent eyesore to the community. Approving an amendment to the southeast community plan sets a terrible precedent for future developers to disregard the guidelines set forth by those who diligently planned for carefully calculated growth and prosperity. The community, and it also guarantees the eradication of local wildlife and their habitats and erases the history and charm of this neighborhood. Next southeast community plan says, "The southeast remaining rural areas are highly valued by residents for the scenic beauty and contribution that these underdeveloped areas make." Indeed, they are correct. It was factored in as an important element of the original community plan, and we request your urgent assistance in protecting and upholding those values. In the absence of...
Ma'am, thank you. We, you've run out of time.
I apologize.
And it's okay to go over a little bit, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
That's okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? We'll make sure we get to everybody. All right, the applicant, you'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. We do a lot of market studies, and we've learned that basically 73% of the people buying homes in this particular area do not have children at home under the age of 18. And most of them are young professionals that are moving into the Nashville area, who would like to buy a home between a $200,000 price range and a $300,000 price range. That's who we're targeting. We do everything around a TCG, a Targeted Consumer Group. So we know who's going to buy these homes before we ever build them. That's why we have the success of Lennox Village and numerous other communities we build. The only real difference of this community from Lennox is that we're going to add a component of independent living. The assisted living program in the United States is morphing into something different. What you're finding is seniors are living longer, and they do not want to be locked up in a room inside an institution. And so one of the things we want to do is incorporate independent living inside of the single-family homes and the townhomes that we're building now. If you remember the old show, Golden Girls, where three ladies shared an apartment together or home together. That's what we envision in this particular community. There will be probably a central dining facility that they can go to and eat, but other than that, that is the main difference that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few responses regarding safety on Burkitt Road. We do not want to create a situation that will endanger anyone in the southeast community by making Burkitt Road any worse than it is today. In fact, Dave McGowan is spending currently millions of dollars on off-site infrastructure improvements in the southeast community. And we are using this development also to improve Burkitt Road, both on Burkitt Road and at Nolan'sville Pike and Burkitt Road and Old Hickory Boulevard and Burkitt Road, thus helping to improve the infrastructure deficiencies in the southeast community area. Why do we need retail was a question. It's instrumental in a walkable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Haynes, Commissioner?
I see where he's required to dedicate land for a future school. Do we know how that works, staff? It's obviously not within this project itself.
Correct. So there's a condition on the SP approval that requires that dedication per policy of the planning commission. And the condition requires that the applicant work with metro schools to determine an appropriate site. It can be onsite in some cases. It can also be offsite. And I would have to let the applicant speak to whether they've done any coordination to date, but they would have to do that as they move through this process.
So the requirement would be prior to pulling the first permit, that condition would be satisfied?
We'll check the wording.
Red button.
So typically, they would go to the school board and seek advice on whether or not that the site would be desired, and then that would be taken up at council as well. So all of that would be taken care of prior to the permits.
And it's prior to permit for residential uses on the site would be the trigger for that.
And we would just need confirmation prior to a final plat being recorded that they, that schools has either required that school site dedication or not required it. And this is, this is a condition to the metro council, so if the council carries this forward, then, then it would be required prior to final plat approval that they dedicate that if schools needs the site in this area.
Okay. That's all I have. Rich did.
First of all, I do commend the plan itself, and I definitely, the diversity that was planned into it. I think that's, a lot of times, we see just one type, and I think the fact that, looking at independent living, assisted living, different townhomes, as well as single families, actually, I like that for community, and I think that's applaud to developer and the designers for thinking through that. And also, you know, keeping a large area of it, natural area as it's shown on this drawing. My issue, and the area, I think, is okay for it, but my issue is similar to what a lot of the, I think, the biggest issue of the public is how it all drops right into Burkitt. That is a lot of, lot of homes that are headed right to Burkitt. And so I kind of get back to even where I was on the last case on these connectors. Are there, I know you said that it's in the plan, but is there any future plans at all for where they're trying to connect out on these, you know, as you said, to the right, the new north and...
So those are, those are shown as, as potential future connections on this plan. They, this property, this project would have to build those to the property line. But whether they connect or not would be dependent on when the surrounding properties develop, which is not part of this project.
And it's, and it's not really readily planned. It's just, you know, I mean, it's forecasted, but it's not like they've, this is going to happen next five years or something necessarily. the new north and-
So, those are shown as potential future connections on this plan. This property, this project would have to build those to the property line, but whether they connect or not would be dependent on when the surrounding properties develop, which is not part of this project.
And it's not really readily planned. It's just, you know, I mean, it's forecasted, but it's not like this is going to happen next five years or something necessarily.
It's an evolving policy area, so there is an intent that the development pattern would change over time, but those are all, there's various independent property owners, so there's no specific proposals right now.
Sure. That's kind of what I thought. So, that's really my, and then the community meetings, I noticed, did the council have any comment on it? Did he send anything, or did he, is that in the big packet?
We don't have anything in writing from-
Okay. About to say something else here. Because, I mean, this is 200 and, you know, it's a lot of people who have said it, so it'd be interesting to hear more from, maybe kind of hear more about that, since so many people seem to be against it, or at least had opposition. And it was interesting, too, that all the, everybody talked about Burkitt. It wasn't about, most of them were not necessarily about the plan, so a little bit of that is my concern, too, is, and we've had this concern every development we approve, like where it drops into, and I am familiar with this cut-through, whoever put it as a cut-through. It is a lot of cars, and it's more and more cars, so I do have a concern about that, and especially without knowing, and maybe I should ask, too, are there plans from us to, or not from us, but from Public Works, or anything to widen Burkitt anytime soon, or-
It just so happens, Public Works is here.
Okay.
I believe, come on up.
Beverly Amorrell, Traffic Engineer with Public Works. I'm not aware that Burkitt Road is in our, is it a capital project?
We can't even bring the speaker up in the mic. They can't hear you.
I'm not aware that Burkitt Road is in our capital project list. I'm sorry, I'm not aware of that. Now, I do know that several developments in the area are conditioned, and we have seen plans, roadway plans, at Nolansville, all the way to Old Burkitt Road, basically, to construct basically a three-lane cross-section with right-turn lanes. At this development, they will be constructing left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes at both access points. There will be probably with curb and gutter, widening the road through that area. There will be a design, a signal design there at Westcott and the access one, and that will have to be designed appropriately. The traffic study that was done by their consultant also identified with a certain amount, percentage of traffic, then a signal will be, need to be installed at Old Burkitt and at, excuse me, at Burkitt Road in Old Hickory Boulevard. And that may be around 50% of their traffic. Basically, the traffic is estimated around 50% will go back towards Nolansville, and the other 50% will go back towards Old Hickory Boulevard.
Are we looking on here where that signal is, or is that further that way? Are we looking at that big, next to the-
The signal is right there at access one. Can you point to it?
Okay. And that is part of this development?
Yes, and that will align with Westcott, which is Burkitt Springs.
Okay, that's Westcott over there, okay.
So, that, and that signal will be put in when it's warranted. With the number of houses in Burkitt Springs that are being developed, probably, you know, I think the condition was about 100. We're going to get a warrant analysis, about 100 units for Burkitt Ridge, but because of the additional traffic on the opposing property, it'll probably be made sooner rather than later.
Yeah, okay.
And those widening improvements will have to be put in with that signal.
Okay.
Anything?
Yeah. Commissioner, the floor is still yours, Commissioner.
Yeah, that makes me feel a little bit better, but it's still a lot of cars coming out there right at this part, but I'll listen to my other commissioners.
Commissioner Godel.
I agree with Commissioner Tibbs. I like the diversity and the pedestrian orientation of the way it's laid out in the natural areas.
Yeah.
I think the traffic is an issue, but traffic studies have been done, as I understand, and that's going to Public Works. Is the improvement for the frontage that fronts on Burkitt Road, will they improve that entire front on Burkitt Road as far as curbs and that kind of thing?
So, I can speak to the fact that Burkitt Road is on the Major and Collector Street Plan, and so, there will be, and the Major and Collector Street Plan ultimately calls for a five-lane section there, although that's not going to be required right off the bat with this. But they will be required to provide sidewalks and a planting strip and curb that are consistent with the Major and Collector Street Plan along the full property frontage of Burkitt Road.
I'll listen to my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Hanger.
Okay. I want to talk about the community plan amendment first, and then we'll talk about the zoning. First, it sounds like T3 neighborhood-evolving, suburban neighborhood-evolving, which is the current community plan, supports most of the SP, the residential, but not the commercial. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, under the current community plan, without a change, they could do a development, well, they had to change the zoning because it's not, but the zone change request would be appropriate under the current community plan if not for the commercial and mixed use.
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to lay it out in my brain here. Sometimes it doesn't all sink in. So, the community participation, that concerns me. As someone who's been in communities where we've had strong community participation in meetings and neighborhood associations and council people who've been very responsive, and I'm not saying this one isn't, but a development-led meeting is not a staff-led meeting, and so, it's my understanding that this community plan amendment is considered a major community plan amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And we're coming on the back of Nashville Next, which we've had all of this community interaction, and it says that there's a request to waive the community meeting requirement with approval of this because there were some, three meetings that the council person has said were development-led, and that should be the equivalent of a staff-led meeting. Is that correct?
Generally, he included notification requirements were based off of the standard notification requirements.
Okay.
That's correct. Is that, they met the notification requirements for a major plan amendment and hosted three meetings, and my understanding is the council member participated in those meetings. And so, at his request, he didn't feel like that it was necessary.
Okay. But 240 signatures we have, that seem to indicate it might be necessary. It's just a concern of mine, as someone who's written letters before, lots of emails. Okay. And then, the traffic issue, which we are, and we do know Burkitt Road, it's been already discussed, is on the major street connector, but that's something that's down the road. So, this could generate a lot of more people in traffic well before it becomes a five-lane road, is, we don't know the timing, correct?
That's correct on the five-lane, but the traffic study that was completed and the conditions that are in place will require certain improvements, as Beverly spoke, to coincident with the development as it occurs.
Okay. Can we, do we have a shot, and in our book we do, of the aerial, what the surrounding development? I'd like to look at, from a community plan perspective, and you can go back to the, to back over with the white, without the green, where I can see, keep going. There you go. So, if you look at the pattern of development here, we always kind of look around to see what's going on. It seems to me that we've got larger lot sizes on one side of this Burkitt Road. I'm not sure what road this is that runs down through-
Runs just below this.
Runs just below the property.
Yes.
So, in this orientation, the road that runs just the south of the property is Burkitt Road.
Okay. So, it looks to me like north of Burkitt Road, everything's in larger lot size, and then south of it, we've got these cluster suburban, basically suburban development-type projects.
Sure, and I think the policy map might help a little bit.
Thank you, yes, please.
So, the colors are a little hard to differentiate, so I'm going to point to the labels, but east of this property, you're in rural maintenance policy, but from this property, headed west and north and south, you're in suburban neighborhood-evolving. So, there is a, it is on a seam. We are looking at a transition from a rural policy to a neighborhood-evolving policy.
That's helpful.
And I think the development that has occurred to date has mostly occurred south of Burkitt, but the policy is consistent north and south.
Okay. So, if we didn't change the community policy back to, they could still request a zone change under the existing policy and do a development, it just wouldn't include the commercial and mixed use.
That's correct.
And it would also be, depending on how the SP was framed, it could be a lot less in terms of density.
It could be, yeah. The SP would propose whatever they were-
Well, because it sounds like, and the zone, now going to the zone change, it sounds like with what's being requested, we're on the high level of density under the current policy, we're kind of nudging up on a higher level of density in this.
I would say the, so the densities range and the intensity of the development ranges as you move from Burkitt away. Generally, we tried to look at how it would compare to the area, and the kind of overall density of the development and the intensity is not dissimilar from what you're seeing south of Burkitt.
Okay.
So, there will be, I would say, like pockets within this development that might feel more intense because there is that neighborhood center element, but overall, it is relatively consistent in intensity with what has occurred south of Burkitt Road.
Okay. I'm struggling with this one, obviously. I think, I like, I see the transition. I think the T3 neighborhood-evolving is the current policy, and I'm not a big fan of going against the community when it comes to changing a community policy at this point, so I'm going to keep listening.
Commissioner Sims?
Thank you. You said exactly what I needed. Part of this seat is supposed to be representing the neighborhood, and when we get 240 signatures and not able to hear from the councilman, I have some grave concerns about that myself. So, I think the question for me is, where's the councilperson, and can we hear from him? I know he waived the right, but at some point, we-
Maybe you just pull that mic to you. Let's get closer to it.
Yeah. I think I would, I need to hear from the councilperson, particularly, we have 240 signatures from the neighbors requesting that we have additional thinking time about this.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I would echo that sentiment. I mean, I think, you know, one of the questions we have been put in front of us is, do we approve of the waiving of the community meeting? And I don't think I can approve of that with that many signatures being presented to us. So, it sounds to me like we need a deferral, a planning staff-led community meeting. I mean, I would agree with you all. I think the mixed use brings a lot of benefit. You know, I have been fighting for affordable housing for forever and seeing some that's in a price point that people are asking for is appealing, so there are things that I certainly appreciate about it. But I think there are issues that need to be addressed, and again, the traffic is something that's clearly been talked about. The fact that there is no specific timing yet for increasing to five-lane is concerning. I mean, there are five very specific requests with regard to stoplights and turning lanes and things like that, so I think there's some thought has been given to traffic, but we're up against the same thing we come up against, is there are four different developments, and between them, they're each doing their tiny little piece, but they're not doing the big piece that needs to happen that they're all contributing to. I do think it's worth noting that because this is mixed use, the retail piece brings an additional 63 cars an hour, and the extra people, the residential brings 681 cars an hour. So, the mixed use is not going to be the big contributor, from what this indicates, to the traffic problems. I think that is something in favor of the mixed use. All that being said, I think the community deserves to have another round of interaction and discussion led by the planning staff to help them understand what the changes to the community plan would entail. So, if I might, I would move for a deferral. I would ask for some advice on if one meeting is enough to make those other things happen.
Hold on, we have a mic.
Yes, we are. I'm doing my best.
Okay, if you'll turn yours off, councilwoman, thank you.
Okay. Well, first, let me say that if you're going to do a deferral for us to hear from the councilman, and your concern is a public hearing that's held by the, or is led by the department, one meeting's not going to get us there. And not to mention the fact that I'm going to try to dissuade you all from deferring anything to the next meeting, because it's pretty well-loaded already, and we're trying to avoid going into the morning. So, yeah, at least two meetings, but if y'all don't mind, I always hesitate when we do large deferrals, at least talking to the applicant to understand the implications of that. So, if y'all will indulge me to ask the applicant what a deferral like that might mean.
Two meetings, maybe.
Take the staff to it. And one of the things I like to question is, where do those 250 people live that signed that petition? They don't live on Burkitt Road. They live over on Pettis Road that we're not connecting into. Kelly went out, got everybody stirred up from all of the neighborhoods in that particular area. We met with everyone adjacent to this community, and to delay this another round, we actually signed a contract early last year with the landowner. We had to pay $100,000 to extend this this year. We actually delayed the application until after the election, too, to have the community meetings, and so, you know, I really like that the council is considering. I think that you don't realize that this city is on the verge of a very serious housing shortage, and part of the reason is it takes so much to get any kind of entitlements right now. We have situations right now where the lots that we're developing, they will actually, we have waiting lists for people to buy those lots, and we actually have bidding wars sometime against the house. I don't think that's right. And I think that the planning commission, I look at it, we have done a lot of hard work. I can tell you personally, that Councilman Bedney told me that he handles his part at the planning commission, at the planning, at the commission level, the city commission level. He does not handle it here. And he has told us all along, it all depends on how the neighbors react. I can tell you, he's had a rough time with Kelly, and we've had a couple of rough meetings, but at the same time, majority of the people we've met with. And so, I really like him to really prefer to have a vote, to be honest with you, and let Greg, if you don't mind.
Greg, I think our, the wind is blowing on the commission for a two-meeting deferral, I believe, and I think what we could do, too, is also verify, look at where the signatures are. We can probably, the staff can look and tell us where those signatures are, so we know. That's a very valuable thing for us to know where the signatures come from. But two-meeting deferral.
Yes, I just wanted to speak and say that Councilman Bedney does apologize. He did have a previous engagement tonight, but through our conversations with him, he was supportive of the plan and the neighborhood commercial. I do understand, but to offer a deferral will be a decision of the client, not the applicant. Okay, thank you. So, is that a motion, councilwoman, of a two-meeting deferral? Is that what I heard?
That is a motion, yeah, two-meeting deferral. I mean, I hate to make a project more difficult to do, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, but I just feel like we need to deal with these issues.
Well, let's make sure with staff.
I just wanted to say the public notice requirements for the meeting would mean that they have to be sent out 13 days prior to the community meeting, and we have to find a location for the community meeting to be held and make sure the applicant and the councilmember and everybody can be there at that time. So, I think we can do our best to fit that all in into a two-meeting deferral, but if not, it could be three, I think.
Well, we'll look at it and see, let's do a two-meeting deferral, but let me ask, has any legislation filed?
No, there's no council bill.
Okay. Okay. That's better. Go ahead, councilwoman. If you're, make a motion.
So, I'm moving for a two-meeting, two-meeting deferral to allow for a, a plant, planning staff-led community meeting. And also, I don't know that I'm asking to reopen the public hearing, but to give us the opportunity to hear from the councilmember.
That's a proper motion to reduce to-meeting deferral and won't open the public hearing back. Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
A second? Any more discussion?
What were you saying?
No public hearing.
And when we say two meetings, that is not including the special meeting on the CIB?
Not including. That, that would move it to the first meeting in May. All right, let's be crystal clear. So, two-meeting deferral doesn't include the special CIB meeting, which is normal, first meeting in May. We're not going to open the public hearing. Make sure that's clear.
But we will hear from the councilperson.
And we'll hear from the councilmember, just like we did with, with Kevin today. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no ayes, have it, means defer, two meetings and first meeting in May. I'm a no to. Then for the, then for...
That's for both, two A and two B.
So, then for the record, the vote was five-two. Okay. And we, I think we're gonna, we've been here, we're at two and a half hours. We definitely need to probably use the restroom. And so, we'll, we'll come back, we'll take a slight recess, and we'll come back in about 10, 15 minutes. Okay. To get everybody's attention, we'll get, go ahead and get back started again. I do want to apologize for the mics. We're having some technical difficulties, so if you all be patient with us, we'll make, if you can't hear us, raise your hand and we'll make sure that we get to that. So, I, I do apologize for that. And we'll get the, we'll, we'll get that looked at for the next meeting. So, we are on item number nine. I have to recuse myself, so I'm going to hand the chair over to Commissioner Hagen-Dear, and then I'll be back for item number 11.
You better pass me that gavel.
Passing the gavel.
I may need it.
Whatever.
Now, we are on a public hearing for item number nine, so we'll hear our presentation first.
Great, thank you. So, item nine is the Fairfield Inn and Suites SP. This is a request to permit a hotel development on three parcels located at 109, 111, and 113, 29th Avenue North. This is at the southwest corner of 29th and Poston Avenues in the Midtown area, and the properties are outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, including a modification to the maximum height permitted within the 31st Avenue and Long Boulevard urban design overlay. The current zoning on the property is office residential intensive, which is intended for high-intensity office or multifamily residential uses and associated services. This property is also within the 31st Avenue and Long Boulevard urban design overlay in UDO Core Sub District CO1. The policy for the area is T5 Center Mixed-Use Neighborhood, which is intended to preserve, enhance, and create high-intensity mixed-use urban neighborhoods. These areas are intended to be among the most intense in the county, and they include Nashville's major employment centers and lodging. The proposal for a hotel is consistent with the policy in this location. This is the site plan for the development. You have 29th Avenue on the right-hand side of the screen and Poston Avenue at the top. The proposal is for a 150-room hotel in about 94,000 square feet. There will be 154 structured parking spaces. The maximum height of the development will be 115 feet, as measured from the lowest point along the Poston Avenue frontage. Vehicular access is provided both from 29th Avenue to the parking structure here and from the alley. There are, and the primary pedestrian entrance will be from 29th Avenue. There are sidewalks, eight-foot sidewalks and a four-foot planting strip, which is consistent with guidance in the Midtown Study for mid- and high-rise buildings. These are some elevations, conceptual elevations for the proposed hotel. This request includes a modification to the maximum height permitted in the 31st and Long UDO. The UDO permits a maximum height of 90 feet in this area. There is a design review committee associated with this UDO. And in January of this year, the DRC reviewed this proposal, and they recommended approval of a modification to allow a maximum height of up to 130 feet. They found additional height to be appropriate in this location due to its being on a corner and adjacent to a special policy area that allows buildings of up to 20 stories. The design review committee is a recommending body, so they've made a recommendation regarding modification of the height. The planning commission has the authority to review UDO changes and to grant modifications, provided the change doesn't alter the geographic boundary of the UDO district. So, there will be two issues before the planning commission this evening. The first is the modification of the height in the UDO. And the second is that this is a proposal for an SP. So, if the UDO modification is granted, is that proposed SP consistent with the, the policy for the area? And does it provide a context-sensitive development? There are a number of overlapping policy and regulatory documents which provide guidance and standards for how this property should develop. And in reviewing this proposal, staff looked at all of them, so we'll walk through them one by one, starting with the broadest policy document, which is the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan. As I mentioned, this is T5 Mixed-Use Neighborhood Policy. So, some of the most intense neighborhoods in the county, employment centers and lodging, and up to 20 stories in height or more. And the policy would support the use, the height, and the intensity of this proposed development. Kind of moving one step in, we have the Midtown Study, which is a more detailed plan for the Midtown area. And the Midtown Study speaks to height. It calls for maximum heights of approximately eight stories. However, it also specifies that punctuations of greater height may be appropriate at prominent locations. This site is just off of West End Avenue. It's on a corner, and it's near a park, and it's adjacent to a sub-district of the Midtown Study that would allow 20 stories or more. Moving on to the next, the 31st and Long UDO, which would regulate the, the development, the design of the development on this property. Anywhere that the UDO is silent, then the base office residential intensive zoning would apply. The UDO calls for heights of approximately six stories in the core districts, which this is in a core district. However, it states that east of 31st Avenue, which this property is, the objective would be to allow for multi-story buildings with increased height to encourage intensity. And therefore, the maximum height permitted by the UDO in this area is 90 feet. The UDO is silent on both use and floor area ratio, meaning we defer to the base ORI zoning. This use is permitted in that zoning district. But in order to achieve the height that the, that the DRC has recommended, the 100, up to 130 feet, but the proposal is for 115, in order to achieve that, there would need to be more floor area ratio than is permitted by the ORI zoning district. The DRC recognized that when they made their recommendation. They actually recommended that the applicant pursue an SP to address the floor area. And so, that is why the SP is before you this evening. So, given the location of the property in an intense area between 31st and West End, where both policies and the UDO point to additional intensity, and given that the DRC has recommended that the height is appropriate in this location, staff finds the proposed SP consistent with the policy and with the goals of the UDO. And therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, including a modification to the maximum height permitted in the UDO.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, we are going to declare this item open for public hearing. If the applicant is here, we allow 10 minutes with, can reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Is the applicant stepping up to the microphone? State your name and your address, and then let us know if you'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Roshan Patel. I am at 4156 Outer Drive, Nashville, Tennessee 37204. And we'd, we'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. I am a local Nashville native, born and raised. We are, we have a hotel group that we, we've been developing hotels over the last 30 to 35 years. We have one under construction currently in Sobro. We actually took an eyesore out of Sobro. There was, one of the last two gentleman's clubs was demoed about a week and a half ago, so I'll reserve some street credit for that later. So, over there, we're, we're developing 233 rooms in a, in a market, obviously, that everybody knows is in dire straits for, for hotel rooms. So, we, we stumbled on our location here in Midtown. Phenomenal location. It's tough barrier to entry, and we're able to put a very nice mid, mid-upper-scale hotel there in a very high-intensive area of development. That market is ready and primed for this type of development. Hotel rooms, as everyone knows, is in, is in a really bad shape as far as occupancy and things like that go. So, by us putting in 150 rooms for that corporate consumer, you know, it's definitely a positive. The, you know, we, we're not backing, we're not taking any money from the government. This is all private capital, all Nashville capital. We're also secured a loan from a local Nashville bank. So, typically, you know, you can kind of say that everything is staying within the market here. The opposition will, will argue about technicalities within the UDO. But, you know, primarily, you know, it is my belief, we did meet with them. I sat, you know, we sat for about an hour and a half with them, discussed various things. And it was mainly, I think, was a height issue and a view issue from, from where the tenants live at the West End Lofts. The planning staff has, has analyzed and, and done their job, their due diligence on, on all this. I'm sure they know exactly what they're talking about, you know, as far as what the UDO stands for and what it is. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our, our design team and Bart Klein.
Hello, I'm Bart Klein with Klein Swinney Architects. Again, back, just some history in 2017, and actually, earlier, we did meet in front of the DRC and did recommend approval for the height. After meeting with the community, the concerns were height. The community members that we met with that were in opposition live in the building directly behind the proposed building. So, we were blocking the view to the park. So, that was a concern. Traffic, hotel use, sidewalks, and infrastructure. The 130 feet, we've now brought that down to 115 feet. Sidewalks, we have an eight-foot sidewalk and a four-foot grass strip. And the hotel use is permitted within the existing zoning in UDO. And I did have a slide. Could you put the slide up? Okay, what the slide was showing was actually a cut through the building where the applicants live, all the way to the park. The two blocks up to 29th is, in the UDO, allows 90 feet. We're asking for additional 25 feet above that. Directly across the street, you're allowed 150 feet. And that height exists all the way to the park. So, we, we are very familiar with the building the applicants live in. We designed the building. The same comments we have now are the same comments that happened when that building was built. And so, you know, we are sensitive to it, but at the same time, planning, the UDO, everything supports what's happening and the growth that's happening around this area. And in terms of traffic, we've looked at multiple different uses for the site. We've looked at mixed use with retail on the first floor, where we've looked at office and the hotel use, and I'll let the traffic engineer talk about that here in a second, is a better use from a traffic standpoint for the area. We just feel that the project fits, fits the needs, fits the needs of the hotel, and we'll turn it over to the traffic engineer for a minute.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Brownlee Carey. I'm here to represent RPM Transportation Consultants. We prepared the traffic impact study for the Fairfield Inn and Suites project on behalf of Midtown Hotel Partners. Our study was prepared in conformance with Metro Guidelines and was reviewed and approved by Metro Public Works. The proposed hotel is located in a moderately dense neighborhood in Midtown, which includes residential uses, retail and restaurant uses, and office uses. As you know, pedestrian activity in this area is high, which can be attributed to the area's density, mix of uses, contiguous sidewalk network, and proximity to Vanderbilt University and Centennial Park. Because of the location and land use that is proposed for the site, the development will generate some pedestrian trips, as well as have opportunities for transit use. For these reasons, the proposed development will generate less vehicular traffic than a similar-sized development in a suburban setting. It should also be noted that hotels, particularly urban-area hotels, are low-traffic generators, especially in comparison to an office building, which is a use that could be developed on this site. Therefore, the proposed hotel is a desirable land use for the site in terms of minimizing the traffic impacts of the project on the surrounding street network. Our analyses show that the roadways and intersections in the study area will operate at good levels of service following the completion of the development and roadway improvements. Vehicular access to the development and parking garage will be provided by driveways on 29th Avenue North and on the alley on the west side of the property. The alley will be widened to accommodate two-way travel between the site access and Poston Avenue. Finally, it is our professional opinion that the proposed hotel development will have minimal impact to traffic in the area with the intersection and access improvements that have been proposed by the developer and have been made conditions of approval by Public Works. Thank you.
I think we've got about a minute fifteen. We had some business owners that couldn't make it here tonight because they run restaurants in the, in that market right across the street from us. I'm going to give these to the, to the planning commission here. They were from Bellagio Pizza Subs, Nukes, Brick Topson, Corey's Doghouse, where we'll literally be, 150, 200 people will be within walking distance of, of all these restaurants.
Okay, thank you very much. Applicant will reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And we will now, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of the project, if you could please come up and line up behind the microphone? You'll have two minutes. State your name and address. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Larry Frankenbach, 1720 West End Avenue. A few brief comments here to, just to frame those, a little historical perspective, followed by where we are today, and perhaps where we'll be tomorrow, and then specifically on this project. I was welcomed to Nash, excuse me, I was welcomed to Nashville in 1963 when the skyline consisted of the LNC Building. I think other people in this room might be able to remember that time as well with me. Fast forward today, we see multiple high rises. We have more cranes in this market per capita than any other market. And we know that offices are up, rents are up, values are up. Everything is up, and that's, that's progress. Today, we're the, it's city. All of the development that you see here is going on, and that you guide with the help of staff, adds to the quality of life here and builds value for everyone that's investing in Nashville. Hotels in particular have a unique configuration in terms of the economic impact that they make in the city. It comes from a direct impact from revenues, on rent revenues on the rooms, from food and beverage, meetings, from payroll and employees. It comes from fiscal, fiscal impacts in terms of federal, state, and local revenue, comes from indirect impacts from jobs in the hotel and suppliers, and it comes from induced impact, which is the respending of wages. In the, in this particular case, as you've heard previously, this project does meet the SPC, SPC guidelines, and I urge you to approve it. We hear things now in, in this market and development that we haven't heard before: infill, regentrification, scrape and build. There is a new normal, and you guide that with, with staff and other research resources. So, in closing, I would, as I was welcomed in 1963, I would ask you to approve this and to get another global brand here and to... and to get another global brand here, and to welcome the business and the tourists of a new place to live while they're in our city and spending money in Midtown.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in support of the project? And seeing none, we will now open the floor for anyone speaking in opposition to the project. If there's anyone in opposition, please step forward. We'll line up and behind the microphone. We'll need to get, you'll have two minutes, and we'll need to name and address when you start, and that's when the clock will start. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Heron. I'm at 207 29th Avenue North, so I'm a half a block from this proposal. 29th Avenue North, I don't know who has been on this street, but it's a very small, very narrow street. When the cars are parked on 29th, it allows only one lane of traffic, one slow car going Across from me is the Parthenon Towers. This is a building that houses disabled and senior persons. Their access to the grocery store is at the intersection of this proposal, where they go by scooter and wheelchair. This road is not big enough to handle this. It's very narrow, and it will be very dangerous for the disabled people that live on 29th Avenue North. I see no benefit to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street. I've asked Ms. Shepherd to hand out to you a photograph that I took last month, and in there, not to scale, is a sketch of this proposed hotel and its position inside this neighborhood. The zoning code states that the purpose of the code is to establish development standards which are designed to protect the value and the integrity of neighboring properties. That's exactly what the 31st Avenue UDO does. Those standards protect the integrity of surrounding properties. The word context should come to mind when you take a look at that photo. Take a look at the context in which we find this property located. This is a mid-rise building, the hotel's a mid-rise building being placed in a low-rise policy area, and we think that that is a big concern. My clients bought their properties, invested in their properties based on the UDO. They understood, acknowledged that a six-story height within that area is what they expected, and that you might, another building might be able to reach eight or nine stories if there's meritorious reasons for doing so. There's really no compelling reason here presented by the developer to extend the height above six stories, certainly by no means 11 stories. This is not a prominent location. Staff indicates that they think it is. This is the intersection of two local streets. We're 330 feet off of West End. If this hotel were on West End and in that policy area, that's fine. These folks would have no objection to that, but as you can see from the map, it's in the middle of their neighborhood. The Midtown Plan acknowledges that there's several hotels in the area on West End Avenue, seven-story hotels, eight-story hotels. That's where these hotels should be, on our major arterial corridors, not on local residential streets. The UDO also acknowledges that residential, retail, and offices are the preferred land uses here. That's page 19 of that. So, this thing is too tall, and by the way, it sacrifices about eight parking spaces on the street. The traffic recommendation sacrifices about eight parking spaces on the street, so we lose public parking for the benefit of this hotel.
Thank you very much. You can still go.
Good evening. My name is Mark Rebal, 117 30th Avenue North, known as West End Lofts 2. We reside in Unit 602. I'd like to take a moment to read a memo, a letter from my neighbor, Dr. Robert Talis, who is the Chair of the Philosophy Department at Vanderbilt University, because he expresses my feelings, our feelings, much better than I can. My family owns and resides in Unit 604 of West End Lofts 2 on 30th Avenue North. I write to express objection to the zoning exemption proposed in the Fairfield Inn and Suites project planned for 29th Avenue and Poston. My understanding is the proposed hotel would stand 11 stories, and the lots are zoned for no building higher than six stories. There are multiple reasons why it's a bad idea to add an 11-story hotel to a neighborhood that's already the site of a great deal of development. The traffic, congestion, parking problems are one of the most obvious. Somewhat less obvious is the weakening of the zoning rules that have long been in place and which have shaped the development of the local neighborhood. Once an accommodation is made for a large hotel development, it will be difficult to hold future building projects to the same zoning rule. That is, in cases like this, an exemption from the regulation is a de facto repeal of the regulation, and this implicit repeal will fundamentally change the nature of a developing residential neighborhood. Please uphold the existing zoning regulation and help us preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Bishop, and I reside at 117 30th Avenue North. The proposed development, as I see it, violates the core tenants in the 31st and Long UDO, the Midtown Plan, which incorporates it, the ORA-based zoning where it applies, and the land use policy applicable to the three parcels in the neighborhood generally. It doubles the UDO's six-story height restriction, which we think is applicable to those parcels. It is located, as others have noted, at the intersection of two local streets, which are very small and already very heavily congested with the current permitted uses in the neighborhood. It is far from a prominent location, given that it's situated suchly, which would not warrant, in my opinion, a nine-story punctuation exception. It also far exceeds the UDO base zoning height in feet limit. It increases density over the maximum permitted FAR by 50%, and it exceeds massing and setback requirements, along with other protections for those of us who previously purchased in the neighborhood and reliance on the existing land use requirements for the neighborhood. As others have noted, our neighborhood is comprised of mid-sized condominiums, single and multifamily dwellings, and small office uses. The land use planning supports maintaining the existing character of similar conforming uses, heights, and densities in our neighborhood. Many recent developments have been built with other kinds of uses. We've seen a number of condominiums developed that have complied, that have been beautiful and are selling well. We see a number of apartment complexes, in some cases that are very large, that also are compliant in terms of height restrictions, size, massing, and feel. I and a number of my neighbors relied on the UDO in purchasing our units, in improving those units, and making the decision to stay in that neighborhood. I respectfully ask that you vote against piercing the UDO, the Midtown Plan, changing the base zoning, and in essence, fundamentally altering the character of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Hi, please state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Phil Fai. I live at 117 30th Avenue North, Unit 702, and I wanted to go on the record opposing this development. I lived in this neighborhood 30 years ago, when it was a bunch of rundown duplexes, low college rental properties, and I was thankful every day after the council approved the overlay for this area, and have been proud of the development that's occurred there. This property does not deserve special exception. The changes that are being requested are for the benefit of a single owner and not the neighborhood itself, and I would ask the commission to consider that as you deliberate over this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Andy Allen, 117 30th Avenue North, Apartment 605. My statements are probably a little more just philosophical about this project. I do oppose the SP zoning specifically. My understanding with the SP zoning is that it's there to give a lot of flexibility so that a developer can come up with something that's really unique and creative, and so when a developer is given that kind of a freedom, there should be an expectation that they are considering all stakeholders in the development, and we don't have the perception that that's being done here. And so, my exhortation is, for this case and for the future, please, when you use the SP zoning, which is a very powerful tool, that you use it judiciously for the benefit of everyone and not just one stakeholder. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Donnelly. I live at 117 30th Avenue, West End Lofts, Number 2. I'm a lifelong Tennessean and have been a resident of this area for 15 years. As Erin mentioned prior, I purchased this unit because of the strong UDO provisions. I'm against the hotel development for three primary reasons. Number one, first and foremost, I don't believe that it follows the UDO guidelines. I think the hotel development defeats the intent of the UDO. There's no justification for increasing this height increase from six stories to 11. There's no onsite improvements, anything to the aesthetic, to the urban area of the community. Number two, I think it sets a precedent for other future developments that, you know, other areas in this development have had, we just had a development, the Poston that just got developed, right there at Poston and 29th. It's a six-story, very aesthetic. All the buildings, all the developments in the area, there's no hotels. There's no hotels in the neighborhood. All the hotels that they've mentioned have been on West End, Broadway, or off Church Street, none on a residential road. And then the third reason is the impact of traffic and the quality of life. I know the traffic engineer mentioned about the office and that only certain times of the day, but when you have a hotel development, you're going to have visitors 24 hours a day, seven days a week, adding to the confusion. So, please maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. Centennial Park is one of our treasured, most precious parks here in Nashville, and I respectfully wish for you to deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Bob Bianchi. I live at 117 30th Avenue North, also in the lofts, and my fellow neighbors have probably said things quite well, and I just want to go on record saying that I oppose the application. I don't think there's a need for a building that high. I think it's just too darn high. I don't think it fits the profile of the neighborhood, and I think that the height of it only benefits the person making the application in terms of financial gain. So, I appreciate your time and listening to me, and have a good evening.
Thank you. And last but not least, Santa.
My name is Randall Durham, 117 30th Avenue North, West End Lofts 2 condos. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association. It's rare that our building has had this amount of turnout from our residents, usually we're a happy-go-lucky building and go-along-to-get-along building. That's why I feel like I needed to come forth and speak to their concerns as well as mine. We're opposed to this rezoning because we're opposed to the modification of the UDO in terms of height and the floor area ratio, simply to allow a larger hotel in the neighborhood. The existing zoning of ORI is for office residential intensive use. A hotel is permitted as a selective use, and only if it serves the needs of the other uses in the district. Selective uses are permitted if the principal purpose is to serve the recurring needs of occupants or employees of other permitted uses. I pulled that directly from the zoning code, word for word. The proposed Fairfield Inn does not provide any street-level retail or restaurant, which might be useful. It does not provide any hotel amenity like a restaurant, meeting space, rooftop gathering area that neighbors might use. This will be the first hotel allowed in this neighborhood. If it is allowed, it would lead other developers to perceiving this neighborhood as an appropriate location for other limited-service budget hotels. To SP zone only to increase the size of a non-primary-use hotel would deprive the neighborhood of the possibility of using this corner for high-intensity office or residential. This takes away a site for a primary use without giving anything in return. In summary, SP zoning is a powerful tool of the city. It should be used with great care. Projects approved should raise the bar on development and not be marginal. I urge you to deny this rezoning request.
Thank you. Is anyone else here in opposition to the project? Okay, now the applicant is welcome to come back up. You have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. You know, just a comment on a few of those things. You know, we met, like I said, privately with the tenants there at the West End Lofts, and, you know, we gave them an option, hey, you know, what is it, you know, what can we do to appease everybody? And there was nothing concrete that they can, they would bring up and that's something that I can give them. We have, the building is going to be primarily glazed with glass, brick, and stone, so it's going to be a really attractive building. The parking is all, is going to be contained inside the building, you know, so we have a lot of concrete things that, you know, that we could have come up with. They asked for retail and store space, you know, that's just not the kind of business we're in. You know, we're there for the hotel purpose, bringing something that our local economy direly needs. So, you know, we definitely, you know, hear their concerns and are sympathetic with them, but at the same time, as the staff recommended, the area is primed for this type of intensive development in that area, along, even their building is part of the intensive density that they have. So, we definitely fit that criteria, and I urge you to follow staff comments. Thank you.
I guess one thing I just want to point out, I look at this sketch, and this sketch is way out of scale, actually. The section that's shown, the building that they live in and the building that we're proposing, there's about a 15-foot difference, you know. We're talking about a 90, 90 foot's what allowed, we're going up to 115. It's not, it's not, it's not by stories, it's by feet. I see where the opposition is, I understand it, but it's also to say that we are a growing city. When this project, when their building was being built, it was the same comments we had then. We actually built the building behind them, a five-story building. Same comments when that building got built, and this is just going to progress all the way to the park. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other one, anyone wishing to speak, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Waiting for that moment. Just to use the gavel once. We're going to now go to our fellow commissioners, and we'll start with Council Lady Allen, if she doesn't mind kicking us off.
Thank you. A couple of questions. One, how was the original boundary for the special policy area determined? Can anybody, I mean, this was, this, within this UDO, there were special policy areas that talked about things that could be done. Does anyone know the logic of? I'm talking ancient history here.
I'll start by asking a clarifying question. Are you speaking to the sub-districts of the UDO or the special policies in the community plan? The sub-districts of the UDO?
I think that would be the first question, yes. Because those have different height requirements, correct?
They do, and I'm looking, we have some of our design studio staff here this evening, so hopefully he can help us out.
I think, Andrew, what might be helpful?
Sure.
I think what might be helpful is to talk about some of the basic elements of the different sub-areas, the height and, really, height is really the issue that everybody seems to be focused on, so if you can talk about those in the different sub-areas, that might be helpful.
Yes, sure. The UDO itself was adopted in 2004 through a series of charrettes and meetings, and amended subsequently in 2005, 2007, so that's kind of how the genesis of the UDO took place. There are a variety. The studio has approximately seven or eight different sub-districts, CO1, CO2, the core sub-districts, this is where this one's located at, to the east of 31st is the most intense sub-districts, closest to the park, where the existing zoning allows the most height as well. These do allow, depending upon your building type, so for a mixed-use or commercial building, this does allow 90 feet as a maximum building height, and then from there, it kind of falls off towards the west. Again, depending upon your product type, down to building heights of 50 or 40 feet, depending upon building type again. For townhouses, it'd be less intense building height as you move to the west, but again, the right side of 31st is intended to be the most intense area of the UDO.
Thank you. So, I mean, there's the area that allowed even higher than 90 feet, if I remember correctly, that's closer to West End even? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
So, that is a guidance in the Midtown Study. So, the Midtown Study contains some height guidance, which in places... So the Midtown Study contains some height guidance, which in places... And I'm going to go back to my slide. So the Midtown Study, this area, this subdivision of the Midtown Study, talks about height of eight stories, and it says that it's intending to relate to the UDO. There's another district of the Midtown Study area, which is immediately to the, I need a map so I don't get confused, but it moves back towards west end. And that district of the Midtown Study area allows for heights of 20 stories or more. But that's the Midtown Study versus the UDO. So there are those overlapping policies here.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And so the Midtown Study apparently makes a distinction between things that abut West End, it looks like, and things that are off West End.
I can't speak to exactly where the boundaries of that other sub-district start and stop, but it does draw a distinction at some point.
Okay. I guess what, I mean, I think, I think a hotel in this area makes some sense. I mean, and I think traffic-wise, I believe the statements, as long as they don't have an event space, which I'm not sure if they do or not, but, I mean, as long as there's not something where, you know, 50 people all have to arrive at the same time, I think traffic is not as big an issue as the height is. So that's what I'm going to focus my questions on. And so the punctuations of greater height may be appropriate at prominent locations seems like a really key thing to rely on, and this, this is pretty far off of West. I mean, it's behind the dog of Nashville. So it's not, I'm struggling with whether that truly is a prominent location enough to justify the punctuation of greater height. And then that being said, I'm no developer, clearly. So, you know, why can't we build a six-story hotel that, that doesn't have the hotel issues? And I would, I guess, request to allow the hotel owner to address that if he can.
The applicant wants to come up and address that question?
Could we not just build a shorter hotel?
You know, it all comes down to economics of it. So, you know, the price of the real estate that we have to pay, the cost of the development in Nashville currently, the construction, the cost of, you know, just general, you know, just getting all the due diligence. There's a certain equation or formula that makes sense for us to pay those kinds of money to be profitable and at the same time generate income that will, the taxing, that taxes income will go back into, to the city. So yeah, that's, that's where that comes out, too. And we, and like I said, we, you know, everything that we do is private capital, so it's no Tiff financing or anything like that. You know, if we could get a couple million dollars from the city, absolutely that would help, and maybe we could make, make things work. But this is just about the economics of it.
Okay, then that's, that's consistent with other statements that I've heard. I'll, I'll listen to other people. I'm just a little, I'm just a little troubled with the logic that went into saying, here are reasons why we think this is appropriate, because I think it is far enough off of West End that that, the prominence is debatable. So I'll listen to other people.
Okay, I'm going to show our new commissioners how we do this. We're going to go over here to Commissioner Haynes, because we like to mix it up every once in a while.
I was not expecting that.
I know.
I agree, Council Lady. I struggle with the height. And if they kept it at 90 feet, by my calculation, they would lose, you know, 25 or 30 or 35 rooms. I hate that the economics are such that they need the extra floors. All goes back to land value. And I, too, don't think this is a prominent enough location to warrant the additional height. So I'm struggling.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Keeping us on our toes. First, on Sean's sketch that, can we, do you have anything to, you know, is how close it might be? I know you guys saw it at the same time, as far as the height is concerned proportionally. And if you don't, that's okay, but I was just curious. Okay. Okay, well, while you're looking at it, do you know how many floors of parking are, how many floors are parking on this right now?
The applicant can address it, or if you can.
I believe it's four, but the applicant still...
Four. And has, was there any, because of the, the comments from, I think you guys probably mostly heard about height, how is it looked at? And I know it's more expensive, we all know that, but to go down, to actually have some below grade so that you could have the same number of beds, but, you know?
We're actually stripping off about five foot as it is. We said that for the life of... Oh, I'm sorry. We're actually stripping off about five foot as it is, and really, we saw directly across the street, not on West End, it's allowed for 15 stories and 150 feet. So that was really our direction.
I mean, but did you, because this is the issue...
Yes, yes, we have looked at that scenario for sure.
About being in, go down. I mean, it's, nothing's proportional, but looking at it, it's like you could, not, it's too bad of an area to go have some below grade, which could at least drop it, you know, at least a story, which would get it closer down to, you know, something a little bit more comparable.
Yes, we are.
Particularly, I mean, you could go more, but...
Yeah, right now, what we are doing, when you go in, we're actually dropping it a 5% slope on that first floor, down as far as we can. We have not corkscrewed around yet, because obviously that does not work for the performer at that, at this time.
So it's none below grade, is that what you're saying?
There is. We are going at 5%. So about 11 spaces. What you have is the backside of the site, the alley, is about 10-foot higher than the front side of the site.
Yeah.
So we're digging in.
This way, but not, not down.
Not this way, no.
Okay. It's, you know, I don't know how much that was looked at, but that would be a good thoughtful compromise, you know, to work with the people who have some concern about it, that would lower the heights on it. And I'm like, I guess, pretty much what we're all saying, from a hotel standpoint, it's a, we have a big problem with it, but the, you know, the height, it is far off West End, and it seems like it should be studied to be able to go down, and that way you could have at least help the neighbors out and...
So if the 90-foot was the height that we met the UDO, it wouldn't be an issue?
Well, I'm just...
I mean, I'm just asking a question.
Well, I'm kind of mostly...
From a youth standpoint.
Just dealing with what you got here now.
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner Sims?
I literally read every comment that was sent to us, and I really hear what the neighborhood is saying. I think there is a little bit of difference with UDOs in that there is some type of contractual arrangement with homeowners, and when they buy into a neighborhood, I think they also are expecting those UDOs to be respected and not to be let, to be revised lightly. I have some concerns like the rest about the height. I don't have as much concern about having a hotel there. We need affordable hotels in our city. But I, and I actually think this is a good plan, and I know some of the developers and how, they do keep their word. But I have, I do have real concerns about the height, and that being really only for the benefit of the one, and that's not the condition for lifting a UDO.
Commissioner Gabel, anything?
I have some questions. The, what amenities does this hotel, what do you, what do you have planned? Is it going to have a restaurant? Is it going to have a rooftop bar?
It won't. Obviously, the rooftop bars, you'd have to go 20, 25 stories to make sense. We will, a small, full-service bar in there, which will serve wine and beer for management perceptions. And then it is a select-service hotel, so there's no full-service restaurant in there. There's plenty of restaurants, you know, within walking distance, and, you know, in that market, we just, you know, our thoughts are, you know, just heads and beds, and we'll serve a nice hot breakfast. But yeah, and then as far as amenities go, that'll be about it.
Another question, the Design Review Committee, this was, who's on that? Who did that? I don't need to know the specifics, but just the, where did they come from?
So there are a number of members appointed, and they have a range of backgrounds, and, it is working now, okay. They have a range of backgrounds, and there is guidance in the adoption documents of the UDO about who those people are and how they're selected and placed, so.
Okay, could you actually look, say what those are, how they're selected?
I can provide a little more clarification on this one. There's a number of Neighborhood Residents Association members, there's a local property owner, as well as, I believe, a, either a Chamber of Commerce or real estate appointment as well. So it's a cross-section of people with business interests in this area, as well as local property owners as well. I don't have their names in front of me, so.
So the parking, is it screened? How is that going to be? What are we going to see?
The UDO requires that the parking is hidden, it's part of the building, so you won't see the parking. You'll basically just see a nice designed building. Right now, we have screens, and what we've done is the window punches, it looks like the window punches for the hotel. The first floor, 14-foot of glass, which falls under the UDO, the remaining four floors of the parking structure, and above that is the hotel.
I guess, I mean, from my perspective, I'm kind of consistent with the other commissioners. I think that, you know, I'm sympathetic to the needs and sympathetic to the request. I think they, it looks like you could get 15 feet out of this thing. I certainly don't have a problem with a hotel. I am disappointed that we're not activating the street level a little more, and we've got more things going on, but I'm new to the committee, and I'm not sure how much we can ask for. But that's, that's kind of where I am.
Is there any further discussion? I think my question is, we have a, the recommendation from staff is approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, and the condition, one of the conditions is height. So without, how you want to handle?
Well, the commission can choose to, to modify those, and there is the ability to say if, and it sounds like this is what I'm hearing, is that if the commission is not willing to increase the overall height above the 90 feet that's permitted, and that that is a height that y'all are comfortable with, then you still have an issue of the floor area ratio that would have to be addressed, because currently, under their base zoning, their floor area ratio is three. Is that what it is? Okay. And so if, so that was, it's not going to get them to 90 feet. That's going to have, be about a three-story building here, maybe a four-story, depending on how they parse it out. But if what you're comfortable with is the 90 feet, and then you could do, you could approve the SP, but for all of the conditions except for the height, and leave all the other conditions in place. And that, that essentially would permit them to build a hotel there at 90 feet.
Any further discussion?
But before you went down that road, I'd encourage you to even see if that's an exercise worth going through.
Right. And we have to ask the applicant if that's something they would be willing to do.
I know in a UDO for Hillsborough Village, a study was done looking at actual hotel parking needs versus what our current hotel parking requirements are. I believe that was done by RPM, so they may be able to speak to that if they're here.
They are.
And, I mean, that may be a question, are we over-parking this thing anyway? And I know neighbors don't want to hear that, but, but if we are, if we are higher than we need to be, and there are going to be empty parking spaces, can that, can that at least be part of the discussion?
I'm Bob Murphy, traffic engineer with RPM Transportation. And that is correct, urban hotels generate less parking than the typical parking requirements, which are really based on more suburban situations. So the parking for this site is more in line with the standard parking rates. So, you know, theoretically, there could be a reduction in the parking. I mean, I think we, we could support certainly a reduction in the parking. Sometimes that gets down to also what the tenants want. You know, some, some of our tenants have parking requirements of their own, so I can't really answer that, but in terms of what the actual parking demand would be, we think it would be less than the, than the standard parking rates.
Any further discussion?
On the parking issue, oftentimes I've found with developments that the parking issue isn't necessarily driven by the developer as much as it is the lender, that they tend to have a parking requirement of their own. Because as you well know, we don't have parking requirements in the downtown code, but yet oftentimes the development has significant parking in it, and so that's not driven by us. And when I talk to the developer, it's not driven by them as well, it's driven by the lender. So I'm not sure, in this case, who's driving the amount of parking, if it's us, the developer or the lender.
And I'd like to understand, underline what Brian said, I mean, we've got a 15-foot difference. If you put two levels of parking below grade, you've got it. You know, it may not be as economically feasible, they may be given too much money for the land. So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from on, on that level. I'm less concerned about the FAR and that, that part of it.
Yeah, it's not 15 feet, it's 25 feet. It's a difference between 115 and 90. So it is a challenge. But I, too, am not concerned about the FAR. And so I guess my question to the applicant, would they rather have a deferral and they come back with something different? Or would they rather have us head where we're talking about being?
Well, the, going underground, the issue is, now, whether we go back and re-look at it, reperform it, it'll be a $2 or $3 million swing to do that. And on top of that, you know, for the neighbors, it'll be a lot more disruptive for excavation, the construction traffic, the blasting and carrying that stuff out than a simple 25 feet, you know? Now, that, that $3 million is significant when you look at it, when it comes down to development. It's already a $33 million project. So, you know, does, I understand that, you know, to keep the constituents happy, you understand that is, but we're, we're talking about an area that is very intensive developed. Hill Center owns the property right in front of us, the parking lot. They, there's no, there's no restrictions, I believe, on their site. So when they're coming in, they're going to go massive, probably intensive there, right, for the density portion of it, and we're literally in their parking lot. So six and a half a dozen the other, the money is absolutely a big factor. I understand, you know, someone said the real estate, we may have paid too much for the real estate, but that's the nature of the beast in Nashville. And we are, like I said, local developers. We're not from the East Coast, we're not from the West Coast. We're not, you know, this is privately-held money that was earned in the state, in the city, and we're putting it back into the city. We'll, we'll, we will probably come in at about $250,000 or $300,000 in tax revenues that go straight into the city, that we will pay on a yearly, on annual basis, starting from day one. So 3 million may not be a lot for your REIT companies that develop, but to a homegrown developer that was born and raised here, it sure is a lot of money. And, you know, and I'm, what I'm proud of is to be able to serve our city and our county with what we desperately need, you know?
Okay, thank you.
So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. It sounds like right now, we're still having a conversation. One thought I have is, you know, and historically, when I've seen things, we're having a hard time getting our brain around the scale. Am I right? Most developer, a lot of developers who come in and present something like this, show us pictures of what it would look like, how it would impact the neighbors, and I'm, we haven't seen that in this presentation from the, from, from the applicant. Is that...
We had a slide that showed the sections that were the buildings, what the difference was.
Excuse me, yeah, you'll have to come to the microphone.
We did have a slide ready for that, but somehow it got lost in the mix.
Well, and that's what, as a commission, you're hearing...
I understand.
There's a wind blowing.
Yes.
So the choices are dwindling in terms of where we go from here.
Yes, I understand.
And I guess the discussion with the commission is, you know, we're uncomfortable with the height now.
And it might be worth, I don't want to, just even a study of, maybe, maybe you don't go down to get the whole 25 feet, but at least if we could see where you've gone down a little bit, maybe it's, not a little bit, but you know, where, maybe the neighbors will be a little happier, then you're not asking for the full 25. I mean, I don't want to go on what could be, but... I mean, I don't want to go on what could be, but some study of that, and I know there's economics to everything, but it may be worth looking at, just because, as you can see, I think we're all a little uncomfortable with the height as it is. Maybe we'd feel a little bit better if it was, you know, a little bit less, but I, that's why we're kind of pushing a little bit more for the deferral.
I guess the question I have for staff and commission, if we, instead of deferring, if you said, okay, we're good with the, with the building, and the developer goes and works his performance, so when he finds out, well, we can continue with going in ground, and we can do the 90-foot, if he decides, and he goes back and says, okay, the performer doesn't allow that, are we still allowed to come back and present why we, you know, another the same project, but a different?
No, what you're describing is a deferral.
Okay. So it's one way or the other, correct?
Well, no. I don't think the commission has made a decision that it's one way or the other. I think that discussion's still going on. But, you know, I would, I don't think I've done this before, but I would almost ask the commission at this point to defer it, because I don't know that anything else is really fair to the applicant, to make them on-the-spot make this sort of decision that has that kind of impact to their overall development. I just don't think that's, it really puts anybody in a fair position. So, given the level of uncertainty, I can't make the motion, but that's what I would recommend.
Agreed. I think also, there might be some guidance. We need to provide some guidance as to what else we need to see from the applicant, too. Otherwise, the deferral is a deferral, it's like a deferring.
Commissioners, you well know, I do not like it when y'all defer it and don't give us clear direction on what it is we're supposed to go do.
I totally understand. So we need to give some guidance from the commission as to what needs to be seen when this comes back to us, if we're going to defer.
Yeah, I'd like to propose a two-meeting deferral, and that we have the applicant come back with view sheds, looking east into the park, of the heights of the hotel, with scale, with everything else around it. And to Ron's point, you know, the lack of active usage on the ground floor, I struggle with, so I don't know if there's a way to incorporate some, something on the ground floor along with that.
And I would like to see some attempt to have gone down a little bit subgrade, even if too much was more evasive, at least study to see how much could work.
I'm gonna need a motion, and we're gonna need to include both of those recommendations. I thought they were making a motion, were they not? Jeff, Mr. Haynes was making a motion.
Brian.
Brian's amending a motion.
Technically, I think he meant he seconded it, yes.
Yes, seconded a motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it, and then there has?
And just for the record, so that everybody knows, the commission want to leave the public hearing. Do you want to reopen it, so that at the next meeting, that we have the public hearing again with new information?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
So the motion, with that open public hearing?
Yes.
Correct. Do I need to gavel?
You're done, here you come.
Can I, I can't gavel again? Okay. Just for fun. Special notes, oh, and I, I quit.
Oh, you changed it. Oh, thank you.
She's a lawyer, I think she wants a robe.
All right, all right, let's get back, let's get back on order. We're on item 11. Are we ready?
I'm gonna try out the mic. So far, so good. I wanted to introduce myself, because this is my first presentation to you folks. I'm Abby Rickoff, and I've been with planning for about four months now, so just wanted to introduce myself before.
We'll be extra hard on you.
Oh, no. I'll try to yell, just let me know. So item number 11 is a request for a subdivision with 30 cluster lots on a portion of property located at 5710 Nob Road, on approximately 36.15 acres. The area slated for redevelopment, 36.15 of approximately 66 acres, is highlighted in red. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance for the length of a permanent dead-end street. The property is owned R40, which is intended for one and two family dwellings. The site is in conservation policy, which recognizes sensitive environmental features on-site. The site is also in neighborhood maintenance policy, which recognizes that some change will occur over time, and is intended to preserve the general character of the surrounding areas. The site is also noted as an infill area within a larger special policy area. The Nob Hill infill area explains that infill development may be appropriate if this land is not permanently protected as open space, and offers guidance for building form, site design, and building types, with an emphasis on preserving sensitive features. The Nob Hill infill area comprises nearly 80 acres on two parcels. The subdivision is on the western portion of the policy area. Before I get into the details of this case, I do want to briefly review the subdivision approval process. There are three steps included in the subdivision review process. The first step is a concept plan, which is before you tonight. The purpose of a concept plan is to generally show a master plan with the general layout, the lot layout, and general street configuration, and note any open spaces, and to really provide the parameters of development, with an understanding that the details will be reviewed during a future phase. The second step is a final site plan, and the purpose of a final site plan is to review a coordinated set of plans and documents that include specific details related to the subdivision. These may include sewer and stormwater plans, utility plans, grading, landscaping plans, that sort of thing. And then the final step is the final subdivision plot, which, the purpose of the final plot is to show the final configuration of the subdivision, based on those approved site plan documents. So again, the request before you tonight is for that first step, which is a concept plan. This concept plan is located off of Nob Road, east of Charlotte Pike, and west of Whitebridge Pike. The 36.15 acres slated for subdivision are located on the western half of the 66-acre property. A church located on the eastern half of this property is not included in this subdivision. Surrounding land uses include single-family, multifamily, and directly northeast of the parcel are the WSMV TV studios and transmission tower. The tower is surrounded by a 500-foot buffer, and a transmission tower easement extends from the tower through the buffer to the center of the site. The site plan proposes 30 residential cluster lots. Lots are clustered down to the R20 district size, and range from about 20,000 to 40,000 square feet. All of the lots are at least 50 feet in width. None of the lots are located in slopes of 20% or more, and no problem soils have been identified on the site. All of the lots are oriented along a new internal dead-end road, access from Nob Road. The new road extends towards the center of the site, approximately 1,100 feet, then splits off to form two cul-de-sacs near the northern and western property lines. A roundabout is located between the road split and the northern cul-de-sac. Five-foot sidewalks and a four-foot planning strip have been provided, and will go throughout the development. 46% of the site will be permanent open space, exceeding the 15% requirement through the cluster lot standards. Regarding access and connectivity, the Nob Hill design principles explain that infill development is appropriate in this location because of the existing and potential access and connectivity, and because of existing zoning entitlements. Regarding the preservation of sensitive features, the infill principles state that priority should be given to the preservation of environmentally sensitive features over consistency with surrounding parcel and right-of-way patterns. The initial plan shown before you shows proposed 33 lots, including four critical lots. These four critical lots have since been removed due to steep slopes. Section 3-9 requires that the maximum length of dead-end streets with turnarounds shall be 750 feet. The applicant does not meet this requirement, and is requesting a variance from this section of the subdivision regulations. As proposed, the length of the access road from Nob Road to the T is 1,100 feet. From the T to the western cul-de-sac is 700 feet, and to the mid-block turnaround is 500 feet. And from the mid-block turnaround to the eastern cul-de-sac is another 500 feet. The access road exceeds a maximum length of 750 feet. However, it would be difficult to connect to the north due to the needed grading, and further connections are not possible due to the existing surrounding development. Therefore, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance for the length of a permanent dead-end street.
Thank you very much. You did great on your first go-around. Wait for the questions, though. All right, so the applicant, we'll open this item up for public hearing. Applicant will have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two minutes out of that 10 for rebuttal. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Roy Dale, 516 Heather Place. I'm representing the applicant on this Nob Road subdivision. She did a great job. I think I submitted this project about the time she started. She's been working on it for four months. And we've taken a lot of time to work on this, because we wanted to meet with the community, we wanted to get community input, and that's exactly what we've done. What I'm handing you is just sort of general, maybe I've itemized this out to be able to answer questions, because I know there's a lot of questions that are coming before you, and the only time I'm gonna be able to answer questions is probably on the front end. So that's what I'm going to attempt to do. So this is a cluster lot subdivision, and as had been mentioned, and I'll just go, we'll just start at zoning, that's the very first thing on the list that I gave you. The property is owned R40. It's a subdivision, it's proposed by right. Generally, if you meet the perfunctory requirements of the subdivision, the planning commission has to recommend approval. Many times, I'll just simply say that when I do a subdivision and sit down, but in this case, I'm not going to do that. And the reason why is because there are some special things on this property that we really wanted to look at in great detail. So as I go through this list of items, you may say, you may hear me say something like, this is something we did that we weren't required to do, but we wanted to do, because of the conditions of the property itself and all the meetings that we had with the community. The land use policy is really important on this property, there's a special land use policy, and as staff had mentioned, the land use policy basically says, you have slopes, you have vegetation, you have mature trees that you want to preserve, and so the land use policy basically says, put that first, and then put the design or extensions of roadway secondary to that. And I think that's one of the reasons that the planning commission staff has made a recommendation of approval, based upon the length of these roads, to simply extend them. We actually submitted a plan to Public Works and Planning that showed extending this road to the north, all the way to the property line. There's another road very close by that you could connect to, but what it really does, it goes over a steep area, it gets into sensitive slopes, it opens up area for development you really don't want to open up. And so for that reason, that's the main reason, I think, the planning commission, one of the reasons that they recommended approval of the variance request. This is a cluster lot subdivision, and the cluster lot subdivision is something that we use when we have subdivisions that are on steep slopes, or they have floodplains. And in those requirements, we're supposed to set aside 15% open space. Well, in this case, we're setting aside 46%, three times the amount that's required. And we did that because the community basically said to us, look, we really enjoy the pristine nature of the property, let's try to minimize the amount of area that's disturbed. And so in addition, what we also did is that we decided that grading on this property would just be limited to the roadway itself. There would be no grading on any lot at all. As a matter of fact, when this property is developed, that would be one of the conditions, that we just do the infrastructure, and none of these lots are touched. As lots are individually sold, then they'll have to come in with a tree survey, and a plan to be submitted to a body that will look at and make sure that buildings are built to the geography, that you're not changing the grades, and you're preserving the large amount of vegetation. So in addition to the 46% that we're saving in open space, you're really saving vegetation on each individual lot. That's something we're not required to do, it's something that we want to do, and we think that it's beneficial to the community, and we think it's also beneficial to the development itself. There's several questions that came up during the community process. One was that there was poor soils. Well, mimosa is the soil that's on this property. Mimosa is not identified as a soil that has any particular hazard, but what we did was, we hired a geologist to look at it, and the geologist basically came back and said that the mimosa soils are not a potential for landslides, and they have low to medium erosion potential. So the soils are not going to be a problem. We also had, in a community meeting, someone mentioned that there may be an old historic wall on the property. So we sent our survey crew out there to, you know, look at the property, they did find a wall, we have identified that wall, and we basically said this wall cannot be touched. It was a very small wall, like 20 feet long. But we've also added a condition that when the final plans come in, that there will be a thorough archaeological survey of the entire property, and that's one of the conditions that we added. There was also a comment from the community that there was the possibility of a wetland or stream that ran through the property. Normally, when we do a concept plan, we just take the information that's available to us. It's just a concept plan. In the final plans, you get into much more detail, but we went ahead, we hired someone to do a hydrologic determination on the property. One of the little fingers that Metro had identified as a stream extends farther, and as a result of that, we modified the plan and totally removed a lot from the area that was in question. If you looked at the plan that we, you know, originally submitted, there's a huge difference between the plan that we have today and the plan that we submitted some time ago. There's been lots of discussion about the WSMV tower. When the property was sold to the church, there was a 350-foot radius that was placed around the tower, that's basically a safety area. And our, working with Meredith, who actually owns the tower, we voluntarily extended that another 150 feet. So there's a buffer that we've established that's 500 feet away from this tower. I know that, I noticed that Larry Oaks from Meredith is here, he'll probably talk to you about that. I understand he may want to add a condition about blasting. That's not a problem for us, we think that's totally appropriate. But the fact is, that this property is going to be designed, it's going to be laid out in a manner that existing slopes are preserved. In a cluster lot subdivision, you could have lots that have 25% slopes, they would be considered critical lots of this body. We've removed that. There will be no lot that has a 25% slope. They all will have 20% or less, so we're not proposing any critical lots, and that's pretty important. From stormwater perspective, there's always questions about stormwater. We have to provide stormwater per the regulations of Metro, which is one of the strictest in the United States. We will not be discharging any greater volume of water than we're, than we have there today. And as far as the dead ends concerned, I guess it's the last item. Generally, Metro's 750-foot standard on cul-de-sacs is established for two particular reasons. One is connectivity, and one is for safety. In this case, the subarea policy on this property says that the environmental features are more important. It specifically says that it's, they're more important than even the lot layout or extension of roadways. If we extend the roads to the property lines, I think that just gets into sensitive areas that we don't need. And so as a result of that, planning's saying connectivity is not an issue on this property, which now just leaves safety. The Farm Marshal has reviewed this, the Farm Marshal has signed off on this, so this is safe, you know, from that perspective, they're the person that we look to as far as safety. In conclusion, since I need to save two minutes, this is property that's already zoned, we're not asking for zone change. This subdivision exceeds the perfunctory requirements of a subdivision. We've added measures beyond what's normally required. The design meets the specific and special land use policy as determined by the staff, and the variance for the length of cul-de-sac is also something that the special policy actually, I think, encourages, and one of the reasons I think the staff came up and agreed that the variance was warranted. Grading on this site is limited to just the roadway itself, all vegetation within the property will be preserved, 47% will never be touched, and then the remaining percentage will be on lots. Anybody that develops on the lot will have to come in with a plan, do a tree survey, and then build according to standards that will be set for this development. I appreciate it very much.
You'll have a minute and 45 seconds. Or 42. We'll say 45. We'll give them two seconds now for you. Minute and 45 seconds in your rebuttal. Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? If you'll come up to the microphone, and you'll, if you, everybody will line up, that would be great, and it'd be helpful. And you'll have two minutes, and please state your name and your address.
My name is Dale Robel. I'm pastor at Highland Park Church, which owns the property, 5710 Nob Road. I just want to thank you all for having us here. But the church has been approached by interested buyers regularly, from schools to assisted living centers, houses of worship, many developers, most want to rezone it. And because of the massive interest in buying the property, I met with our District 20 representative, Mary Carolyn Roberts. And at the time, we had decided that we wanted to develop an assisted living center on the property. And Mary Carolyn had asked us not to do that. And at that meeting, we discussed many other possibilities, but simply put, Mary Carolyn stated that she would only support a plan that was as-zoned R-40. And the plan that Roy just talked about today is as-zoned R-40 and is allowed by right. And as Mary Carolyn, at her request, engineer Roy Dale hosted three community meetings, attended other neighborhood meetings, to inform and solicit feedback from the community. And Roy Dale and attorney Tom White have just been amazing and worked patiently and tirelessly, and have answered every question asked of them. And as a result, there have been numerous changes to the plans based on the community's input that you have seen today. And I want to just stress this to you. Our church has always been involved with significant activities in the community, and we will continue to do so. We're the major sponsor of the Last Minute Toy Store. We partner with WSM to raise a quarter million dollars for Gatlinburg, and we're about to send 70,000 meals to Haiti. I just want to say this, we've done everything possible to really make the neighborhood happy. Why? Because the people at this church love this community, too. And while we realize some want nothing on this property and treat our private property as if it's a public park, it is private property. And as Mary Carolyn Roberts really said, keep it as-zoned, and the proposal today is for $800,000 homes and up. And the plan is allowed by right, zoned R-40, and I think will be one of the nicest subdivisions in 37209 District 20 ever. I'm proud of that, and I ask for your support and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jackie Vanetta Thorne. I live at 6565 Marauder Drive, which is in District 20. I'm a, from a seven-generation West Nashville family that dates back to the 1800s. Seen a lot of changes in my life, and I'll be the first one to say, I hate change, but it's going to happen. We all know that evolution occurs with or without you being on board. I think we have all known that this property, as well as others, would someday be developed. I have to, I have been to some of the meetings with engineer Roy Dale, who has worked religiously with the community and listened to their input. This has resulted in many conversations and changes between himself, the church, the community, and councilwoman Mary Carolyn Roberts. Through these talks, the original plan was tweaked to a plan that the councilwoman herself originally backed as one that the community could get on board with. I feel that the current plan to develop some $3800,000 homes will be by far one of the best developments ever in District 20. To me, this is the ideal plan to support and build the community and businesses going forward for many generations. I would like to remind you that this property is zoned R-40 and is not being changed, which to my understanding is the church the right to sell and the builder the right to build. At this time, I just ask that you apply the same rights regarding this sale that every one of us in this room has with our own personal property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Hello?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Esken, and my family, the Esken family's been in the community for a long time. I live at 11 Northumberland. I'm not in District 20, but since Mina came and spoke today, I felt like I should count her by telling her we think this is a big win for us and our community. The church has listened to the council member and held numerous meetings with the community that were not even necessary. This will be one of the nicest subdivisions in District 20. They even listened and agreed not to develop Highland Park assisted living centers or donate the property to Habitat for Humanity to offer affordable housing, which our community also needs. The church has done everything they can to win over support, but at the end of the day, there are just some people that want nothing on this property. They have a right to build a zone. I'm asking for the support of the planning commission and asking for your approval today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Rick Starnes. I live at 815 Watts Lane. I'm in the 20th district and been there for quite some time, a little over seven years, 17 years. And by the way, I was born and raised here in Nashville, too. I'm speaking in regard to the Highland development, obviously. And when I bought the property I mentioned 17 years ago, I anticipated that it would appreciate and that the initial purchase would be wise investment for me and my children. The development of Highland View results in significant increase in the value of my property, along with all the property in District 20. The engineers and developers have gone through extensive and costly research to maintain the beauty of these 35 or 36 acres, and they are dedicated and determined to causing as little change to the land and surrounding property as possible. And that's what I want, too. The property is beautiful, and without a doubt, the property will be even more beautiful with the development of the Highland View subdivision. Property is obviously zoned for R-40 residential lots, and nothing needs to change with regards to the zoning. The development of Highland View would only be an excellent improvement for our district, and I want you to know that I am in full favor of development of the Highland View, and I respectfully ask you to support this development, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eddie Porter. I live in District 20. My wife, my children, and I moved into this neighborhood at 6412 Lansing Drive. We live about three blocks from the, from the entrance to this subdivision, proposed And we live right at the bottom of Nob Hill, so we're used to water. I mean, it's effective, when it floods, it floods. It's going to happen. But I think that we can get used to it. We can work around it. I think our codes are designed to work around it, and we have, we trust into that. I own and operate Westmead Pools, which is approximately a half a mile from our location, from our home. We love our home, we love our community, we love our neighborhood. It's a beautiful place to be, and I am in favor of allowing 30 new families to enjoy the beauty that we have in that neighborhood over there. When the development for Highland View at the Nob Project was brought to my attention, I was pleased to see the church's concern as to what type of development would be placed on it. I would not have supported a apartment complex or the little twin tiny towers duplex kind of things that's going up all over town right now. But I was more than pleased to hear what they were going to do with the, with the property there. As-zoned, what they're doing is putting on homes that will just enhance the property values of my home. It will enhance, it will really be a nice asset to our neighborhood. I can't see that there will be any problem for anyone. And the addition of 30 new families up there will not greatly impact our traffic flow up there at all. Most of the traffic problems we have are just simply because people come across from connecting from one street to the other. I'm asking that you give us favor with this and let the project go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight concerning the proposed development on Nob Road, known as Highland View. My name is David Drake. I don't live in the district, but I own and operate a business on Hillwood Boulevard, which is less than a half mile from the proposed site. I urge you to support this development as it is the right to build as zoned. My business has served this area for over 27 years, and we have grown to love this quiet and strong community. I feel that this development is of great benefit to the area for numerous reasons. The proposed development is to build $800,000 homes. I've seen the plans for this land, and I am confident in the engineer's vision for the site. I have never witnessed a subdivision of this kind to have a negative impact on the community. Instead, it will generate tax dollars on land that is not generating tax dollars right now. Second, these higher-income families will be great for businesses like mine in the West Nashville area. Third, the R-40 zoning preserves the integrity of this neighborhood by not allowing multiple homes on a single lot. Through my business, I shuttle multiple customers to this neighborhood frequently. I've serviced over 70,000 vehicles in the West Nashville area in the last 10 years now. I've heard numerous residents express their fears of tall, skinny homes packed onto tiny lots invading their quiet neighborhood. With Nashville's booming economy and growth, it is inevitable that this land will eventually be developed. Allowing the zoning to stay as-is R-40 would prevent a completely different kind of development that could impact the district in a negative way. I urge you to support as-zoned to preserve the neighborhood that I've grown to love. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vicki Maddox, and I live at 498 Sunliner Drive in the Charlotte Park neighborhood. I've lived in the District 20 my whole entire life. I grew up here and bought my house here 20 years ago. I understand growth in the city and the need for housing, but all around my neighborhood, they're buying the properties and the houses, tearing them down and putting two, three, and four two-story houses where one of our cute little ranch houses used to be. It's unnerving, disturbing. They're not at all in line with the neighborhood that I've grown to love. If I'm understanding correctly, this agenda for tonight for District 20, item number six is proposing to, to put up to 15 multifamily units on 1.25 acres. Item number seven on tonight's agenda is proposing to put up to nine residential units on .8 acres. And this has gone on in my neighborhood every day. With the Highland View proposal, I'd much rather see the 30 lots going on 36 acres because it's more in line with our existing neighborhood. That's why I am in favor of the subdivision at Highland Park.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David McCall at 461 Rochelle Drive. For the past 37 years, I've run a manufacturing plant in District 20, 40,000 square feet, employing 40 people, good Nashville natives, most of them. And one of the things that I appreciate about this development is, first of all, not only is it a pristine development, but it's also, if we're trying to set it up to be good for the neighbors, we've got to also keep in mind that the church is also going to be a neighbor. So the church is very selective on who it chooses to be its own neighbor. But as far as me running a manufacturing plant with the 40 employees, we also try to bring commerce into the community. So for example, sometimes we'll bring and cater in a lunch for our employees. We got a Wendell Smiths. Who doesn't like Wendell Smiths? Instead of going to big box stores for hardware, we got a Richland Ace Hardware. We pay a little more, but they're our neighbors. So we try to use the local people. So one of the things that, that we haven't talked enough about, except for Mr. Drake, is also the financial impact the people of this caliber can bring to the neighborhood. Generally, about 65% of discretionary spending is spent within a five-mile radius of your home. About 25% is spent within one mile of your home. So this can very positively impact the local economy within the greater neighborhood of District 20. So I really appreciate your time, and you guys are awesome for still being awake right now. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim Mason. I work, I own a business here in Nashville. I actually live in Robertson County. I do worship at the church. I'm a retired Metro homicide detective. I'll tell you that just to the north of here, just over the hills, 5800 Maldina Drive, Section 8 housing, which is one of the high crime areas in West Nashville, higher crime areas in West Nashville. I guess mainly I'm confused because I've kind of followed this through the church and seen everything that the church has done to try to, to come and meet the needs of the community, and yet it's never enough. Still not enough. You're fixing to hear from some very passionate people, and I understand, they live there, I understand that. We worship there. I worship there. I also have clients, now that I'm retired, that live in that area. Passionate to the point that some have come to the church and put cameras in people's faces during service, during worship time, threaten us and tell them that we're ruining their neighborhood. So I just want to ask you to support this and remind you that staff's recommendation is to approve this with the conditions, including for the variance of the length of dead end. But also keep in mind, when you make your decision, everything that the church has done to try to make this acceptable to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah, would come up and line up. And I'll, let me, let me go ahead and say this, because, you know, sometimes in the heat of debate, we want to keep it very cordial. This is a professional debate, and so I might ask everybody to please maintain your professionalism as we move forward, and not say that anybody hasn't. And then also, if you'll try not to repeat the arguments. Council A, do you want to go first, or do you? Okay, come on in, council.
I'm going to, I'm going to go first, and councilman Kathleen Murphy's going to go after me, or at the end. Thank you all seriously for staying this late. I know this is what, a big commitment that you all do for the city, and I really, I really appreciate it. And Abby, you did a great job. First one, that's a really big deal. That's a hard deal. There are a few things I just wanted to clear up, a few erroneous comments that I just feel like I have to address. And one of those were, that I said to the pastor that I would support this, and I think we all know, I never said that. I wouldn't say that. It's not how I do business, it's not how I ever have done it, and, and that's just not true. Also, that the Section 8 housing on Maldina is some of our highest crime, that's not true either. We have some high crime areas, but that actually is one of the most contained areas, and we're working with them on Maldina. So not, that's not hugely relevant with the fact that that was said. I just feel like that, that was unfair. The one thing we can agree on is what Roy Dale said, that we did have some meetings about this. We didn't have three. We had anywhere between 10 and 15, which I think everybody in this line can attest to. And maybe a weekly conference call and, and a few other things. And this is a very passionate topic for a lot of people. And the need for this variance is very, is entirely self-created. If the church had chosen to develop the whole site instead of just developing a portion of it, they wouldn't be for, before you right now asking for this variance. They could have designed a street grid that would have allowed for an access road to connect Nob Road on the eastern portion of the site, where the church is now. Even if they had chosen not to develop the entirety of the site, they could have reduced the number of the lots they proposed, which would have negated this whole variance. If they had fewer lots, they would need less linear feet on the, on the streets, and they would have been able to have permanent dead-end streets that were less than 750 feet. In Standard B, it says, and I'll have to read this, forgive me, I haven't memorized any of these. "The conditions upon which the request for a variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to the other property." Well, this isn't the only property in Nashville where someone's developing only a portion of the property. Because they chose to only develop a portion of the property, that doesn't make it or unique or specific to this site. It was their choice to develop only a portion of this, and that's the reason we're here for the variance today. In Standard C, it says, "Because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out." Well, if they'd chosen to carve out fewer lots, and it was a choice, or to develop the whole site, they could have either had a permanent dead-end street that met the 750-foot maximum length, or they could have provided a connection in the second location along Nob Road. So the hardship is created by the shape of the property, which, which is only a portion of the parcel and a portion of the special policy area. So by choosing to only develop a portion, the hardship is entirely self-created. So they could have pursued other development scenarios that would have negated the needing of a variance for the permanent length of the dead-end street, but they, they didn't. They chose to go this route. In Standard D, it says, "The variance shall not in any manner vary from the..." In Standard D, it says, "The variance shall not in any manner vary from the provisions of the adopted general plan, including its constituent elements, the major street plan, or the zoning code for the Metropolitan Nashville and Davidson County. The plan as it's presented right now, for which the variance is being requested, goes against the goals and the objectives of the, of the Metro subdivision regulations. By providing a street plan with nothing but permanent dead-end streets and with no connectivity provided to the adjacent properties." This is bad planning, because what happens when the church sells this property? And they will. They will sell this property. And when it happens, we won't have one cohesive development with shared access. We'll have multiple access points on the Nob Road with no connectivity between the subdivisions, which has been proven to cause congestion and to lead to more conflict points between the vehicles and the pedestrians. More importantly, even though we, they said that this wasn't a safety issue, this is going to create emergency vehicle access issues, because there's only one point of access which has been proven to be very dangerous to subdivisions. Three examples of this were the flood in 2010, the tornadoes in 1998, the WSMV tower falling in 1957. Having two access points allows for more chances for emergency vehicles to get in and out, and will probably end up saving lives ultimately. In the Nob Road special policy, it says, "Infill development is appropriate in this location because of the existing access and potential for additional access and connectivity, and because of existing zoning entitlements." This plan contradicts the special policy goal of providing additional connectivity. It offers two permanent dead-end streets with no connectivity to the adjacent sites. If it develop, if they had developed the whole property with a more cohesive plan for shared access, it would have conformed easily, but they chose not to. My neighbors are against this. The two Metro council people who, who, one has spoken to you, Councilman Mina Johnson, and now Councilman Kathleen Murphy are against this. I'm against this. My neighbors, this is not, I'm asking that you do not approve this. This is something that, in conjunction with the fact that these standards haven't been met, this isn't something that needs to, to, to happen. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. Ma'am, come on up. You'll have two minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Monette. Thank you for serving our city. I'm glad to be here. I'm with the Richland Creek Watershed Alliance, as you probably know. We respectfully request that the commissioners deny this concept plan and its accompanying road variance. I'm summarizing my written points today here. And basically, this development is just, it's, it's shell-shocking to me. But the road, the utilities are going to significantly alter the landscape, the water flow, the springs, the groundwater. I just, and, and the soil, I've walked a little bit on it, I slipped, because it does slip. The development will forever change the hydrological and biological function and integrity of this critical highland and headwaters. And as a result, would also alter the chemical, physical, and biological character of all the receiving streams, not just Richland Creek, there's two others. It requires extensive measures, the roads and utilities with great consequence to the formation. It'll alter, like I said, alter the flow of the groundwater, therefore the springs. Many older trees will have to be removed, loss of critical wildlife habitat to the whole ecosystem. The headwater stream north, south, east, west, and from Nob Hill to Richland Creek and to other streams, I think I said it was going to affect the water quality and quantity and the habitats. We strongly urge you to maintain the conservation policy indicated for Nob Hill. These headwaters in this formation provide distinct, unique nutrients and organisms that perpetuate clean water and healthy aquatic ecosystems. There's just, there's no argument there. This, this does not work with the land. It works opposite of the land. I also would like to say that where he's placing the bio-retention area is where two streams come together at the entrance, and that will just, stormwater pollute, which all of this is going to just increase more stormwater pollution to the streams. And that, and they're meant to be detained water and be upward to mitigate and attenuate the stormwater prior to going to the streams. So putting them down by the streams is, is the totally wrong location. Nashville's rolling green hills in addition to being a natural icon for the city. Our important formations provide fresh waters to our streams in the Cumberland River. A watershed is common ground, and a healthy one is a common good. Please deny Highland View with the Nob and the associated road variance. It is the road that is really going to destroy this, this land and cause huge amounts of water issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And you represented the Richland Creek Watershed Alliance, that's why we gave you five minutes. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Miriam Leibowitz. I'm the president of the White Bridge Neighborhood Association. I have like, five minutes? That's okay. Hi. So again, Miriam Leibowitz. I live at 5621 Meadowcrest Lane, across White Bridge Road from this development. I represent 3,900-plus residents, served by the White Bridge Neighborhood Association. And as I was researching this property through our records, I found December 2, 2002 City Paper article titled "Church to Build Next to WSMV" by Judith R. Tackett, which said, and I quote, "Building Chairman Lou Alvarez from the Highland Park Church said the church will only utilize about 10 of the 65 and 1/2 acres, leaving the remaining land undeveloped," end quote. And then I also found in our files that in 2005, 2006, a plan by Vail Resorts to build a large group of RS-20 homes was dropped while John Summers was council member for the area. I say that just to give you some background about the relationship with the church as it was developing this property initially for their building, and what was intended by the church going forward, which was not to develop the land that they are asking to sell off and have developed today. The requested, the variance requested for the cul-de-sac is more than twice what is allowable by Metro codes for subdivisions, and is a self-imposed hardship, as has been stated earlier, designed in order to make a larger profit for the developer. This is not a hardship that should be borne by the neighborhood. Longer cul-de-sacs will make it more difficult for emergency vehicles, and due to this steep incline along parts of the proposed, proposed roads, inclement weather, such as the ice we get in winter, will make them more dangerous. I live on a cul-de-sac and have personally experienced the difficulty of emergency vehicles coming in and out of the neighborhood and the blockage of the road when one of my neighbor's homes caught on fire last summer. There remain areas in excess of 20% slope on the, in the concept plan, and open areas do not include the required recreational facility per Metro codes for a subdivision of this size. While 30 lots are in the plan, the plan is to include up to 41 homes. The WSMV tower overshadows this property and was built there with the express reason that it would not harm people in the event of collapse. The previous tower killed four people when it did collapse. The concept plan is not in line with the West Nashville Community Plan, as the proposed lots are significantly smaller, less than one acre than the surrounding lot sizes in the immediate neighborhood, which are one-acre lots. This is currently wooded hillside with rich wildlife, turkeys, deer, salamanders, et cetera, flora, streams, tributaries, and natural springs, which lie just underground, and includes mimosa soil, which overlooks Chattanooga Shale, which is known for not being great for building on. There are current runoff and groundwater issues along Nob Road. At the Highland Park Church and West End Community Church, which faces White Bridge Road, their soccer field is currently sinking, and they're dealing with how to mitigate that water issue. Both of these churches are built on Nob Hill. By removing underbrush and trees and building on Nob Hill, the entire neighborhood will be affected through flow into Richland Creek, which is prone to flooding. We lost several homes on my street in 2010 due to Richland Creek flooding, and there still remains a considerable amount of runoff anytime there's rain. And I'd like to just point out that as I was looking at your agendas for, for the meetings with, with this issue, I noticed that part of your mission statement includes environmentally sustainable community with a commitment to preservation of important assets, and I urge you to see Nob Hill as an important asset for Nashville and for our neighborhood as a whole. It would greatly impact our community to have development done. I understand that, that by right, it is zoned R-40, and I also understand the, the true nature of what would happen once streams, tributaries, and, and underground water supplies are interrupted and begin to impact our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. I'm Jane Alexander, and I live at 5629 Meadowcrest Lane, which is close to the, this subdivision, this proposed subdivision. Your planning staff report emphasizes that you shouldn't grant variances that nullify the intent and purpose of subdivision regulations. The intent and purpose of the 750-feet regulation on the maximum length of turnarounds is to keep turnarounds short enough so people won't get trapped in an emergency. And so fire trucks and ambulances, maybe half a dozen or more big vehicles at a time, can get in and out to save lives and property. I live on the same street that Miriam just spoke, and we had like, eight fire trucks get down, and they had to back out of our street, and we live on a cul-de-sac. If you triple that turnaround length, you triple the hazards for people who live on the dead end. We've already seen the dangers of this on Dead End Fleetwood, with the narrow street and the difficulty in getting fire trucks turned around and passing each other, resulting in a house burning to the ground last year before the hoses would even start. The dead end of Fleetwood is a fully paved cul-de-sac. The proposed variance on Nob Hill would create hollow core cul-de-sacs that are even harder to get big trucks in and out. Imagine a fire in a house at the end of one of those hollow core cul-de-sacs. Imagine fire trucks trying to get past each other in that narrow circle. The 2,000-foot dead-end section of Fleetwood was a bad idea to build. It should never have been approved for development. Fleetwood Dead End is a powerful warning not to make the same variance mistake twice on Nob Hill. We believe that good stewardship in developing the city of Nashville lies in obeying the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. We urge the commission to deny the variance because it nullifies that intent and purpose.
Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you guys had a power bar during your break. You need some sort of honor for perseverance and endurance. My name's Kathy Cloninger. I live on the Dead End Block of Fleetwood Drive, and my house backs up to lot number 14 on the concept plan, so I'm up close and personal with this. If you look at the sketch of this land on a flat piece of paper, which is what we usually do, if you look at that flat piece of paper, especially if you have not walked the land and seen the steep contours, active springs and streams, mossy evidence and constant seepage on every hilltop and every slope, you could have an impression that it might be reasonable to build this kind of subdivision. And given the fact that we definitely need more housing in Nashville, a case can be made that any undeveloped area could be appropriate for infill. But as you've heard, Nob Hill is not flat. It is a large and complex ecosystem and aquifer. We know that when you start changing one part of an ecosystem, the entire system is impacted. It will be impossible to build 30 houses on this dense piece of woods without blasting, cutting trees, digging into streams, and cutting into the ground. We don't know exactly what this kind of impact will have on the land, but we do know it will have unintended consequences. Nashville today faces a critical moment in how our city grows. Our mayor is committed to a balance between tear it down and build with environmental and aesthetic values. Her focus on tree canopies, green space, neighborhood connectivity, and making sure our city maintains its character while we grow, makes Nob Hill a vital symbol of our need to take the long view and to sensibly plan our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Trish Bowlian. I live on Hickory Valley Road. I have never seen a piece of property that demands your close attention as this one does. We must protect it because we cannot undo decisions made. This land has careful descriptive paragraphs in the West Nashville Plan 2009 that rolled into Nashville Next 2015, and was then expanded in the community characters' conservation policy. There's brief acknowledgement of base zoning, but extensive description of water, steep slopes, and soil issues. Additionally, there's a broadcasting tower on Channel 4 on the adjacent property weighing 18 tons. Already, known water issues and damages are costing thousands to homeowners downhill. The proposed plan would put new homes even more in the path of flooding. Unstable soils, steep slopes are a, are a key aspect of the topography of this area. Add in a massive broadcasting tower and either blasting or deep digging, and the conditions described, and we cannot wave away concerns as nothing to worry about. The former tower did collapse, different site. Of course, this one is built differently, but I don't really think we know what may happen in these conditions, and frankly, I don't think the risk is worth it. I would urge that this development, or any allotted development, be put down and only on the Franklin Road area, and the slopes left untouched. I do believe that these slopes and this area could be a win-win under the new Metro Park suggestion of public-private partnerships and natural trails. Thank you.
I'm Kathy Baker. I live at 6011 Fleetwood Drive. I'm the co-president of the Hillwood Neighborhood Association, which represents 1,100 homes, including all of the properties on Fleetwood adjacent to the proposed development. At a meeting of the association where we presented this plan, there was absolutely no support for this development. I'm asking you to vote no on the development on Nob Hill because it violates land-use policy in the West Nashville Community Plan. There's not one, but two special policies that cover this property. The first is the overall Hillwood and Westmead neighborhoods' special policy, which says, "Since this is an established area with limited opportunities for increasing the level of infrastructure, the density permitted within the current zoning districts should be maintained." The second, which covers this parcel specifically, says, "The character of the area is suburban, primarily single-family dwellings on parcels that are generally slightly less than one acres. Parcels created along Nob Road should maintain this pattern, although parcels created on new streets behind Nob Road could be slightly smaller." The applicant is attempting to develop lots that are 20,000 square feet. I don't believe that anyone thinks 20,000-square-foot parcels are slightly smaller than 40,000-square-foot parcels. I worked with other community members and the planning department in 2008 to write these special policies, trusting that this language would protect this property from this type of development. When we revisited the plan in 2015, no one, not the planning department, not the community, and not the applicant, suggested there should be any changes to these policies. When a development is inconsistent with the community plan, then there should be a community plan amendment, and that's what the applicant should be required to do. They can't just simply push the magic cluster lot option button and override land-use policy.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Joan Palmer. I live on Burgess Avenue. I have lots of friends who live in the Nob Road area. A lot of them really don't like the water that comes down off the hill to begin with, and this is going to make matters worse. Having a variance that is really incredibly long would be, I just... Having a variance that is really incredibly long would be, I just don't see it justifiable. The granting of a variance, quote, "shall not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood," and that's Planning Commission wording. Other folks have mentioned blasting problems and, okay, and soil, mimosa soil. I Googled mimosa soil. It's a clay soil, and it was from a report that I read that was done back in 1928, I believe, or maybe it was '38, but a long time ago, before I was born. And I asked my mother-in-law, who's born and raised in Nashville, she's 95, and I was talking with her about this, and I said, "What would you think of clay soil on top of shale?" And her comment was, "Oh, lots of rain, there's going to be a landslide." Case in point. I mean, here, she's 95, she's never lived in an area where there's landslide, but she knew what those combinations could do, and that's what can happen here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Libsy, and I've lived at 5745 Nob Road for the past 27 years. Nob Hill and its surroundings are, as you know, made up of mainly Chattanooga shale topped with mimosa soil, not an ideal combination for building on steep slopes. Although Roy Dale's plans show no lots on slopes greater than 20%, the overlay that you were sent by our group from a slope map obtained from the Highland View project folder at the planning department identifies areas being built on that are in excess of 20%. In addition, it shows the cul-de-sac on slopes in excess of 25%. This is a matter for concern. The microburst in May of 2010 resulted in a major landslide on Stoneway Trail, just the other side of Nob Road. This pushed in the entire backside of a property up there, which was determined to be from the waterlogged soil, which the tree roots could no longer hold. The owner to this day is still traumatized by the events. He had deleted all photos, so he didn't have any to share with me because he said it was so traumatizing. With the increased rainfall we have been getting in the past few years, this also should be a cause for concern with this concept plan. We all of us battled water runoff from the slopes in this area. With the amount of trees that will have to be cleared and the smaller lots, this will only increase the water runoff problems and chance of slippage. I worry about who is going to be held responsible down the road should problems appear after these houses are built. Honestly, I feel the concept plan in its current form is premature, and other parts of the property should be considered for development where the developers would not be in such flagrant disregard of the cul-de-sac regulations. More connectivity could be designed here. I urge you to deny this concept and send it back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen, I'm Mike Williams. I live at 6457 Fleetwood on the Dead End. I'm less than half a mile from the tower. My research tells me that this tower is built to withstand winds of 120 miles an hour with a full coat of ice. Sounds nice. But in 1998, I stood in my garage and watched trees do that when the tornado came through, uprooted big ones right in my front yard. That tornado was a mile wide, F3 winds, 168 to 206 miles an hour. It missed the tower by less than half a mile. Now, what is the next tornado going to do to that tower? The metal beams, 36 cables, the anchors in the Chattanooga shale, that are going to be weakened by blasting, by the way. You know there's a spring coming up closer than you are to me, to one of the tower anchors, a spring coming right out of the ground. That's how waterlogged the ground is and the shale. I was going to tell you something about Galloping Gertie. I'll just hold this up. If you go on and Google Galloping Gertie and watch wind resonance destroy a major suspension bridge, make it writhe like a snake and fall into the river, you're going to wonder who's going to want to be living under that tower when the next tornado comes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Billy Libsy. I live at 5745 Nob Road, Hillwood Place, which is a cul-de-sac, and we're right in the same area. And my wife and I have been homeowners in this cul-de-sac for 27 years, and we know a lot about non-connectivity. This is a tiny cul-de-sac, only eight houses. We've had many difficulties when emergency services get called, especially often more than one vehicle will show up. And we've had an instance where a fire truck got stuck and had to discharge all of its water before being able to turn around, blocking the entire street. This is my main concern. I know you've heard it all about cul-de-sacs, but the development in this plan has no connectivity, and not one, but two cul-de-sacs. We're seeking a variance here. He claims he suffers a particular hardship, and this is in fact a self-imposed hardship as there are other parts of the property that could be developed. Why would anyone apply for a variance that would cause safety issues? I don't understand it. If there ever was an emergency in a development, say 30, we've got 30-plus homes here, one hates to think of 30-plus cars trying to get out of a subdivision, sharing one exit with a church, where on Sunday there would be numerous cars trying to exit as well during a fire, landslide, TV tar falling. I say no more. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Crenshaw. I live on Nob Road at 5730. Your planning staff report says that a variance request must be based on conditions unique to the property for which the variance is sought and not applicable generally to any other property. If the applicant is claiming that his cul-de-sac variance is based on relieving some unique conditions on Nob Hill, then the applicant is definitely up a creek. And by that I means he's up one of many other creeks on Nob Hill that his GIS map fails to show to this commission. Here's my point. The entire hill is a unique condition of porous Chattanooga shale, unstable mimosa soils, steep slopes, variable ground cover, view shed, active springs, and streams running above and below ground. These conditions pervade the entire property. The variance can't possibly avoid or circumvent any of these conditions on Nob Hill. Instead, it will only create more problems. We ask the commission to recognize that the variance fails to meet the unique condition requirement of the variance standards in the subdivision regulations. On that basis, we ask you to deny the variance. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caleb Dixon. My family and I have lived on 6461 Fleetwood for 10 years. We back up to proposed lot number 14 and have the historic stone wall on there as well. Nashville Next, the West Nashville Community Plan, historical precedents, subdivision regulations, the stuff you guys, I guess, dream about at night in your nightmares, are powerful tools not only to keep our neighborhoods safe, but also consistent with the established regulations that you as a team get to manage for our city. The crazy thing for me through this whole discovery and engaging with my neighbors is that I realized my section of Fleetwood, the Dead End cul-de-sac, should have probably never been developed the way that it was. Here's a couple examples. Our road is so steep up the hill that when it snows and ices, we basically can't get out. If you've ever seen the people snowboarding down the road, the actual road, that's our road on TV. They show it on the news every year. And you've heard from people on the pro side and us on the against side that there's major water issues, and I think that really has to be considered. Second example is last year, there was a house fire three doors up from us, and the fire department did a great job responding, and there was a lot of response, but the logjam that happened on our street because of the cul-de-sac caused a delay in the hoses being able to get connected, which I think you heard earlier. And as I'm sitting there, 30 feet from this house burning down, it really hit me that every second matters in that scenario. I was wondering, literally, are the woods going to catch on fire? So you've heard many detailed individual examples tonight. That's because of the two-minute warning. Hopefully, as you're considering this, I ask that you look at all these together as a whole. This is not affordable housing. This does not benefit the community, and I ask that you deny this variance request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Duncan Ragsdale. I live at 6453 Fleetwood Drive on the left side of the left cul-de-sac. I am here today to oppose this development for three reasons. Safety concerns about the very long cul-de-sac with one entry, a variance that has been requested. I live at the highest point on Fleetwood Drive with a view of the Nashville West Shopping Center. Last February, my neighbor's house to the left burned down to the ground at 5:00 AM. 10 fire trucks and emergency vehicles lined our street. They had a terrible time pulling the hoses up the very steep driveway. There was also trouble when it came to leave, everyone getting past each other in the cul-de-sac. The extremely long road coming up a very steep hill is a big safety hazard in this new plan. It seems to me that there's a large amount of less steep property at this address that is not being developed. I am suggesting that they could make a new plan in a different area that would not include a variance. I believe that they are creating a self-imposed hardship in order to push this through. The second one is stormwater management. Last year, I installed a French drain behind my house because we've had problems with water eroding our property and shifting our home. I believe that clearing this property of trees and paving the area will create a greater problem, increasing the water coming towards us. This issue has not been thoroughly researched and addressed in this new site. And then last, blasting. The summer after I bought my house, blasting began for the Nashville West Shopping Center. Our home began to crack, as well as that of all our neighbors. A machine was brought to my yard to test the blasting, only to determine that they were within their legal blasting limits. I have to repair my house and continual cracking, myself and now. I believe that you will not be able to protect our homes from this blasting, stormwater runoff, as well as ensuring the safety of the people that move into the new homes on Nob Hill. I am requesting that you oppose this development until a better plan can be developed with a rigorous examination of the ground it will sit on. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come on up. Let's try not to repeat ourselves.
Yes. I'm Rob Chiplicki. Duncan Ragsdale is my wife. I live at 6453 Fleetwood Drive. Everyone's stolen my material. So first I'm going to talk about briefly, I believe at least 50 people wrote you letters that were against this. Beyond that, I think I wrote four. So I'm hoping that you read some of the things that I sent. The work that I do requires me to fact-check. So, you know, people talk about being passionate. Well, I'm passionate. My house is right at the end of the cul-de-sac on the west side, but I'm a homeowner. I spent, when the fire happened next to our home, I was on my roof with a hose before the fire department got there because we were so close, there's so much wood. We cannot get out of our home. That being said, I'm going to talk about something else. We've had several conversations with Mr. Dale, several meetings. We've been told that this property can be engineered for development. We don't believe that to be true. We believe that there are a lot of things that haven't been addressed and discussed and known about this property. You know, it was said that critical lots were taken off this concept. I believe lots 11, 12, and 15 are on slopes of over 20%, and Lot 15 has half of their property over 25%. The road that goes between where the T is and the end cul-de-sac, somewhere about 2/3 down, is over 25% slope. So, that's an issue. I'm going to keep going. 750 feet, that would be from the beginning of Nob Road, 750 feet up, not 1,000 feet down, up, and then 700 feet to the left, 750 feet to the right. Mr. Dale's created his own problems for this. Oh, I'm done.
Thank you.
Anyhow, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Prince, and I live at 5719 Stoneway Trail, and I live on a view shed. I live next to the house where the whole back part of it, of the hill, came down into his living room. You know, this has been a really interesting experience for me because this has caused me to get involved in my community, even more into my neighborhood. I thought I was pretty involved with my, at least with my street, but now I've gotten to know a lot more about where I live. And I've gotten to learn the history. So I didn't realize that that tower, which I've always been concerned about, and I live quite a ways from it, was put there in the 50s when there was really no houses there, and it had fallen, and unfortunately, four people lost their lives when it did. So, you know, here is this tower, and now all of these, you know, over the course of the last, what, 70 years, houses have been built. So I decided to look into, you know, how safe this is, and I found a really interesting article about ice, ice and wind. And we have now come into a time when our climate is very unpredictable, and I work in sustainability and environment, and we don't know what's going to happen. And if we got an ice storm and a wind storm at the same time, it has taken towers like that down. And that particular amount of space, I mean, that is a huge tower, and you should look at what it looks like when those things come down. There's a lot of footage out there. So I'm interested in what the livable Nashville and having some canopy, you know, let's not go take a bunch of trees down and plant a bunch more. What about keeping this area for the conservation? Like, the mayor wants to have 4,000 acres of preservation. This might be the place to do it. It keeps safety first, it protects the neighborhood and the ecology, and I hope that you'll take a look at that. Thank you so much.
My name's William Martin. I live at 5633 Nob Road, and I will not be repetitive. My favorite author penned these words, "Panta mu existin', ala u panta sum firi." Nobody said that yet, right? Okay. Apostle Paul saying, "All things are lawful for me, but not all things are beneficial." I met with Pastor Dale. He is a wonderful guy, and we had a nice conversation about this development. He has spent a lot of time trying to make sure that this is a good thing for our neighborhood. The thing that seems to be the sticking point for me in our conversation has to do with this issue of what is beneficial. He pointed out, and Mr. Dale has pointed out numerous times, that they have the legal right to sell this property. They have the right to develop it along certain guidelines. The right does not make it beneficial. That's not me, is it? Thank you. So, thank you. With our neighborhood, we have certain characteristics I've never seen anywhere else. I've lived in this neighborhood for about 20 years. We have wildlife. We have a herd of 20 wild turkeys. We have very interesting, in this part of Nashville, we have wild turkeys, we have deer. You don't see these in the middle of the day. You have to be there in the cool of the evening or in the morning. We have foxes, we have coyotes, we have rabbits. I live down the hill and across the street from this development. I have three hills that send water into my yard. We have a large creek that bisects our backyard. Taking off all of this dirt for these houses, putting pitched roofs and asphalt will send tons of water my way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Oaks. I represent Meredith Corporation, the owners of WSMV, at 5700 Nob Road. We have a number of conversations with Roy Dale concerning the safety zone around the tower, and we've come to a conclusion that the zone at 500 feet is acceptable to us. Our concerns today really is around the blasting of the site. We want to add some special conditions to ensure that there's engineering studies done that will undermine our tower and our normal day-to-day operation. And that's all I'm really asking for today, is more extensive studies regarding the actual blasting at the sites as the properties are developed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Anderson. I live at 121 Watts Terrace, which is on the backside of Nob Hill. Roy Dale's concept plan shows one short string. Mr. Dale claims he must totally rely on Metro GIS maps to inform your commission about streams and springs. I have walked this land. I have seen with my own eyes there are more streams and springs than the Metro GIS map shows. shows. We have video of one active spring bubbling up out of the ground six feet away from the middle TV cable anchor. Water is permeating the shell that the cable is anchored into, and the water rises from the springs and flows down Nob Road and Watts Terrace. There's also many runoff goalies from the cross-house sites, including one gully right through the proposed road's middle turnaround. Metro GIS maps utterly fail to show the Nob Hill as an aquifer. There's moss on every slope, every hilltop, that proves that water regularly seeps out of the underground springs. We ask the commission to recognize that the concept plan based on the GIS maps tells you a false story about these streams and springs on Nob Hill. The Nob Hill water flow above and below ground is more extensive than you are led to believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I'm Billy Honiger, 6522 Rollingford Drive. I would like to go in three specifics here. The roundabout, the second roundabout here in this concept plan is exactly at the location where all the water comes down from this hill, and there's a lot of water coming down. And where a creek originates flowing out towards Nob Road. So this roundabout cannot be built. The second point is that the Parcells 29, 30, and 1 lie in the floodplain of that creek. So the next flooding would inundate any house which would be built in these lots. The third point is, between the roundabout, or the road, between the roundabout number two and three is steeper than the maximum slope of roads is allowed due to Nashville codes, which is 10 to 12%. And the average of that road's average is 49%. So this road cannot be built. That means this hill actually should be left alone and maybe developed to park sooner or later. That would actually profit, the whole community would profit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council lady.
Good evening. Thank you all for listening to all of our constituents. While this is Mary Carolyn's district, across the street is my district. And so, quite honestly, I think a little bit more geographically, my people are going to be affected by what happens here. And in fact, myself, where I live, 231 Orlando Avenue, has a dry creek bed. So every time y'all approve more density on Mary Carolyn's side of the street, she gets to hear from me because it means more water's coming through my backyard. So this just affects my constituency greatly and my district. And I'll tell you something that Mary Carolyn did not say, is that in the last week or two, we've gotten some personal attack emails saying that we are being unethical by not supporting this because it's by right. It's my understanding it's not exactly zoning by right because they're asking a variance. And that's why we're here before y'all tonight. And what you have to decide tonight is, have they proven the hardship for the variance? And I don't think that they have. So I'll try to summarize some of those points quickly because I know it's late, and I know that y'all have heard a lot of reasons to disapprove this about the soil, the acquitards, the tower, the lot size, and everything. So specifically, the characteristics of this property, they're not unique to this property. This whole area is pretty steep. It's got lots of water coming from different places. When I knock doors in this area, my Fitbit showed 75 flights of stairs on one walk turf, which I think some people from the council understand what that means. It's a lot of up and down. There's one street in particular that's not far from here, it's further down on the map, Layla Woods Circle, where they frequently, anytime we have an ice storm, they're calling me because they're stuck. They can't get out. And it is a, it's a cul-de-sac street as well, and with the steep terrain, they just can't do it. Now, again, that was developed without a variance, and they're still having these problems. So, the unique characteristics of the property, they're not unique to just this lot. I believe that the hardship of the tower easement is self-imposed. When this property was bought, at some point, that easement was agreed to, and that easement is evidently part of the reason why they cannot connect down or have a more connecting street infrastructure. And so that's, that's just point-blank, it's self-imposed. Financial gain is really one of the bases for this variance. They need the variance to create more lots, to make more money for the, for the sale of the property. Which, again, you know, we all want to maximize our property, and under the law, many court cases, but I can't quote you because I'm not an attorney, but many of them do say that you have reasonable rate of return, ex, you know, under the law, but that maximum rate is not what you're guaranteed to by the law. No injury to the neighboring properties, I think that's been touched on a lot tonight, and harm to the public welfare. I think we have very valid concerns that if this variance is granted, that there are potential harm to the public welfare in the neighboring counties. And again, the integrity of the development master plan here is, we need to be looking at the special policy more. This is clearly a piece of property that is, could be developed in a different way. It could be developed, the whole property, the other part on the other side of the church, or something else that makes more sense. But I think that this part was chosen because they could go for a variance and potentially not have to follow all the regulations that if you followed the whole parcel together. So I think that what you've heard here tonight is that there are a lot of neighbors concerned, and I think that they have very valid concerns. And then I hope that you will realize and see and agree with the other two councilwomen and myself, that they have not proven they deserve this variance. So, thank you for your time, and please disapprove this variance.
Thank you, council lady. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? You'll have 1 minute and 45 seconds for your vote.
Mr. Chairman, before I get started, I'd like to ask that we do have a show of hands of those that are here that are supportive of this, all of whom we did not ask to speak, but I'd like to ask for that as a matter of courtesy.
We can do that. All those who are in support of the project? Okay. And then let's do the opposite. All those that are not in support? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I come before you with respect to the matters of cluster lot. It's, cluster lot options basically there as a matter of right. The issue that we're talking about has to do with the variance. With respect to the cluster lot option, I think that Roy Dale, in his explanation, did an incredibly capable job in this design. The 46% open space versus 15, all the lots at 20% or less, I think is an excellent layout. With respect to the principal argument that the variance is not consistent with the sub-rates, I can't answer in this short time, everybody that came up here to the mic and said it's not consistent. But your staff did. The staff looked at it very carefully and said, "It is consistent with the subdivision regulations." That's the professional planners. People come here and give their opinion about things, but that's what governs the day. With respect to hardship, look at this plan ahead of you. They want to talk about a lack of connectivity. That road to the north can be done, very simply. It would basically be like Sherman coming through Atlanta. It would destroy the woods, the very thing of your special policy which says preserve environmental areas. Urging that connectivity to the north would totally, totally destroy that. The woods, the slope, everything. And it would connect the development to Charlotte Road. So you talk about traffic and issues, connecting that to the north, which we could have done, and submitted a proposal to Public Works to do that, was not rejected. It was pulled back by us because of the very reason I'm not talking about. It would have been a horrible proposal. That would have given connectivity. With respect to the issues of safety and connectivity, they can talk about safety. The Fire Marshal Office has looked at it, totally signed off. I'll close by saying, every Metro agency, every Metro agency has recommended approval, looking at this for the last four months. Appreciate your courtesies, urge your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Hagginger? You're not new.
Wake her up. Wake up!
So not fair. I object. First of all, thank you to all the community from both sides who've come out tonight and hung with us. We're still here, and we'll be here for a bit more, but appreciate the time, energy, and the passion behind these sorts of matters. We've heard a lot of information, and I know one point about, is this a reading here, talking about a variance? Correct? So by ri, we have the right to do something, what they're going to do, but we need a variance to do so. I am really concerned about the one-way-in, one-way-out, lack of cul-de-sacs, and all the concerns we've heard about emergency vehicle access. I understand the Fire Marshal has signed off on it. I am knowing the Fire Marshal.
All right. So this is what we're not going to do. We are not going to have any outbursts. And if we do, we're going to take a recess, and y'all will be here a lot longer. So we're going to keep this very professional. There are equal amounts of people here on both sides, and we will not tolerate any more outbursts. Is that clear? Okay.
Thank you. The Metro Fire Marshal's office will require certain requirements through this process, but my understanding is that based on, because there's 30 units, there's not a second access point required. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thirty units is the threshold for single-family units.
Okay, so 30, if they were to do 31...
I'm sorry, above 30 units.
Above 30. So anything above 30 would require a second access.
Correct.
Okay. And the point is not taken lightly that the hardship is created by the applicant, and this is, so can you walk us through the analysis? And I know it's written here, but can someone walk us through the analysis on the variance standard and why the decision was made? Because, you know, that's so much fun for your friend.
Yes. Hold on one second.
My first gavel, your first presentation, it's a banner evening.
Their first meeting?
Their first meeting? Welcome.
I would just get it started while Abby's getting squared away, that when we approach any project in an infill area, very often, one of the very first things we look at is connectivity. We look at interior connectivity. How are people going to get around the site, pedestrian, vehicular? And then exterior connectivity. Is there a place where the roads can connect? And sometimes, it's an easy answer, yes or no. In this instance, we did look at whether or not there would be an opportunity to connect north towards Marcia Street, so that would have been this here. But in that instance, as was noted, we have slopes and other natural features up here. And so, we felt that on the whole and on balance, we tried to look at this holistically, that we weighed the environmental features and protecting those, I think, as we looked at this project. We had asked the applicant to remove lots from steep slope areas, and we had worked to protect other environmental features. So it seemed to us, as we were balancing those to the environmental features on the site, the urban design considerations with the layout and the connectivity, that where we came down, just in terms of our thought process, was to protect the environmental features. So the subdivision regulations include a, that the road can't exceed the maximum of 750. Abby, if you can put up the one where it shows the different lengths, I think that would help.
Sure.
And so from our perspective, connectivity was possible to the north, but it seemed to us that it might undermine some of the other goals that we had for environmental stewardship. And we had certainly heard from the residents a great concern and value for the wooded areas and things of that nature. So I think that was the tough decision that we were confronted with in terms of a planning perspective and those priorities. And so once we sort of said, okay, the connectivity to the north is maybe feasible, but from a policy perspective, might not holistically meet the other goals that we're interested in, that is how we arrived at basically recommending the variance. If that kind of helps you from a big-picture perspective.
It does. I think, big picture, but we're required to follow through with evidence presented that, A, it's not detrimental to public safety, health.
Yes. So we rely on the Fire Marshal's office. So we're looking at it, I would say, more broadly, from a connectivity perspective. We rely on the Fire Marshal's office to give us their analysis and their review. And as Abby mentioned at the start of this presentation, there are three steps, and so they've given us their view on the concept. But as the designs for the plan are refined, and as we have more information, we would expect the Metro Departments to look again. So we all will take multiple looks at a project, at any concept, or any subdivision.
And then injurious to other property? So again, that's another specific, not Public Works, but water, stormwater, all those issues will be further looked at. Because I see the stormwater recommendation says approved, but we heard a lot about water.
Yes. I think the hydrology on the site is something we've certainly heard in the comments from the residents, and stormwater-like planning has its phase, what it looks at at each phase. And so I think there is someone from stormwater here who might be able to speak to what they would look at at concept, and then further as the design is developed.
That would probably be helpful. Come on down, stormwater. Join the discussion. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Courtney Larson with Metro Water Service. Sorry. Sorry. Metro Water. And I guess, what's the question?
Did you hear the question? Okay. Come on down, I answered the question in here. We've heard a lot about water concerns from neighboring properties, and I think from our perspective, we'd better understand what Metro Water looks at at this concept level, and making a determination that this should be something that would be approved.
From this point in the concept level, it's merely a concept plan. It's dedicating space for water quality and quantity to ensure that they have adequate space and planning for that. We also look at Metro GIS to see if there are any streams in the areas, and for them to provide adequate buffers for those.
What about runoff after this is developed, and there's steep slopes in their property down below? It seems to me that's what I'm hearing, is that there's a lot of concern about.
Well, once we receive a full grading plan, we would make sure that everything meets within our regulations, which would be that it would provide no adverse impact, this development would provide no adverse impact to anybody downstream.
And that includes soil quality, like potential for landslide?
Well, soil quality, we more deal with stormwater. That's more of a geology issue or geotechnical issue.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Unless somebody else has water questions, we want to watch you see her.
We'll call her back.
We'll call you back up. Don't go anywhere. Stick around. We're just getting started. I think, you know, this lot, and so this is a portion of the lot, correct? So this is 33 acres of, a larger, 80 acres?
It's 36 approximately, of about 66 acres. 80 acres is in the infill area.
Okay. And then, in terms of, the conditions upon the request for variance are based on unique to the property with which the variance is sought, on B, and are not applicable generally to other property. I think my question becomes, if this was a, if they chose to do this site and develop the entire site, like we've heard some people say, or more of the site, more of the available land, would a variance be required? Do we know that? Because it sounds to me, based on some of these things, that a second point of connection would be there.
Well, it would be a completely different plan. So it would really be hard for us to be able to say whether they'd need a variance or not, because once you add in the other portion of this parcel, then how you might divide that up and whether it would need a variance, I really couldn't say.
You see where I'm, but my lawyer brain is struggling...
I do see what you're saying. Is there a way to use the entire property in a way that doesn't require the variance?
Right. I guess my lawyer brain is struggling with the, it's unique to the property because you've created a situation where it's unique. It's not, the property is so unique, the way it's existing. It's you drawn it such that now it's unique, versus the property wouldn't be necessarily unique to be walked up on it. That's what I'm trying to get.
Right. I understand that, but...
I got you. Yeah, okay. Of course, changing the property changes the issue. All right. Well, I am going to listen because I've thoroughly confused everyone else, and I'm going to let them parse through it.
There you go. Thank you. There was a reference to, by WSMV, I guess, about blasting. It's the right TV station. Did I get the right one? About blasting and some studies, and you guys are comfortable with that kind of stipulation as far as that's concerned?
Come on up to the microphone. Not you, Dale, sit down.
Remember, WSM sold this property.
Yes. Our concern is that the...
Come on up to the microphone, the way we can, do they not? Not you, Dale, sit down.
Remember, WSM sold this property.
Yes. Our concern is that the, before blasting starts, that there'd be some engineering studies to ensure that there's not going to be any impact to our tower. And as Roy mentioned in the beginning, he's willing to do so. We're also very concerned about the impact of the noise to the community when work like that happens, as well as there are studio operation. So, we want to be sensitive to that, and try to address that in any kind of additional considerations or conditions. Okay.
One other quick question. You mentioned that you're comfortable with a 500-foot zone.
Right.
The tower's taller than 500 feet.
Thirteen hundred feet.
Yeah. So, if it falls, don't they collapse or something?
They collapse around a, typically a 300 to 400 feet zone around the base of the tower, because this is a guide tower. You can never judge what will happen in a weather condition or a situation. But as a general rule, in my forty years of experience, towers don't fall flat over. They do collapse around the guy wire.
Okay. Again, it's been so long. When we started this, I was new to the committee, commission. We're doing, we're doing a, we're doing a concept plan, right? And then all the slopes, all the details, all the circumferences of the cul-de-sacs and all that will be vetted through the rest of that process. Is that, is that my, my understanding? Including water runoff and those kind of things. I, you know, on the whole, I'm kind of inclined to go along with this thing. I'm willing to listen. But it, it's a, you know, building on these areas is challenging. Certainly default to the Fire Marshal if he's comfortable with the distances. And they certainly know more about what they're doing than I do as far as fire and safety. So, it's kind of where I am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tibbs?
So, tonight I've been consistently talking about dead ends on the other two projects that we were dealing with. So, this one is yet another one that kind of goes that dead end. And my first impulse was kind of, well, I'm glad they're not trying to connect to Charlotte or go all the way across, because it would be even more disturbing on this property. But then, it still gets back to the same issue of all these, of this particular dead end. Now, the density is better, though, than those other projects where there's not quite nearly, nearly as many homes trying to get out of that space. So, I feel a lot better about it than before, than I do now. I, I still struggle with just the way it's tearing into the site, but I'm, you know, I'm kind of, even after all this time, I'm still a little bit, you know, back and forth on it. I mean, and really, that's my biggest, I guess my two biggest concerns are the, still the one-in, way-out, and just the way it seems to be, it seems like it was a struggle to get this really to work into the site. And there's a struggle to make the development work. So, you know, sometimes, sometimes a square peg doesn't fit into the round hole, and you make it, you make all the parameters, and it looks like, well, it's sitting on top of it good, but it's not, still not fitting within it. And I just wonder if this, this is just maybe one of those sites that is just, doesn't work for this type, maybe, you know, it just doesn't work for this type of development. I'm going to still listen, listen to some of the other comments, but right now, I'm still kind of on the fence about it.
Commissioner Ains.
Can I ask the WSMV person to come back up real quickly?
No, I'm just trying to see.
Sorry to make you do that.
I gave me my steps today.
So, if I understand correctly, you all sold this property originally?
It was sold a number of years ago, after the development of the tower, not when we owned the tower, the location.
But Meredith Corporation sold the land.
We bought the property, and the land was already sold, around that section of the property.
So, who was the seller of the land?
Gaylord Broadcasting.
Who, at that point in time, had purchased the tower?
That's correct.
Okay. So, at that point in time, they could have stipulated blasting regulations or noise regulations, or any of those, when they sold the property?
They could have.
And they chose not to?
They chose not to.
Okay. So, I just want to.
But we are an owner of that property at this stage, and we've been there since nineteen the tower.
I just want to clarify that real quickly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then for staff, under base zoning with the 41 units, if they didn't want the variances for the dead-end cul-de-sacs, what process would they have to go through?
So, the site plan shows thirty units. I don't know where the 41.
Well, it says under R40, they could do thirty-three lots and eight duplex lots for a total of 41 units.
That's based on density alone. That does not take into consideration the policies for the area or anything like that. So, initially, the site plan was thirty-three lots. Now, it's thirty. So, it is under what the base zoning would allow.
Commissioner, if I can. It's just a mathematical equation, really, to tell you what the acreage versus the base zoning. What's the, it literally is just a mathematical equation to say what the baseline would allow.
If it were a flat piece of property, you might be able to get that many if they could design it. But given the slopes here, meeting the subdivision regulations and the hillside standards, they don't get that many.
There are going to be very few locations in this county that are going to allow for that level of development.
Right. And is there an aerial, Council Lady Roberts kept talking about developing the entire property. Is there an aerial showing the church's remaining property to the north or east?
Wait, okay. So, this, if you look, so this is the WS, the Meredith parcel in here.
Right.
And then the parcel kind of extends this way. It doesn't go to the eastern boundary, but this is generally where it would go.
And so, I guess a question for the applicant. What is the intended, contemplated future use of the balance of the land?
Sure. Could you go back to your colored drawing? I think it will help. The one that shows all the easements and radiuses and, hmm, there's another one. I just saw it. That one right there. So, their property would be to the right side of that or to the east side. In order to try to get a road, we can't go through the tower easement. Behind the church is 25% slopes. There's a buffer. There's really no way to connect this to the rest of the property. There's no way. So, the area behind the church, it's undevelopable. And even the area to the east of the church, because of many other factors, it's, I don't think it's developable at all. So, this is the only area that this would work, and we can't find another point of access. It's just not possible. The only point of access would be to the north, which has been discussed.
So, you're saying that based on the conditions of that excess land, that it can never be developed?
I'm saying we can't connect and create another point of access from this site to the other property, because we can't go through the tower easement. We can't go through the steep slopes behind the church. So, the area behind the church, I don't, church, I don't think it's developable unless they expand their church facility and put another building in. I don't think that's possible. And then, the remaining area, I just think it's so encumbered by guy wires and easements, it'd be very difficult. If you did develop it, it could probably be developed as a condominium site, maybe, a rezoning. But based upon the policy, the policy calls for single-family lots. I don't think you could put a public road in there and make that work. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. And I guess the final point I'd make, even though this is a concept plan, just because he's trying to sell thirty lots, all these do have challenges, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. This site has challenges. Even if it gets through all three phases of this, the market may say, you know, the steepness of the lots and the steepness of the roads, and it may not work financially. So, that's the risk that a developer takes. Council Lady?
I'm going to pick back up on the question you were asking. So, if they can have thirty lots, and there could be up to seven or eight duplexes, that could be 38 housing units, correct?
So, duplex lots would have been, would have had to have been identified on the concept plan. No duplex lots have been identified. It is staff's understanding that these are, will be for single-family use only, but I would verify that with the applicant.
Is that something that can, I mean, does that make it for sure? Or is, when we go to the next phase, whose name I have forgotten, can they at that point say, well, we think we'd like to do some duplexes? Is there anything to prevent it happening at that point?
They need to be identified now in the concept plan, and they're not identified as duplex lots right now. So, if they wanted to add those back, they would have to come back to the commission.
And do they not have to come back to us anyway at the next phase?
Final site plans are typically done administratively, and then the final plats are typically done administratively if they match the concept plan.
Gotcha. Okay. So, this is sort of our last pass at it if they don't make any changes. And council doesn't get a pass at it. Okay.
Unless you instruct us otherwise.
Unless we instruct you otherwise. Okay. Because I'm just looking, it says, "The second means of access is not required by the fire code since its development does not exceed 30 dwelling units." And you're saying, because they have not identified any duplexes, at this point, it cannot exceed 30 dwelling units without coming back to us?
That's right. It would have to come back before you.
Okay. All right. That's, that seems helpful to me. So, then we're just back to the whole length of 750. I'll have to say, it made an impression on me to look at the pictures of six fire trucks backed up one behind the other, and a house in remarkable blaze, and the trucks not being able to move. So, I kind of understand better now, maybe, where that 750 came from. It seems like a number not to throw away lightly. And then, I look at the Fire Marshal recommendation. The first one said, "Provided conditions provide flow data." I'm presuming the fact that it doesn't say that in this latest version means they have provided the flow data?
That data would be provided in future phases.
Future phases. Okay. So, when they're back to fire code, issues will be addressed in the permit phase.
That would, yeah, they would include the data then.
We just hope that they have it. And if they don't have what they need, then they adjust at that point.
Well, I can't speak for the Fire Marshal's office, but I would assume that they would have to meet international fire code requirements.
Right. Or they build fewer, something like that.
Correct.
Okay. I was hoping for an easy out here, but you're not giving it to me. So, I'll keep stumbling along here. I may just listen to Council Member Sims. I will say, I mean, I think there are an awful lot of important things that have been brought up. I appreciate that the developer has listened to many of these and tried to address them. I appreciate how deeply people care for the property that's up there. It does seem like there is a right to develop it, and we can't just say it'd be nice for it to stay green forever and make our decision based on that. So, it, to me, it does seem to get down to this variance and whether it fits the criteria of not being detrimental to public safety, health, welfare, and being unique to the property. So, I'm going to let Commissioner Sims figure that out.
Commissioner Sims?
I guess this is a question for the staff. At what point do the neighborhood actually get a chance to come back and have assurances that their safety issues? I think, in my opinion, one of the biggest responsibilities is to make sure that our residents are safe. I've lived in areas where the cul-de-sacs were too long, and it was really frightening. And so, where does the neighborhood itself get a chance to look at those, to determine? Because there is either a real or a very perceived sense of not feeling safe with this plan.
Mr. Director?
Well, I was going to ask, I mean, so, if this plan, this preliminary plan were approved, then the development team would have to work through with the Fire Marshal's office, and with Public Works, and with our office to make sure that it's meeting the plan, but it also meets our fire code, and make sure that the streets meet the requirements of Public Works. So, it's, it really, as far as the safety concerns go, it'll be the Departments that would do the review moving forward, based on our fire code and our building code and.
So, this is really the last chance that the people in the community actually get a voice, as well as we do, in making sure that safety is there?
Yes. This is, this is that opportunity, and then it's, it's up to the Departments, whose responsibility it is for that.
Okay. Thank you. That's my language.
Anyone else?
So, we need a motion, or are we?
Can I ask one other question?
Oh, you can ask all you want. All the questions you want.
Back to the 750 feet, which I'm assessing over. Is that measured from the T intersection to the end of some point?
We put that diagram back up. It shows the streets with the distances.
So, we've got the 700 to the left, and the 500 and the 500. The 750 maximum, is the one to the left good?
It's measured from Nob Road is where.
It's measured from Nob Road. So, we're all ready.
Unless there was another outlet somewhere, then we would measure it from Nob Road.
Okay. So, we're not just, 1,000 feet on the right is too.
Right. The maximum is about Lot 4.
Wow. Okay. That seems relevant, too.
So, we need a motion.
We have to have a motion.
I move approval of staff's recommendation.
It's a proper motion to move. There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the staff's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Raise your hands. Eyes first. Eyes. One, two, two eyes. Nos. One, two, three, four nos. Fail. So, we'll need a motion to not accept the, we'll need a motion to not accept staff's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to not accept a staff's recommendation based on a reason, based on a finding that the variance standards are not met clearly by this project.
That's a proper motion? Hold on one second. Let me make sure that's a proper motion. That's a proper motion. That was a 9:30 response. Just kidding. That is a proper motion, and who's the second? And there's been a proper second. All in favor of disapproving, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no?
No.
Okay, let's do hands again. Those ayes, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Nos. Two nos. It's not approved. All right, guys. So, we need to clear the room. If everybody, we still have business to conduct, so if everybody could make their way out the door. And we really do appreciate y'all coming, and this is the process. All right, we're going, I'm going to, we're going to try to keep going if it's okay with commissioners, since it's such a late hour, we can.
Power through it.
Let's power through it. So, we are on item number 14. If everybody could quickly make their way out quietly, that would be great. Let's see that auctioneer in you, Patrick. All right, let's go. The next item on this evening's agenda is item 14. This is a request to create two lots at the northeast corner of Jones Avenue and Cherokee Avenue. The subject property is outlined in red, and this is also a request from the sidewalk requirements, from the subdivision regulations. Staff's recommendation is to approve this subdivision with conditions and disapprove the sidewalks variance requests. This site is addressed.
This site is addressed as 1601 Jones Avenue. This site contains just over half an acre of land and one single-family structure. The site is currently zoned RS5, which is intended for single-family dwellings and requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The policy for the site is T4 urban neighborhood maintenance. This policy is intended to preserve the general character of existing urban residential neighborhoods. These are the areas served by high levels of connectivity with complete street networks. The proposed subdivision seeks to create two lots. Lot 1 will front both Jones and Cherokee Avenue. Lot 2 will front Cherokee Avenue only. The subdivision regulations require the construction of a sidewalk along Cherokee Avenue where none currently exist. The subdivision regulations establish the criteria for reviewing infill subdivisions, which require that the minimum percentage of the zoning code are met, all lots must contain frontage along a public street, and all setbacks of the underlying zoning district, in this case RS5, will be met. When analyzing lots for compatibility, the proposed lots must have frontage equal to or greater than 70% of the surrounding lots, or equal to or greater than the minimum lot within the same lots that we use for compatibility. The same is also true for area. The existing sidewalk network along Jones terminates at the beginning of Cherokee Avenue, the Cherokee Avenue right-of-way, which establishes an existing sidewalk network. And when a sidewalk network exists, new sidewalks must be constructed along the frontage lots created by an infill subdivision to extend the network. Per the subdivision regulations, a payment in lieu of constructing the sidewalks is not an option. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the subdivision as proposed and disapproval of the variance request to relieve the applicant of the sidewalk requirements.
Thank you. We'll open this item for public hearing. It's the applicant. Come on up. You have 10 minutes. You can save two minutes of the 10 for your rebuttal.
10 whole minutes. Great. I know.
You've waited for this for a long time.
Now I don't have any fear because there's no one here in the room.
Yeah, you don't have to use...
Well, I'm the owner of 1601 Jones Avenue. My name's David Pfeifer. We bought the house. It was an illegal multi-dwelling, and we've been converting it back into a single-family home over the last little over a year now. And it's been an expensive endeavor. Just to kind of go through a little bit of the history of it with, with removing the tenants, and then the amount of work that the house required to bring it up to livable standards was significant. So we, we burned through quite a lot of money to just fix bug infestations, structural issues, appearance inside and outside, and... Well, we burned through our, our entire savings for, for the house. And we decided that if we could subdivide off part of the back of the lot and sell that, we could use that money to finish the renovations on the house. And so we came through March of last year in request to do a rezone on the property. And you guys disapproved that and suggested we go through a different route. We went through planning, and we have done all of the, all the things that you, you've asked us to do. And now we're just requesting that as part of that subdivision, that you would waive the, our, our need to put through the sidewalks in. The sidewalks, the, the piece of property that we'd be adding a sidewalk to, there's a drainage ditch there, an uncovered drainage ditch. So we'd have to add a culvert and the sidewalk itself. The cost to do that would, would be upwards of $30,000 to do. And for, for us to sell the property, that would be a little less than half of what we could make off the property right now. So with, with the, the cost of the sidewalks, and then with what we have to deal with, with our mortgage company as far as selling, selling off the lot, we'd have to actually take some of that money and pay it directly to our loan, and fees, and we, we just wouldn't have a lot left to finish the renovations, which is the whole reason we're doing this in the first place, so that we can finish the home. We bought the house to live in it, and we're, we're not investing to just kind of flip the house like a lot of people are. I know that house, with, with the size of the lot and the condition of the property, it most likely would have just been knocked down, and more houses would have just been built in its place. And just the character of the house, it's 100 years old, it's, it's, it helps define the neighborhood. So we're just hoping that you guys would grant us that, that variance today. And just a side note, Scott's our councilman, and he's mentioned that the crime rate since we bought that house has been reduced by 25% because of the, the types of people that were living there before. Thank you. That's what I've got.
Thank you. We'll give you two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Counselor?
Can you pull up the zoning map, please? I want to be quick because I know it's late. Look at that map. Got a corner lot there. Got RM 20A, one of my favorite zoning requests. And you see you've got an MUNA. The area has been going, has been gone, has gone up to evolving. Sorry, it's getting late. It's past my bedtime. I got a very large, it's 0.68 acres, I believe, or 6, 0.63, Patrick? Bob? Man, I got a nice corner lot there, right next to RM 20A. I have a family with two kids. When they came last year, they had 1.9 kids. She was nine months pregnant. And we compromised. I had 10 neighbors here that live on that street in support of rezoning the whole area, RM 20A, but we thought the density would be a little bit too high. And so we worked with planning. The staff worked long and hard with us, and I appreciate that. Your hard work. Your staff did very well, Doug. And more importantly, we're back again. And it's been over a year. Let my people have their way for, please. Okay, if I, I asked you earlier tonight, and I really appreciate you hanging in there. The one time, I know you, the staff, I mean, I know the, the commission rarely goes against the staff's recommendation. This time, I need you to do this. I need an Easter miracle here for them. They deserve it. They cannot afford to put in that sidewalk. They cannot afford the 30 grand to do that. These people bought this. This house was crazy. They, it was, like he said, getting the original people inhabitants out of there. It was one of those weird illegal duplexes where, where just they had it divided into like four or five units as a boarding house somewhat, you know? You know, highly illegal, and I've had some shady characters operating out of it. So I really thank God when they came along and they bought this property. If you notice, Cherokee is a very industrial street. I have new sidewalks coming in on Joseph. They may not be as wide as the new regulations, but these are sidewalks we asked for in 2013, and we're funded. They're just now getting in there. And, you know, please give these folks a break. And, you know, and if we need sidewalks there, you know, that big piece down there, which will be coming back, which will probably get an RM 20 approval because it fits the policy, I'll write it in there. I'll make them put the sidewalks in there. I like making the developer with the deep pockets, the Roy Dalles put in the sidewalks, not my regular citizens. So let's, please, please support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And then you, you don't really need a rebuttal. Nobody's, do you? Or do you want to say...
Can I say one?
Yeah, please, come on up. Two minutes for rebuttal.
Sorry, I wind up my brain when, when I step in front of you guys.
It's okay.
Just one more thing. When we did initially come through planning in March of last year, I'm not completely sure on this, and maybe you guys could shed light, but the, the need for sidewalks, I don't think was, wasn't stated yet. If we would have been pushed through, at that point, we wouldn't have needed sidewalks. That might not be correct, but that's just been the...
We'll answer that in a second. So seeing no other, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And before we get started, though, it's very serious, especially to, to the new commissioners. When we grant variances or do something that's against our own policies, then every other person asks for the same thing. And I'm going to let Doug just talk, the director, talk a little bit. Councilman, I don't disagree with you. But this is a serious thing, and so I'm going to let Doug talk about that before we even start our conversation.
All right. Well, if everyone has their hymnals in front of you, if you can turn to page 106. And Patrick has laid out for us exactly the conditions under which you can and you cannot grant a variance. And that is the, the best place to start, so that we all understand what the authority of the commission is. And it's in what, really the last full paragraph, if the planning commission finds that extraordinary hardship or practical difficulties may result from strict compliance with the regulations, a variance from these regulations, regulations may be granted, provided that such variances shall not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purposes of these regulations. The planning commission shall make findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each specific case, that the granting of the variance shall not be detrimental to the public, safety, health, and welfare or interest to the other properties or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. And then part F here that's, that's cited, says that the conditions upon which the request for a variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other properties. Because, then the next section, because of the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from the mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out. And then finally, the variance shall not in any manner vary from the provisions of the adopted general plan, including its constituent elements, the major collector street plan, or the zoning code for the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Nashville and Davidson County zoning code. And as Patrick points out, we can't say that this case produces a unique hardship. A financial hardship by its very nature is not unique. Financial hardships can be expressed by many people throughout the neighborhood. And so that is really the essence of our recommendation. And, and I point that out because I think it does give clarification to the commission about what the breadth of your authority is in, in regards to these variances.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Let's start with Commissioner Tibbs, who's not gone first yet, I don't believe.
I agree with everything, you know, on my other board precedent is such a big issue. And I, I, I do feel for the owner and this financial situation for it, but it's, you know, the, everybody could come up and have other good reasons for it. So it's, as hard as it is, and I, I understand the financial implications of it, I feel like that, this is regarding the sidewalk, I guess you can tell. That would be, I just, we just dealt with this at the last meeting, I think. So I do feel for it, but I, I'd have a problem approving it because of just the precedent that's set.
Commissioner Tibbs? So he mentioned a drainage culvert. So is there a drainage culvert along Cherokee that would make this difficult to install a sidewalk?
Yes, and we have some images of that culvert that you can see here. So this ditch spans the frontage of the Cherokee Street, Cherokee Street, which I'll go back and identify here. So what you're seeing, this image looks down Cherokee, and that culvert runs the length of the frontage for the two lots proposed by this subdivision.
So can we argue that that drainage culvert creates a hardship with increased cost of the sidewalk that wouldn't otherwise be the case?
Yes. That, that's one of the things you certainly consider that's, that is a hardship. Is it a unique hardship? Is that along with the fact that it wraps a corner, so that your total frontage is much higher than it would be on a regular parcel that may be elsewhere along the street? Those are absolutely things that you could consider as, as hardship.
And I agree with Commissioner Tibbs about not making exceptions, and yet this makes the cost of the sidewalk and the, the length of the sidewalk more challenging. And so I, I think I would actually support Councilman Davis's contention in support of variance here.
Just let me tell you all, we're, if we do this, then, you know, the next developers are going to come in and say, I have, there's a ditch here, we're not going to put a culvert there. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Commissioner, but let's just, I, I always caution us to, when we make exceptions. So, you know, we have to be consistent if there's anything that we should be. So Counselor?
One other thing I should mention, that the variance doesn't, it's not an all-or-nothing position. There may be a portion that you feel like that the hardship exists in, and maybe not for the full length of the, of the property. You'd have to be able to identify that, okay, these are the characteristics of this portion of the property, and therefore, you know, there's some relief for a percentage of it, or not. But I just want to make sure you didn't think that this is like an on-off switch, that you either do or don't. You're going to have to articulate those, those unique hardships, but it's not, it doesn't have to be for the complete length of the property.
I'm going to try a different strategy.
Counselor?
So as we were talking about the, the sidewalk bill that we debated at length at our last meeting, one of the things that Public Works had agreed to was perhaps some wider latitude in, in sidewalk standards. And they, they showed specifically some more suburban examples of drainage ditches, where the sidewalk went inside the drainage ditch so that the drainage ditch continued to do its part, and you didn't have to install a curb and gutter. And as, as a way to get, I mean, to just provide some flexibility from having to always spend the, the much greater amount of money that's involved when you have to curb and gutter type of design. Is it possible that could be applicable here?
It could be. It, it, that's, it hasn't been presented, and we haven't reviewed it, to best of my knowledge. That hasn't been some, that hasn't been a track that we've gone down with this property. I will tell you that if I'm thinking of the, of the correct road, and I had the pleasure of riding around with Councilman Davis for half a day through his district, I believe this is a pretty flat lot. And so a lot of the issues that we have with topography normally, a lot of the alternative designs, topography becomes a very big problem when you start to move away from following the grade of the road itself. But on this piece of property, I think it's relatively flat. And so you might be able to come up with a design. But it's not something that we've, that we have worked on to this point.
But it could be a possibility for discussion?
It could be a possibility for discussion.
Okay, I would like to introduce that, that thought.
Commissioner Sims?
As much as my heart goes out to, to you, a financial hardship is not unique here. I think the way that Councilman Woman is going is probably unique. And there has to be, you know, when it says when a sidewalk network exists, but clearly this part of the network doesn't exist.
Well, you can see in this picture that it exists.
Well, some of...
But, so, so that's when, when it talks about the existence of a sidewalk network, it means are there adjoining sidewalks to the property? And here you do have an adjoining sidewalk. It's not just speaking to the replacement of existing sidewalks, but it's saying, we have a network, and it's at the, it comes to the location, then you're required to then, when you do development, to continue that network. when you do development, to continue that network.
And so, when an individual, or I can understand developers having to do this, but when an individual has something like this, and it's as expensive as a cul-de-sac, is there any variance at all? Is there any kind of exception to the rule, or any kind of leeway we can take?
Well, depending on when the trigger occurs. So, you have this trigger for the subdivision regulations. If it were someone wanting to come in and get a building permit, and it was triggered at that point, then you could go to the BZA. And I would assume that, if I think about it, that, I guess, if you were going for rezone, that that would also go to the BZA, would that, is that correct?
I mean, it depends on the zoning. If it's an SP, we look at sidewalks according to what the policy calls for, and if it's a straight rezone, it just goes through codes for when they get their building permit.
The requirement does. That's where the requirement's picked up. But then, if you wanted to get a variance from that requirement through a straight rezone, actually, you would do it at the time you got the building permit. That's when that would trigger.
Okay.
And then you could go to the BZA and ask for the variance.
Thank you, that's what I need.
Commissioner James.
The lawyer in me says, the evidence does not present to us, presented to us, does not show a specific case for a variance at this point, and that's where I am. I can't, and all, I appreciate and respect and feel for the financial hardship and the culvert. And we just had a case, the last one, we just voted to not approve a variance for not providing enough information. And I feel like this one doesn't, it's not our job to find a hardship. It's the job of the applicant to provide information as to what that hardship is. And at this point, I don't find, I don't personally feel so. But I'm going to, I'm going to listen.
Commissioner Gobble.
Well, I agree. The thing that's driving this is creating, subdividing the lot. Is that right? Yes. So, I mean, if it weren't subdividing the lot, they wouldn't have to be doing that. And I think, you know, I mean, I'm sympathetic to it. I've spent more money on remodeling old stuff, got one going right now, than any of us expected. I've done it over and over. You know, this is not a unique situation in Nashville, as far as just having a ditch along the road. I'm not sure the easiest way to solve it. I like the idea that there may be some alternative ways to solve it, but I think this is here for just this very reason, where you've got sidewalks, and then suddenly you stop, and you're walking in the street. And I think that in order to make the city a more pedestrian-level area, then I think that's a, I mean, a pedestrian-oriented city, I think that's important, that we continue this policy. And if we do, if we do allow this, then I think that there would be a lot of other, other people coming in and saying the exact same things, and see what you did here. Again, if there's a creative way to solve it that makes it less expensive, I'm all for it. But the subdividing of this is what's driving it. You know, and I think that's, that's part of it. That's kind of where I am.
All right, we need a motion. So, Mr. Gobble, this would be a good time for you to make a motion.
The last person.
Generally, I only move to adjourn, but, yeah.
Or Jeff.
I, I'm not totally sure where we are on this one, but I think we're, are we voting on both the subdivision and the sidewalk?
So, the motion would be stated like this, Commissioner, that we would, you would make a motion to approve the subdivision with conditions and disapprove the sidewalk variance request.
I make a motion, we approve the subdivision with conditions and disapprove the sidewalk request.
And that would be the staff's recommendation? Is there a second?
Okay. There's been a motion, a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose?
You got one down here.
There's one no. So, the staff recommendation is approved. We are on item with, with one no.
I'm trying to be like Stewart.
You are, you, you challenge it.
Stewart.
All right, item 20.
Okay, so the final item before you this evening, I believe, other than administrative things, is item 20. This is a request for a zone change from RS5 to RM15A zoning on property located at 1308 Montgomery Avenue. This is just north of Douglas Avenue in East Nashville. The subject property is highlighted in red. You can see Ellington Parkway on the right side of the screen there. Staff recommendation is to disapprove the RM15A zoning, but approve RM9A zoning. The current zoning on the property is RS5, which is intended for single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The requested zoning, RM15A, is intended for single-family duplex and multifamily residential, and is designed to create walkable neighborhoods. The policy on this property is T4 urban neighborhood evolving, which is intended to create and enhance urban neighborhoods with more housing choice and increased connectivity. As you can see, this is an adjacent to an area of T4 mixed-use neighborhood policy. The RM15A zoning that's requested would allow up to 10 units on this property, the rate of 15 per acre, which is equal to the density of development along Douglas, which you see here, this is a specific plan, with 29 units or about 14 units per acre. And it is in the adjacent mixed-use neighborhood policy. And in looking in evolving policy areas, staff is often conscious of appropriate transitions from higher-intensity centers and corridors into the interior of the neighborhood. The interior of this neighborhood contains a mix of one- and two-family residential dwellings. The RM15A zoning in 10 units, equal to the intensity along the corridor, would not create an appropriate transition to the rest of the neighborhood. However, RM9A, which would allow for six units, would provide an opportunity to increase housing choice on this property, while creating a more appropriate transition between the corridor and the rest of the neighborhood, which is still redeveloping. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval of RM15A and approval of RM9A.
Thank you. We'll open this item for a public hearing. And the applicant, you have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two minutes of the 10, if you'd like, for rebuttal.
And I have resided on Montgomery since 1996. I've lived in East Nashville all my life. As the young lady commissioner stated, it does, it is adjacent to the complexes, the duplexes that are already established there. I just want to further, I really just want to further that development. I have collected 27, 27 statements from my neighbors, and I've received several phone calls from neighbors when the postcards came out, and they stated that they were in support of the duplexes. Anything, any developments that I wanted to do for that property, they were in support of. I currently live at 1320, so I will still be in that neighborhood. I actually reside four houses up from that property, so I have two properties there in that neighborhood. And I am going to stay there. So, whatever developments go on to that property, I will be, that will be in my community. And those are my neighbors, and no one's complaining.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll have, we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support, councilman?
Let's go back to that zoning map.
Zoning map.
All right. Now, we see that very large development right there. We see Ellington Parkway. And we see further, we see that CS zoning, we see that OR20 zoning up there. Now, that development has, what was it, 20 units, right in front of it? Okay? And then we have that nice, big industrial building on the right side of those 20 units. And then, in the packet of letters, you know, I have the neighbors right next door in support of that. And I have no people in opposition here. I, in fact, I have people that live in that same neighborhood, right down the street, that are here in support, ready to speak in support of their neighbor, who's lived there for a long time, who has resided in East Nashville her whole life, who is a schoolteacher, who is a single mother, who is, we need the extra density, because, yeah, you may think six or seven is good enough, but when we add nine, we make it 10, we now have affordable housing. We now have somebody that's building in their neighborhood, that they lived in their whole life, where they're, she's raising her son, okay? Who knows more about needing affordable housing than a metro employee? Because, you know, you know metro employees, you're all overworked and underpaid. So, what we need there is workforce housing. And the only way, because those condos up front sold for over $350 apiece. And that's why these neighbors are in support. And once again, what I do for the developers, I do for my neighbors. And if you have to be in disapproval, I still love you. You're still great. We're just going to go to the council, and if these neighbors knew, if they could have gotten off work, they'd be able to, for, but they'd be able to be off work for the 7:00, 6:30, 7:00 council meeting, to line up and speak in support of their neighbor. And definitely ladies that are here, and I appreciate them staying and supporting their neighbor, are going to come up. We all, I only think it's fair, if I have CS over there, OR20 up there, and to the right, a large industrial building near a railroad track, right off of Ellington Parkway, and I advocated, and I, and we allowed with the SP 25 units in front of her, and all her neighbors are in support in this large packet, I have to say, please let my constituent, who will still live on the street, the developer who did the 29 units, doesn't live in my neighborhood. And we are cool with him doing it, so I must allow my neighbor, my constituent, to do it. And they have people in support, and if people are really against this, they would have stayed all night, just like those lovely people from West Nashville did, to speak against it. But also, we have people who stayed here all night in support. You know, it's my anniversary, and I'm here tonight. That's how important this is. You know, my, my, my wife knows that this is my neighbor, and she's, and we need affordable housing, so I got a pass. That's how much I care about this.
Thank you, councilman. Happy anniversary.
So, she's going to come, so my neighbors are going to come up now and speak in support.
Anyone wishing to speak in support, please come up. Anyone wishing to speak?
May I?
Yes, ma'am, you have two minutes for rebuttal. So, come on up. Say your name and your address, ma'am.
Good night, because it is night now. My name is Jerice Polk. I reside at 708 Ward Street, 704 Ward Street, 710 Ward Street, and 711 Ward Street. Yes, I did say four houses, because I own four houses on Ward Street. Well, I am really for Vida being able to get this passed, because I understand what it's like to be a single mom. I'm a single mom myself, and she's only trying to develop the neighborhood like I am trying to do myself. And like Vida, I've lived there since I was nine years old, and I'm almost 60 now. And I've seen the neighborhood go through a lot of changes. And she's just trying to do something good for the neighborhood, and I know she is, just like everybody else. And I really hope that you all will allow her to develop her property, because like she said, she's going to stay in the neighborhood like I plan to stay in that neighborhood. I've been there since I was nine, and I plan to be there until I'm 99, just like Vida.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I have two minutes for rebuttal, ma'am. Come on up.
And I didn't thank you all for everything that you all do. I am a metro schoolteacher. I've taught for 25 years, and I taught at Jerry Baxter, which is a community school, a neighborhood school, last year or so. Those are my students as well. So, I wouldn't, I want them to have an area, a neighborhood, that is conducive, where they can live and enjoy life, as well as my eight-year-old son. I had him when I was 43, so. And I want that neighborhood to be nice. So, I wouldn't want anything to destroy why I moved there. I moved there so that I could have a family, and that it could, my family could develop and grow up and have the same experiences I did. I grew up two blocks from that actual address. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, and we do appreciate your service in the city. All right, so we'll declare the public hearing closed, and Council lady, I hope we start with you.
Thank you. One question I have, I certainly appreciate, you know, again, the council member's advocacy for his district. We know he's, we know he's dedicated, now that he's hanging out here on his anniversary. I'll apologize to your wife next time I see her. And I also appreciate his continued support for trying to create affordable housing. In the analysis, they mentioned that they expect that the houses would spell for around $300,000 apiece, which I'm thinking is on the upper edge of affordable, if it still fits in that definition. Can anybody address that here?
As if, if six were built. You know what I mean? But the more density you have, the cheaper the price is. I'm sorry.
Come with the microphone, councilman. That way, we can get it on record.
Okay. All right. And I'm going to be very careful, because some people on a different hill made some decisions that we don't agree with. But looking at this property, yes, if, if, if we go, all due respect, if we go by the staff's recommendation, then yes, they'll be that price, which is not really affordable. But the more density you have, you know, the cheaper you can make the houses, you know, because, you know, more, more density, you know, you could sell the house for under $300,000 now. And that's why I would like to have the additional density. Now, if we get shot down here, we get shot down at council, yes, the houses are going to be over, be $300,000 or over, you know?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And maybe there was a misunderstanding. In the, in the staff report, it says, will this project, including affordable workforce housing units, based on getting density of RM15, workable layout of lot size of units, layout of units, concept is to make majority of units in workforce housing pricing in the low to mid 300K range, based on RM15? And I'm just remembering, in an earlier project, a reference to affordable was more like in the 250 to 300. So, that, and again, if it's not an SP, we have no control over what actually happens there. So, that concerns me as a, well, I guess, it, to me, makes it less, less of an advan, less of something that compels me to, to be supportive of that piece of it, because it seems like there's still a number of questions on that. And I guess I understand the importance of transition. So, I guess those are, those are the two questions that I'm still thinking through, and I'm glad I got called on first, because now I can listen to everyone else.
Commissioner Sims. Sure, I would love to. How about we, we'll go to Jeff. Jeff, how about you? No comments. No comment. All right, Commissioner Tibbs.
You know, typically, I like, I could be okay with the transition, but, you know, because, if, when you go back to that, the one that shows, yeah, even that one, I mean, it's, it can very easily have been included, you know, if, if that person would have owned it. So, I'm, for just the way it is, I'm okay. I, I'd support the applicant's request, just because you've got that density right next to it, and it's just one extra block, one extra lot, I'm sorry. I mean, I'd be supportive of it.
If I can interject at this point.
Director, we, I think we need a interpretation.
All right. And you have to find that the zone change meets the policy, the policy for the area, or you need to instruct us to, to do, to change the policy for the area. But, and the law keeps getting in the way. But right now... But right now, according to the staff recommendation, it doesn't meet the policy.
Even the staff doesn't meet the policy?
No, the staff's recommendation of, I'm trying to remember what we, RM 9A?
RM 9A.
Okay, so, RM 9A does meet the policy, but RM 15A does not. Is that correct, Sean?
That would, that would be correct. So, evolving policy supports a range of intensities depending on locational characteristics and context. And that translates to a range of zoning districts. RM 15A is potentially on the upper end of that range. And in this particular location, equivalent intensities are what is existing in that mixed-use neighborhood, which is a more intense policy district. So, we're looking, the evolving policy steps down in intensity and therefore, staff's recommendation was that the zoning should also step down in intensity from the mixed-use neighborhood that you're seeing on Douglas and along the major corridor. That was the basis for our recommendation.
Okay, but just so that the commission's clear, then it's not that it doesn't meet policy, that RM 15 wouldn't meet policy. It could meet policy if you state that it's not necessary to step down at this location or the, or the property because of its size, doesn't necessitate a transition.
Correct. I think it would be needing to find that there are specifics of the location or the context that would make that higher end of the range okay in the spot.
Thank you.
So, now it's clear as mud, but not really. I mean, I think that it's important that this is not one of those cases where it's not in the policy, but that we would have to explain why it would fit within the policy is really what you were explaining in your explanation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. Commissioner Gobel.
I agree with Commissioner Haynes, no comment.
Commissioner Hagan.
I actually, I, I, at this point, I support the staff's recommendation that, that, based on the analysis, that it's not, it's inconsistent with the neighborhood evolving to do 15A, but RM 9A would be more appropriate for that, that parcel based on the transition into the other residential and the size of the lot and the front of John Montgomery and entrance and exit egress and, and just, I, I feel like their staff recommendation was a good one.
Okay. So, we need, we need a motion?
No.
Commissioner Sims, you want a question?
I want to support the staff. I think this is a good recommendation.
Okay. And so, procedurally, if, if, if we support the staff, the councilman can go, this is not the final stop. So, procedurally, you can present it to the council just, and, and get 27 votes instead of 21. So, that's where, where we're in. So, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Oh, there's a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the staff's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
And there's three?
Two no's.
Two no's. Is anybody else a no?
I think we need to show hands.
Show hands.
That was a little diluted there.
Staff recommendation, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So, it's, well.
You're recorded as voting with the majority unless you state otherwise.
I state that I vote no.
Four, three.
So, it's four, three. And the staff's recommendation is approved and that, was that along, oh, my goodness.
The three lines.
All right. So, the staff's recommendation is approved, four to three. And we are on other business? Historic? Anything in historic, Derek?
We have our preservation awards coming up on May 10th at the Downtown Public Library where we honor rehab and infill projects. So, we welcome all to come.
All right. Nothing on parks? Executive committee? We don't have anything, but the director wants to remind us about something.
I do. I want to remind you that next Thursday, we all get to join and hang out again together. The meeting starts at 6 o'clock, right? Not making a mistake.
Is it here?
Should look over at Kelly when I ask when something begins.
It's here, here?
It's here. And we're gonna go over the CIB. Hopefully, you've all had a primer at this point on the CIB. Usually doesn't take that long. One thing that we are looking at, and I'll let you know as soon as I possibly can, is that I, we're looking at tagging on to the back end, a short, Brian shaking his head, no, a short work session on short-term rental. We just want to go over what the issues are. I've had a couple of requests.
I'm pushing to defer that part to the meeting.
I think spending a little bit of time next Thursday to just talk about the issues of short-term rental and the different viewpoints and, and issues that are trying to be resolved could save us all a lot of time the following Thursday when the six bills are before you.
So, for those of us out of town next Thursday, send me the clip of the short-term rental session.
I, I will absolutely send it to you, so you'll be able to see it. I'll make sure that we, we'll get somebody to record it for us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any legislative update down the council?
Not worth, not worth talking about at 10:20.
All right, is there a motion, Jared? For a jury.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.